Please call the roll. Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hart.
Here.
Hachkis.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White. Mayor Schneider.
Here.
All righty. I'll get back. Are there any changes to the agenda?
No.
Nope. Okay. Public comment. I have two minutes here at the podium. We'll start with Phil Walker, to be followed by Victor Reyes.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. You know, I was going up Santa Barbara Street to Padre. It was right in my face, a huge Diodora cedar in one of the properties on the northeastern corner of Santa Barbara Street had cooked off. It was brownish-red instead of the nice blue-green. And, you know, it was a tree that was probably, you know, it was a landmark tree, 75 to 80-foot tall. And then I happened to look across the street. There was one probably planted about the same time, 55-foot tall, but it was nice, still maintained, but, you know, getting adequate water. But then I looked further down the street, and just driving down to Constance, there were three or four more cedars or conifer trees, 55, 65, 75-foot tall, people's backyards or adjacent to their driveways, you know, a whole little cluster of it. And it's a big concern. We might get five inches of rain next year, 55. You just don't know. And with the extreme El Nino winters, you can get the huge winds, too. So, you know, when a tree gets that tall, it's a threat to you, your property, and your neighbors' lives and their property, too. One other quick thing, there was a terrible tragedy that happened up at UC Berkeley, adjacent to it, the Berkeley, I think, Library Gardens apartments, 176 units. Turns out, they didn't say the balcony collapsed. All I got out of it was the balcony crumbled. So I would suspect it's probably cement or concrete patios with a lack of proper reinforcement. But every balcony in that complex, either, you know, two per, two units per one balcony or a single, you know, either 80 or 176 balconies was red-tagged. So what I see today in construction, there's a lag between the expertise, the institutional memory has dropped off of a lot of the building inspectors and the contractors to some degree.
Find out, please.
And catch-up needs to be played because it can cost lives. Thank you.
Victor Reyes will be followed by Melody Baker.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, city councilmen, city councilwoman, gentlemen, how are you, ladies? Everyone, how you guys doing?
Fine, thank you.
Great, great. Well, I'm here today to speak to you about something that struck me that happened last week. It was kind of took me by surprise. It was a comment by one of the councilmen that made about Mr. Sebastián Aldana. He was here to, or he referred to a comment that Mr. Aldana was trying to get his job. And that kind of struck me a little bit. I said, "Wait a minute." I thought, you know, there is a proverb in Spanish. It's called zapatero a sus zapatos, "The cobbler to his own." You know, you have been elected to represent all of Santa Barbara. The west side and the east side have been an issue ever since I've been here, since '64, and there's a lot of needs that have not been met with city safety. Seems like the city, as well as the county, and maybe now the city of Galera. I'm ashamed to say this, but it seems like it takes a death in the city streets in order for progress to begin. We have someone who is interested and is a citizen from the west side, resided and has paid a lot of time in the east side as well, is making some change. Now, as I look back in history, ever since grassroots individuals has taken the time to participate in democracy of our society, it seems like, they seem to be forces chipping away at the efforts.
Need to find out, please.
I'd like to have you remember these famous words by George Santayana, who says, "Those who do not pay attention to history are doomed to repeat it."
Thank you.
It's time for a change.
Thank you. Melody Baker will be followed by Claudia Bratton, and the final speaker will be Tom Widrow.
Good afternoons, Madam Mayor, city council members, city administrator and attorney and deputy city clerk. I'm afraid that I have to disappoint you on a couple of fronts. Number one, our so-called Community Watch is a sham. I have photos on my phone. It's being debated whether it's legal to show them to you, but I feel I should. And so I'm going to pull them up and you make the decision. This occurred last weekend on State Street. Would one of you please come and get this in passing?
You can certainly email them to us. That would be fine.
I, okay. It shows two homeless people, very well-known on State Street, sitting in front of McDonald's on the sidewalk, blocking it and drinking beer, okay? But according to the Community Watch, that doesn't happen. And then the day before that, here, there's another one where they're sitting at the concrete cutout of the art museum, drinking, a whole bunch of them, and you can see the alcohol. But according to the Community Watch, this isn't happening, okay? Happen to know it is. And the library says, "You cannot tell them. They have to go after the group that's been living out front, sleeping out front and everything, that they'll pick and choose who they go after, and they intend to continue targeting me."
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Claudia Bratton?
Wasn't it just last week, Madam Mayor and councilmembers, that it was solstice? It seems like it went so fast this year. Anyway, I'm very excited. Everything's going, coming along, not necessarily at the speed at which we thought, but it will happen on Saturday. The parade starts at noon at State and Coda, and I want to thank all of you and all the city people who help us do this, because it is truly a group effort. It is not one person, 10 people, 30 people. It is everybody in this community that supports it, and I'm so thankful for that. I have your shirts here, which we're very tickled with this year, and these were designed by Polly. He did the character in the middle, and Stacy Buffard, our board president, did the background. And I thought, "Wow, we should combine them," and so this is what happened, anyway. For people that are watching this and want to buy them, they're at the workshop, they'll be at the park, and we have a new hat, too, this year. And it's going to be a great parade. Some of you already know what you're doing, and our theme is sci-fi, and it always, that kind of a space theme really brings a lot of people out of the woodwork, so we're really looking forward to it. And I just want to thank all of you again, and it's been a great pleasure of mine to be able to do this for 15 years, so thank you.
Thank you. It's been great, actually, in a new building where the costuming is now, what some elbow room is.
Isn't that fabulous?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm so glad, and Mask is so happy in there. You know, we could have all of our sewing machines all locked up, which has saved us inevitable time at night, and it's safer, and it's well-lit, and the wind doesn't blow through. So thank you, thank you all, for the community arts workshop. I should have said that, but it's really what we've always needed. And all of you, come by and see it.
Thank you. Thank you. Tom Widrow?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. I just wanted to alert you to something that's on the horizon for the city. It'll be impacted by the federal government. The Obama administration recently announced through the Housing and Urban Development a new federal housing rule that's coming down next month. Should be a concern to our whole community. Just the objective is to increase integration, or what they call fair housing, at the federal level. The problem is, is that if cities and counties don't comply with whatever federal regulations come down from HUD, it could cost the county millions, I mean, the city and/or the county millions of dollars in what would be block grant money. So the question is, is will significant changes in the way that we do business as a city be required? The answer is quite possibly yes. Westchester County, New York, recently had to experience a settlement of a lawsuit that cost them $50 million. It's a community not unlike ours demographically. HUD is really to blame, as they change their rules frequently over time. For those of you who keep up with what's going on in Congress and with the federal government, as you well know, ends up having an impact on what happens here in our city. So at City Watch, we're concerned about this, don't necessarily believe that it's the federal government's role to tell our city council, who's composed of seven civic-minded, intelligent people that we have elected to office, to tell us how to run our city, how to quote-unquote "make more for, more fair," or quote-unquote "affordable" housing. Thank you.
Jeff Bard will be the final speaker.
Madam Mayor, members of council, I'm here to suggest, if you have time, to agendize support on Senate Bill 277. I believe it went through the final processing before a full vote, before the Assembly, and we have reason to believe that despite the well-financed opposition by out-of-state organizations that peddle quack remedies, like fake cancer cures, homeopathy, which is just water, despite big quack funding from out-of-state, mostly Texas, it looks like the Assembly's going to pass SB 277, thanks to courageous leaders like Hanabeth Jackson and Dr. Richard Penn. So if council ever weighs in, Doss Williams is still agonizing, and I'm sure he's agonizing, because there are a lot of well-intended people who buy the fraudulent disinformation, and my research over the past week has confirmed, a lot of it comes straight out of Texas, and just like we have big oil, we have big quackery, and they're trying to control California politics. Mike Adams, Natural News, is a charlatan and a fraud. Doctor, former, the doctor from the UK who got his license stripped, was operating out of Texas. This man did not disclose that he had financial interest in his own alternative measles vaccine. He did not disclose over $600,000 in funding from lawyers that were suing the manufacturers of the measles mumps rubella vaccine, and that's how this whole thing got started. He got kicked out of the UK, set up in Texas, and now he's here in California at $60 a plate down at Dana Point. So don't fall for it. You push back and attempt to buy this council from Texas, don't let them take over the welfare of our children. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment, and we move on to the consent calendar. There's a couple of items to read.
Item number two, adoption of ordinance for extension of fire management memorandum of understanding to June 30, 2018. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only and ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, amending ordinance number 5260, the memorandum of understanding between the city of Santa Barbara and the Santa Barbara Fire Managers Association, and extending the term of the agreement through June 30, 2018. Item number three, reclassification of police technician positions in the police department. Recommendation that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara, amending resolution number 14046, the position and salary control resolution for fiscal year 2015, affecting the police department effective December 27, 2014.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. Anyone need to pull anything off the consent calendar, or is there a motion to approve it?
Move the consent calendar.
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Moved on to item number 11. Sage III drought update. Okay. Why are you all leaving the room? We want you to come into the room.
Oh, sir, all police.
There we go. You got here faster than you thought. That's all right. Take your time, whenever you're ready, Mr. Hagmark.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Joshua Hagmark. I'm the Water Resources Manager, here today to provide another monthly drought update. This one's a little unique from some of the past updates, in that I'm hoping to answer any of the council's questions about the need for DSAL. That is the next item on the agenda today. And kind of the purpose of today was to answer the water supply need. Is it, what is it, is there any options? And so anywhere in this presentation, if you have any questions, I hope to answer those now, and then during the DSAL presentation, we'll go over the contract and procedural manners of that. So we'll be talking about rainfall and surface water supply totals, water supply outlook and community conservation, state and supplemental water, drought response capital projects, and water conservation program. We did get a little shot of rain recently, last Tuesday. We got almost 3/4 of an inch here in town, and almost an inch up at Gibraltar. Certainly promising and hopeful, but certainly nothing that's going to change our outlook. We still remain way below normal, and with the rain totals here, we're averaging just over 45% of normal rainfall after several years of that. Gibraltar reservoir is at 12% of capacity. It's about 600 acre-feet of water in it. Lake Kachuma now at 26% of capacity, 51,000 acre-feet. Just wanted just to take a little time to compare this current drought to some of the past droughts, and we'll start off by looking at an average four-year period where we may receive about 106 inches of rain. The drought that most people can recall, the 1987 to 1990 drought, during that four-year period, we received just over 63 inches of rain. The 1948 to 1951, which was, is our basis of drought planning, was 55 inches of rain. And then here we are, 2012 to 2015, at just almost 45 inches. Incredibly, incredible how dry this drought has been in comparison to some of those historical droughts, and I think really sets the stage for the situation we're in, and it's really impressive how well we've done so far at managing our supplies despite this devastating So the drought intensity monitor, they continue to publish this, continues to show California in amidst, you see, one of the worst droughts record, and I think what's important here to notice is, as we talk about the ability to purchase water, the areas impacted are primarily where we'd be able to buy some of those water in Northern California, and why we believe it's, at this point, not wise planning to think that we're going to be able to buy water next year if things continue. We saw this year, the water market basically fall apart, and we were very fortunate to have secured water south of the Delta, so we didn't, we weren't impacted by that, but any water purchased north of the Delta just dissolved this year because of the lack of rainfall and particularly lack of snowmelt. So I've upgraded this water conservation graph, and one of the things that I, we've changed is, we've kind of put our planned water usage, that's what we would normally use, because the, we've been using that for a long time, but taking more front stages, the calendar year 2013 actual, that is the basis. The state is now evaluating all communities throughout California on their ability to meet the conservation goals. And so for the month of May, city of Santa Barbara racked up 37% conservation in May, attributable, I think, to a lot of the May gray returning, which is, if you're not going to get rainfall, that's the next best thing, helps reduce evaporative losses, and certainly takes the toll off the plants, which we saw, obviously, in 2013 and 2014, where it was very warm in May. But where this puts us, it now puts us at 24% on average, going back to July, and so basically, we're right on target with the city council's objective of a 25% conservation goal for the community, which I think is right where we want to be. So I'm going to take a little time to go through our water supply strategy. I'm going to zoom in here, but we are in year four, 2015, and when we look at that, with our conservation goal of 25% going out, that is going to be a critical part of helping us to meet our demands going forward. We have been actively pursuing water purchases this year, and feel comfortable that we have secured the water needed to get us through next year. That was an important part of this year, and we purchased about 4,500 acre-feet this year, and feel comfortable that we'll be importing that over the coming months, that water sitting in San Luis reservoir. We did get some state water allocation this year, a little 600 acre-feet, we'll take anything we can get, but we don't anticipate seeing anything going forward if conditions continue. Groundwater, groundwater is the one source on this side of the mountains that we really have control over. It's going to play a vital role going through this drought, but it is a limited resource, limited in the sense that we can only pull it out at a certain pace, and limited in the sense that there's only a certain amount of it in the ground. And so as we look out, you'll notice that we're going to be peaking our use in year six, but after year six, we expect our groundwater supplies to start to dwindle, and we'll be able to recover less and less. Gibraltar, Mission Tunnel, what we are noticing here, particularly starting with year five, is that's basically just Mission Tunnel flows. We won't be getting any additional water coming from Gibraltar itself, so we're anticipating, though we will continue to get some inflow into Mission Tunnel. It's basically like a horizontal well. Kachuma carryover, this is critical. This is where the conservation has been kicking in and allows us to carry forward water, basically, that we're saving in Kachuma, and it's, will help us to meet needs as we go forward. It's absolutely critical, and particularly when we move on to the next one, which is our Kachuma allocation. This is the last year we anticipate having an entitlement to any water in Kachuma. That is, something that has never happened in the history of the Kachuma project, and certainly, I think, a game changer going forward as to how Kachuma is managed, and that's part of the long-term. Many are saying that Kachuma is over-allocated, basically with the fish releases and demands on the lake, it's not lasting as long as it should be, and this is one of the great indicators of that. So starting October 1st, there will be no new water coming from Kachuma, and all we'll be carrying forward is the water that we save through conservation. And then, of course, the recycled water, which is going to play a critical role next year in helping to curb some of the landscape use. And that takes us to DSAL. Currently shown in this water supply graphic is a supply of 31.25 a year, 3,000 acre, just over 3,000 acre-feet a year, and is going to be very critical in helping us to meet our water supply demand needs. Even with the DSAL project operating and with 25% conservation, we still have a projected shortage. Now, we do have options still at this point to address that shortage, whether it's through moratorium, whether it's through increased moratorium on watering of lawns, injuries, increased conservation, rain, maybe we get some runoff into some of our reservoirs for once. There is some options at this point, so we recognize that, but I think we have a lot of tools in our toolbox to close that gap of 1,400 acre-feet. But I think the point, what I want to make here, is combine, though, what we're looking at is a 60% shortage in our water supply if we are unable to have DSAL under these conditions, and that's a really significant cut for this community. I think it would be pretty devastating to the way of life we have here. State and supplemental water, just confirming, we did get our state allocation, 20%, which is about 600 acre-feet, and we did secure our supplemental water purchase goal of 4,500 acre-feet for this next year. I included this graphic, there's a lot of information on here, and the point I want to make is that despite there being 52, 51,000 acre-feet of water left in the lake, there is not a whole lot of water left for what we consider project use or south coast use. This is the water right here, this is pretty much what's remaining in the lake. All the rest of this is accounting for evaporation for this year, it's accounting for fish releases, accounting for downstream users holding water in the lake, and of course, what we consider the dead pool, the remaining water that's going to be very difficult to retrieve, and so just want to kind of account for all the water that's in there. We're watching this closely and keeping track of it and reporting on it, so hopefully we get no surprises going forward. The emergency pump project, as you might remember, went into play in September, and it has been in standby. Because the downstream users have not done their annual release, we expect, we won't need to turn this facility on until July, that's when they'll be doing their large release, which will drop the lake below the lowest intake gates. As part of this emergency pump project, they did actually excavate a lot of silt down by the lower gate, and that's what's actually allowed them, at this point, to continue to divert water without pumping. That's been kind of critical. Fish water releases continue, however, the Bureau is still working actively with nymphs to try and work out some accounting of how to maintain that habitat, but also preserve the remaining water in the lake. We continue to follow that one closely. Recycled water, groundwater, and desalination. Valverde Well continues to play a strong part in putting non-potable water into the recycled water system. However, as I reported, I believe, last time, we have ran into some issues with the recycled water facility. There is an item coming to council on the 23rd that we'll get into great detail, but basically, there is a design issue that is going to delay the project into the fall, and they're working on the steps and impacts from that, but it's related to a design issue, not the contractor at this point, and so as we, when we structured that contract, we put a lot of weight and penalties on the contractor if he dropped the ball, and unfortunately, this appears to be a design-related issue. High school well is, bids were received for the piping, and I believe it's, will be coming to council shortly. We're anticipating that well being online this winter, and Alameda Well continues to move forward on schedule, and we should see some production from that well in September. So at this time, I kind of wanted to come around to the DSAL project again and talk about the supply projections. Walked through our water supply outlook, want to touch a little bit on the El Nino prediction. You've probably heard a lot of discussion, I think we all heard a lot of discussion last year about a strong El Nino. Kind of wanted to put it into context. There have been six strong El Nino events in our recorded history here in Santa Barbara that the county has, and of those six, three of them have been above-average rainfall, so that's an upside. There's been one that was moderate, and two that were below for, during a strong El Nino prediction. So where does that leave you, leaves you with, basically, it's still, it's still an unknown. There's still a significant unknown even when a strong El Nino is predicted, and I think what we've seen over the last few years that makes it really challenging is that strong high pressure that's been sitting off the coast, just batting the storms around us. It's not a lack of storms, it's a lack of them getting through and getting to California. And then to finally touch on, you know, our long-term water supply plan recognizes the use of DSAL and recognizes its role, particularly in severe droughts, and I think we're moving forward consistent with that. I think we've been exploring, obviously talking about this for over 16 months now in regular discussions with the city council, and I believe at this point, we have exhausted all other options and are now standing in front of what we believe to be our last option to helping to meet the city's needs. Contract, it'll be in the next discussion, we'll be recommending a limited notice to proceed, to basically keep the project elements moving, particularly the design effort that needs to be done. While the loan, elements of the loan kind of trickle forward, we expect to get those in July, but this will keep us on schedule for fall of 2016, which is, which is critical to meeting our need. We will return with the full award when that loan is, has been agreed to. And at this point, I'm going to turn over to Ms. Madeline Ward.
Madam Mayor, members of the council, my name is Madeline Ward. I'm the acting water conservation coordinator, and I will share a few slides with you in terms of our water conservation programs and outreach. To date, we've saved over 3,267 acre-feet of water since the drought was declared, so that's from February 2014 to May of 2015, and that's compared to 2013 usage, which, to put in layman's to put in layman's terms, is over a billion gallons of water saved. I think we're all really impressed with what the community has been able to do in terms of reductions. The demand for our programs still remains very high. We have water checkups, rebates, information on our website, tools for people to use, a lot of do-it-yourselfers, contact us and get the information they need to go out and make these changes in their landscape and their home, and we're really pleased with the community's response. I just wanted to focus on gray water. We've had a lot of requests for gray water information, and we have a lot of information available on our website. The laundry-to-landscape system that I'm portraying here on the screen, this is the simplest gray water system, and it also does not require a permit. So this is generally what we recommend in terms of gray water, and we have a lot of programs to support this. The city is a leader on gray water policy here in California, and work that the city did with a consultant led directly to the state exempting this simple laundry-to-landscape system from a building permit in 2009. So I can just quickly go through this schematic. The basics of the laundry-to-landscape system is that it uses the washing machine pump to pump the discharge water out into the landscape, and the materials generally tend to be quite simple. It's really just a drip irrigation system once you get it outside. Some of the important things are to use a three-way diverter valve, so you can choose if you want to send water out to the landscape or down to the sewer. If you're washing diapers or swirled items, you want those in the sewer, or if you're using bleach, you don't want to send that out to the landscape either. And then it's simply released out into a mulch basin, so that's released under the surface so people or pets cannot have contact with the pooled water. So this gray water system, the laundry-to-landscape, is part of our smart landscape rebate program. The materials are quite inexpensive. They're usually less than $400 because it's simply just a drip irrigation system for most of the components. We sponsor hands-on workshops for homeowners and for professional installers, and we've had over 20 workshops since 2009 on these gray water installations. We also have a laundry-to-landscape gray water DVD that's available at all of the libraries through the library system, and we have a sample plan that's available on our website. So anyone that's interested in gray water, we really have the resources here to help people install these.
So in April, we brought this to the council's attention, that there are three limited term staff that are included in this year's budget. We're just bringing this back just to make sure it's clear, particularly that this is going to be included in the staffing for this next year. And there are also two regular half-time water resources specialists that will be working at three-quarter time to help meet demand. And again, this continues to be a significant effort getting through this drought, and these staff have been absolutely critical to helping us respond to the community and be able to get back to them in a timely manner. And I think we're still maintaining responses to water checkups, two weeks out. Good. So as part of the recommendation, the council approved extending the three water resources specialist positions that were authorized only through June 30th, 2015, and temporarily increase hours for two regular part-time water resources specialist positions through June 30th of 2016. So at this time, answer any of your questions.
Thank you. Any questions at this point? Mr. Hotchkiss.
On gray water, soapy water is okay, but bleach water is not?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, the bleach water generally does not work well with the microorganisms in the soil or the roots, but for soapy water, some people still use their same laundry detergent and have not had a bad impact on their plants, but there are quite a few options of biocompatible laundry detergent, which is able to break down in the soil and not harm plants. So it really just depends on the user, but most people choose to go with biocompatible cleaners, which are available in a lot of the local grocery stores.
It says that on the box?
It says biocompatible, yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, we have a public comment speaker slip, Ms. Redmond.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I'm Kira Redmond from Santa Barbara Channel Keeper. I'm here to share some exciting news. In January, Channel Keeper submitted a proposal for a brand school master's group project that would help the city and other south coast water districts develop sustainable water supply portfolios. And despite a very competitive process, we were selected. So we will have six brand students advised by water guru Professor Bob Wilkinson, working for us over the next year to evaluate the costs and benefits, both economic and environmental, of a range of water supply and demand management alternatives available here, and to develop a methodology for south coast water districts to design the optimal mix of sources and strategies to meet demand while minimizing environmental and economic costs. While it's probably too late to stop the desal train, we look forward to their results, and we hope that it'll be useful for you moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, back to the council. Is there any other comments or is there a recommendation to move forward? Mr. White? It's item B.
I recommend, I move item B.
Okay. They moved in second. Any other comments? All in favor? Hi. Okay. Thank you. All right. Item 12.
A word of contract for the Charles E. Meyer Desalination Plant Final Design Phase, including recommendation E., adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara, replacing resolution number 15-017 stating the city's intent to reimburse expenses paid prior to either the issuance of obligations of the approval of the State Water Resources Control Board of the project funds, reactivation of the Charles E. Meyer Desalination Plant, and F., adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the City of Santa Barbara approving addendum to the 1991 Environmental Impact Report, State Clearing House Number 9010859, and 1994 Environmental Impact Report, State Clearing House Number 91121020, in support of the reactivation of the Charles E. Meyer Desalination Plant in Santa Barbara, California.
Thank you. Who's, uh, go, yeah. Please begin. Yeah. Thank you. It's your...
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm Linda Simansky, Principal Engineer in the Engineering Division, and I'm very happy to be here today to talk to you about the Charles E. Meyer Desalination Plant. Before I get started today, I did want to say a big thank you to a lot of people in the room and a lot of people who may be listening. This has been a group effort, and a lot of people have put in a lot of time and very hard work, and I very much appreciate all of their help, and I wanted to acknowledge them. I also wanted to acknowledge Mr. Mark Lambert. He's in the audience today. He is the CEO of IDE Americas, Inc., and if you have any questions for him later on, I think he'd be happy to entertain those. But for now, I'd like to get started. We've got a lot to cover today, as you can see in our overview. We're going to go over some background, where we've been on the project, talk a little bit about our selection process for the folks that we've selected for the project, talk a little bit about some of the project highlights, talk about costs, and I assume that that will be a fairly lengthy conversation, and then talk about how the water rates that have been proposed work into the cost for this facility. Also want to talk a little bit about the sequo addendum that's been prepared for this project, and then conclude with what we think the tentative timeline is for the project. So as Mr. Hagmark had gone through in his previous presentation, the desalination plant has been included in the city's 2011 Long-Term Water Supply Plan as a drought water supply, and we are recommending the reactivation of the desal plant. So to date, we've been to council several times for some various actions. Starting on May 6, 2014, we actually came before council to award preliminary design for the desalination project that was awarded to Corolo Engineers. On July 29, 2014, we came before council to look at financing and actually starting the water rate model to, for the financing of the desalination plant. And on September 3rd, 23rd, sorry, 2014, we were before council asking you to approve the procurement process of design, build, and operate, and then also requesting that you allow us to move forward with proposals for the design-build-operate contract. So in September of 2014, we did actually issue the request for qualifications for the project. We received five replies back to the request for qualifications, and in November of 2014, we did narrow that down to three firms and asked them to give us a request for proposals. Those firms that were pre-qualified were IDE Americas, who we will be requesting award to today, Aseona Agua, and also AECom. On March 5, we actually received our technical proposals back. We actually only received two proposals back of the three that we had solicited. AECom declined to give us a proposal. So through the month of March, we actually went through the rating and the interviews for the project. At this point in time, we had not seen any costs for the project. Our ratings and our interviews were based on just the proposals and qualifications only. And I wanted to point out that we had a very diverse panel that sat in with our, on our interviews and on our ratings. We felt it was very important that we do that. There were a lot of people involved in the project, and so we included people from Public Works Engineering, from the Water Resources Division, from Community Development, and also we had someone from the outside agency who is very well-versed in membrane technology sit in on our panel. On April 3, we actually made our final selection for, as IDE Americas. And I wanted to share with you just a little bit some of the ratings that came out from our review of the proposals. As you can see, it actually was a very close race. We received two excellent proposals, and, you know, it was a very difficult choice. In the end, I think as you look down through the various categories, I think the one that probably stood out the most is Part III, the Construction Schedule Planning and Sequencing. And that had a lot to do with the modularity that IDE is proposing for the plant. There's a couple of things involved with that that we felt really became part of Part III. It allows us to really meet the short timeframes that we have to get this project done. It also allows us to be more consistent with the existing permits that we have. The other piece about IDE Americas, I think that was very important to the team who did this election, was that they do have experience in California and have gone through the Department of Drinking Water process on the plant that they're currently working on in Carlsbad, and we felt that that was a very big plus for our project. Just to give you a little bit of background on IDE Americas, it is actually a wholly-owned subsidiary of IDE Technologies, which is an Israeli company. As you can see from the second bullet, IDE has some extensive experience throughout the globe. They've worked and supplied parts on over 400 desalination plants in 40 countries. We wanted to highlight just a couple of their recent projects. The project in Sorac, Israel, 165 million gallons a day, is actually the largest desalination project in the world. They are currently working on the Carlsbad Desalination Project, which I think you all have probably been reading a fair amount of lately. It's a 50-MGD project, and they are actually in the throes of startup right now. And then we also wanted to highlight one other project, the Hayman Islands in Australia. As you can see, it's a very small plant, so IDE does have the ability to scale up and down for the needs of their particular clients. And if you look at the bottom picture there, that is actually the facility in the Hayman Wanted to go over just a little bit of the layout. This is actually an aerial view of the desalination plant. This was taken back when the plant was in service. It's actually at 7,500 acre feet per year, so this was the actual layout that was on Just to kind of go over a little bit about what was involved in that plant, this particular area was actually the media filtration area. So when the seawater came in, it would go through this media filtration to take out a lot of the particulates and the solids and those types of things in the water. The water then actually passed on to the RO treatment, which was housed in what you see down there today as those tractor-trailer trucks. That's where all of the membranes were actually housed. The area in the back along Route 101 was actually the solids handling and the finished water, finished water area where all of the processing for the water before it goes out into the distribution system took place. And this last area is actually the administration building down in the right-hand corner of that purple box and the electrical areas. So that's, that was what the plant looked like back in the 1990s. We wanted to go over just a little bit about what the IDE proposed layout is, and I'm basically going to lay it over the top of what we have on this picture, so it helps you to kind of understand just a little bit better. So IDE actually is proposing a modular unit, as I had mentioned before. This modular skid actually does the media filtration and actually the RO, all on that one block that's shown on the bottom left. So a lot of the area that we had, that was used by the media filtration vessels before is actually going to go away, and that, that media filtration will be included on this skid area. So these skids will actually be installed in the yellow boxed area. Now, those two yellow boxes that are up there would be if we built the plant out to 10,000 acre feet per year. The shaded yellow area is the portion that we will be doing right now, the 3125 acre feet per year. So as you can see, there is the availability to expand the plant if needed, but for right now, we will be doing that smaller portion. The area that's in green, if the plant were to be expanded, that area would do a little bit more filtration at 3125. We do not need that right now. That area will basically house the finished water, product water at this time. The area along Route 101 actually doesn't change substantially in this project. We will be reusing a lot of the solids handling that was in the plant. We will also be reusing a lot of the chemical and lime that was used to process the finished water so that it is suitable for the distribution system, and we will also be reusing some of the product pumps. The area in purple, the electrical area and the administration area, while the electrical will be replaced, it actually will be housed in fairly much the same area, and the administration building will remain, although a lot of the functions that are in there, like the SCADA technology that runs the plant, will be upgraded. So I think this is the moment that everybody's been waiting for, the actual project costs, and I'd like to spend some time on this, on this table. The first column is actually what we had estimated in preliminary design. I think if you look down to the bottom total there, you'll see the $39 million number, which rounded up to the $40 million number that I think we had discussed quite a bit as we were moving through this project. And you can see how some of those, how those costs were broken out, a large, obviously a large amount for the construction cost. I wanted to point out that during preliminary design, what we were looking at was refurbishing a good portion of what we had at the plant. So when you look at these numbers, I want to keep in mind that that was the goal when we were putting these costs together. If you look at the last two columns, the final design contracts, the, and the IDE design-build-operate contract, these two columns together represent the total cost for the desal plant as we've estimated today. What we're looking at today and what we're recommending is actually in the green column, the final design contract costs. What we're recommending is that we go forward with design for just about $1.32 million. We'd actually like to award Corolo's full contract for this, for the desalination process, and then actually appropriate some money for the engineering folks to go forward with the project. The items that are in the DBO column actually will be what we'll be requesting when we come back to council after we've received the state revolving fund loan. So that would be the final construction, final, the remainder of the design, and the number of other costs that we need to include. So as you can see, there, there is a substantial difference in the cost that we projected at $40 million to what we're seeing today, which is just, just under $54 million. And the largest portion of that is actually in the construction cost of the project. And the largest portion of that is actually in the construction cost of the project. So this, this slide actually shows IDE's contract for the design build operating, for the design build cost versus what we had projected in preliminary design. So IDE's contract total, including the design that we're requesting today, is 44.8 million. And like I said, we will be back to award the remainder of their contract once we receive the SRF loan. Our estimate in preliminary design was 37 million, and that again is design and build costs. What I wanted to point out, as I had mentioned earlier, is when we had put together our preliminary design costs, we were looking at refurbishing a lot of the materials on site. And what we received in our proposals was slightly different. Both Aseona, the other proposer, and IDE actually upgraded a lot more material rather than refurbishing material. And there's several reasons for that. One, you know, a lot of the materials that we've had and preserved down at the plant are just old. It's tough to find replacement parts for these things. There's not a long operating life for them. Even with refurbishment, you don't get that same life that you would get out of a newer material. The other piece of it is, is that there are some, the way technologies have come along, there's actually potential to save a lot in energy and operating costs. And it's also a lot less risky for these folks to upgrade a lot of these materials rather than refurbishing and using them. So basically what they've offered us is a plant that will have a 20, 25-year life cycle rather than something that will hop five, that we will be needing to replace as we go along. So while, while our capital costs are going to be much higher, I think the one thing to recognize is that our annual operating costs after the plant has been put into operation are actually going to be much lower. We've got that on the bottom part of this, of this graph. In our estimated preliminary design, our annual operating cost estimate was $5.7 million per year. And that's the, the fixed cost that we have, that's chemical, that's electricity, all of the things to operate the plant. IDE, in their proposal, is estimating those operating costs to be $4.1 million per year. So on a per-year basis, actually a substantial difference. And that's because with the upgraded material, they've been able to pass on those operating savings to us. Just to look at probably the largest component of that operating cost, the original DSal plant used approximately 7,400 kilowatt-hours per acre-foot when it was running back in the 1990s. When we were looking at our preliminary design with refurbishing most of the equipment, we were looking at approximately 5,300 kilowatt acres per foot. IDE, in their proposal, is proposing 4,400 kilowatt-hours per acre-foot. And I, what I want to stress on this is that is actually their guarantee to us for the maximum amount of electricity that the plant will use. If they go over this amount, then they will pay for the amount over. If they're under this amount, then we will actually share those savings with them. So this is a guaranteed maximum from IDE. Just to look at this in another way, looking at the operating cost of water, just, you know, on the operations, on an annual basis, on a per-acre-foot basis, we were estimating in preliminary design that our cost was going to be $1,800 per acre-foot. With IDE's proposal, we're looking at just over $1,300 per acre-foot. Again, we're reaping the benefits of that operate, the newer materials and technology in reducing the operating costs. So I wanted to turn just a little bit to the state revolving fund loan and give you an update of where we are on that. We submitted that loan back in December of 2014. Just to remind you, the loan terms for this are 1.663% interest for 20 years. So very, very good terms. Where we stand right now is we are negotiating the final agreement with the state. We have cleared the administrative and most of the environmental. We are basically waiting for the SEQA addendum to be adopted today. That will go a long ways to fulfilling all of the loan statutes that we need to meet. And we hope to have this done and be back to council in mid-July to actually accept the loan and to award the remaining DBO contract. So I wanted to look at costs just briefly with the loan and with the IDE proposal. If you remember back when we started looking at water rates, we were looking at an alternate funding. It was 6% interest and it was a 10-year loan rate. So the terms that we have from the SRF loan are, you know, vastly superior to those. But what it means for us in terms of annual costs is that our debt service is actually going to reduce from 5.3 million per year to 3.2 million dollars per year. And that is basically just the change in the interest rate. Even with the higher costs of the DSal plant, we're still able to reduce our loan debt service because of that fantastic interest rate. We've also, with IDE's proposal, reduced the operational costs on an annual basis, and we just went over that. So in total, when you look at the annual costs, we've actually gone from what we were thinking would be $11 million per year on an annual basis, down to about $7.5 million per year, yes, I'm sorry, $7.5 million per year in payments on annual costs. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Hagmark right now to put that in perspective of our rates for you.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Joshua Hagmark, Water Resources Manager. So the, when we finally finished negotiation, or not negotiation, we finally opened proposals, we can now start to revisit our rate model that we had put together and start to plug in these final numbers, one of them being the updated costs for DSal. Our projections now for FY15, where we're going to end, particularly related to the conservation, conservation targets, projected FY16 budget that is proposed, and the 25% conservation change. The model previously when we ran it, the basis for the adopted rates on April 7th was at 20% conservation. So where we ended, and I'll just start real quick with DSal at the top here, these are expenditures. For FY16, we had anticipated, particularly with private debt, the bonds, we anticipated needed to start to repay that debt immediately. So there was the assumption that we'd have debt, debt service starting in, in next year. With the SRF loan, they ask that you only pay interest until the full project is completed. Based on our discussions with them, that now includes the feasibility study, so repayment of our debt isn't going to start until FY18. So that, that was the biggest drop in expenditures, which ultimately trickles down to approximately a $3 million reduction in expenditures for FY16. And then on the revenue side, we are recognizing roughly a $5 million drop in revenues. This is related to the move from 20 to 25% target, our, 20 to 25% conservation, as we previously have discussed. And so one of the things that I wanted to point out is that based on this conservation target, we are anticipating the need for increasing revenues in FY17. However, we are working on a contingency plan to hopefully head off or minimize that. Ultimately though, we will be dipping into reserves in FY16. We will be pulling from reserves. We will be going below council policy and talk a little bit about that. So, one more. So for FY15, we anticipate to be basically right at council policy for this year. Part of the challenge is there, because the community has been so successful at conserving, our revenues are coming in about $3, $3.5 million less than what we had expected. Going into FY16 now though, we're projecting to be about 7.2 million below council policy reserves and then eventually starting to come out of it in FY17. Now, what we've been working on though, to try and, you know, recover from that, is a contingency planning. So what we've been doing is identifying things that certainly could help that 7.2 million dollar dip into reserves. And one of those being the past DSal expenses. The $55 million a loan includes submitting and reimbursed for the $2.5 million that we've spent to date. So those costs are already being considered in the loan. So we would get, ultimately when the loan is approved, we could submit and automatically get $2.5 million back that we currently aren't recognizing yet in our revenues. That certainly can go towards helping to fill that gap in reserves this, next year. Grant funding, we've been very successful, successful at getting grants for the tertiary project, for the emergency pump project in the form, those grants are coming back. We've been approved for those grants, but we haven't yet seen the paperwork and haven't finalized that. That's a potential revenue coming in. There's also been, COME has been very successful at their habitat, fish habitat restoration projects. And ultimately, they've, I think they've received about $1.4 million in restoration grants. That trickles down to the city about a little over half a million dollars. Again, that will be coming back in FY16. Now moving over to the drought fund, we've roughly, I think about $4 million budgeted this year for groundwater development projects. If we don't have to drill a well, which I'm, you know, certainly hoping we don't have to, we could keep getting performance out of the wells we have, could be a possible savings of 2.7 million. Again, it just depends, we, we don't lose City Hall well here, that would be one of those wells that we'd probably say we need to move forward with. But there's a potential revenue improvement there. Water purchases, we have budgeted $4 million for this year. If we can take advantage and find any water that's out there, but if we don't, that, that $4 million would then roll back to reserves as well, helping, helping out. And then there's the last thing on the list, which is the council felt very strongly about continuing to fund the main program. I greatly appreciate that. But of the $4 million put aside for the main program, we believe 2.7 could be made available if we wanted to shore up reserves. So ultimately, in approximately 14.5 million, we believe there, it could be a possibility of working with that money to reduce or minimize our impacts at the end of fiscal year 16. And so just want to make the council feel more comfortable about the projected $7 million into reserves for this next year. So where does our rate stand? How do they compare to the other South Coast agencies? We're also struggling with conservation and the drought. And so we put together three charts here, one showing what we consider our low user, moderate user, and a high user. And so as you can see, the city maintains very competitive rates, these even with the cost of DSal, very competitive rates with our, with our surrounding agencies. And I think this is something the council should be very proud of when it comes to trying to minimize those impacts for those who are conserving or are on a fixed income and, and have a very, you know, limited water usage. As far as 12 HCF, this used to, we used to refer this as the average user. I like to call it the moderate now. I think our average have, have pushed down with the 25% conservation. And so with the moderate user, we still maintain very competitive rates with our neighboring agencies, just over $100 for what amounts to 1,200 cubic feet of water, which is pretty substantial. And then the last is for the high users, someone using 32 HCF. And again, this is eight times what a, this a 4 HCF user might be looking at. And, and this is where the, the costs of DSal and the cost of our expensive sources of water are being put on the, the tier-three users who, who are going to be picking up the bigger costs of this, of this water. So that's kind of how our rates shake out in comparison to our neighboring agencies. So at this time, kind of summarize it. So what we're doing is we're recommending we move forward with the proposed FY16 budget. The FY16 year-end reserve balance is projected to be just at or below council policy, or sorry, sorry, FY16 is projected to be substantially below council policy of about $7 million. We've identified numerous contingencies that we hope will help minimize that. Again, we are recommending that we revisit water rates and continue to do that until we get out of the drought, as there are so many dynamic changes going on with the cost of providing water service. And at this point, I'm going to turn it back over to Ms. Simansky.
So I wanted to just briefly talk about Corolo's contracts, one of the recommendations that we're making today. We're actually proposing that we award Corolo's contract in the base, in the amount of $2.253 million. Corolo will be, well, let me go back. They were selected under RFP to provide the preliminary design for the city. And we're proposing for them to act as our owner's representative and to help us with the management of the design, build, and operate contract. They will be doing the normal things that we would ask our design consultant or construction manager to do. They will be reviewing design, they will be reviewing submittals, they will be giving us advice. A few other things that we've asked them to do that are out of our, our ordinary is to provide inspection and plan check services for us. This is going to be a very fast-moving project, and we've worked with the Community Development Building Department on how do we get a project that needs to move this fast through all of our process? And so we've worked together and come up with the idea of having a deputy building inspector and plan checker. This person will actually be under Corolo's contract but be working very closely with the building department. They will be available to us when we need them and not really impacting the workload of other staff. So we feel this is a really great solution to having someone onboard with us to help move the project along. We've also asked Corolo to participate with us through the first year of operation. You know, this is a very complicated contract and, you know, the first time that the city will be doing an operation with somebody else. So while we have the contracts with IDE and there are some guarantees in there, we will need to be going through and monitoring the operations. We will be need to, be needing to settle out costs with them. So we've asked Corolo to help us with that through the first year and also build us some tools to make this much easier for us to be able to do in the future. I want to turn over to the, the SEQA information now on the SEQA addendum, and I want to introduce, introduce Mr. Joe Monaco from DUDAC. He has worked very closely with our planners to put together the SEQA addendum for this project.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers. The project was analyzed in two separate environmental impact reports in the past, the first being prepared and certified in 1991. That EIR addressed the initial construction and operation of the facility as a temporary drought relief facility. Then in 1994, the city determined that the facility should be made part of its long-term water supply, a permanent part of the water supply. So the 1994 EIR then addressed that aspect of converting the facility to a permanent facility, addressing any permitting needs required for that. The conclusion of both of the environmental impact reports were that there were no significant environmental impacts that could not be either avoided or mitigated. So the purpose of the addendum is to build on the analysis and rely on the analysis of those two past environmental impact reports and in a, in a way that thoroughly addresses all the current requirements of SEQA. And specifically, it analyzes the repair, replacements, and maintenance activities that you heard about earlier. The reactivation project, as it's referred to in the addendum, involves less construction than the original project, obviously because many of the facilities are being reused or refurbished. It includes, as Ms. Simansky mentioned, improved energy efficiency and also includes updates to the intake screens that would minimize or lessen the entrainment effects associated with the intake. The conclusion that's documented in the addendum is that there are no new impacts or increases in the severity of impacts that were addressed in either the 1991 or the 1994 EIR. And also documents that an addendum is the appropriate environmental documentation under the state SEQA guidelines. And then I just wanted to touch on one issue, and that's G, greenhouse gas emissions, carbon emissions specifically. In 19, the 1991 EIR did estimate the, the amount of carbon emissions, specifically CO2 emissions in that case, and at an operational capacity of 7,500 acre-feet a year, that, that number was 25,854 metric tons on an annual basis. The current estimate based on the energy factors that you heard earlier is approximately eight, approximately 9,000 metric tons of CO2 equivalents on an annual base for the same production capacity. That amount is both within the parameters of the city's climate action plan and consistent with the goals of that plan, as well as within the threshold that was recently established by the Air by the Air Pollution Control District for stationary sources. And although this project is not a stationary source, that guidance was used as sort of a general guidance for purposes of SEQA. And then just briefly touching on the permit status, back in September, we reported to you what the status of the permits were at that time. Since then, there have been some additional developments, particularly with the Coastal Commission. Staff determined that a, the Coastal Commission staff determined that a coastal development permit for repair and maintenance activities was needed. The city sought and secured repair and maintenance CDP from the Coastal Commission in February of 2015 that addresses all of the reactivation activities. The NPDES permit is due for renewal this year. It was, an application was submitted to the Regional Water Quality Control Board, and an administrative extension to the permit was granted to the city based on lack of staff resources to process a renewed permit. However, the regional board additionally amended the permit back in January of 2015 to address, specifically address findings for seawater intake under Section 13, 142.5B of the Water Code, which is also consistent with the recently approved ocean plant amendments that were adopted by the state board back in May of this year. The California State Lands Lease, the determination stands as it was when we reported to you in September, that the activities needed for reactivation are within the legislative granted area of the cities. So there is no state lands jurisdiction and no leases required. California Department of Public Health, actually the Division of Drinking Water, the city's operating permit will be amended as a part of this process when the plant is up and running. The city is also seeking a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers 404 and Section 10 of the Rivers and Harbors Act permit. This is related to construction within navigable waters, particularly, more specifically, the intake improvements. And then finally, the city's issued CDP is subject to substantial conformance finding, which is scheduled to be filed this, within the next week or so.
So that brings us pretty close to the end of our presentation. We wanted to give you a tentative timeline of where we think we will be moving forward. Like I had mentioned earlier, we hope to return to council in July, and at that time, we hope to accept the state revolving fund loan and actually award the remainder of the design, build, operate contract. By October of 2015, we hope to have completed our design work. I should mention that what we have right now would be considered about a 30% design. So we will be completing design hopefully by October, and we'll be also doing some site preparations during that time. By November, we hope to be in full-blown construction, and we hope to be producing water by September 2016. So our recommendations for council today are that we appropriate $3,755,844 from water fund reserves, that we authorize the execution of a contract with IDE Americas for just over $1.32 million to complete design. That contract will take us through August 2015. We'd also like to ask for authorization to execute a contract with Corolo Engineers to do our project management for this project. We'd also like council to adopt a resolution stating the city's intent to reimburse the state for the loan money that we will be getting from them. And then we'd also like to recommend adoption of the resolution approving the addendum to the EIRs. That concludes it. Thank you. We'll take questions.
We'll start with questions, and I know we have some public comment. Speaker slips. I have a couple of questions, maybe I'll start with. The GHG emissions under SEQA, you were mentioning the amount, slide, what, 29, I guess? And that was for 7,500 acre-feet per year, although we're being, we're looking for now at 3,125 acre-feet per year. So that estimated amount should be, what actually would happen under our current plan would be about half or so, right? It's proportional based on the operation?
It's generally proportional, yeah. It would be a little less than half in that instance.
Okay. But that's just how you did the measurements compared to the 1991 GHG emissions with 7,500? Okay.
That's correct. In fact, the addendum addressed production capacity at 7,500 acre-feet a year across the board. So that's important to note, that it looked at the, sort of the worst case of the authorizations that are pending before you today.
Okay. So if we're looking, okay, there was just a question as we move forward, if we're looking at 3125 acre-feet in GHG emissions and what we want to do about that, we'll want to know what the actual, that actual number is, and it's much less than what you showed today?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And then the cost, the operational cost that you had, is that at 3,125 acre-feet a year? Or is that higher, the 4.1, I guess?
Madam Mayor, that is at the 3125 acre-feet.
Okay. And then same with the construction cost that's gone up? Is that, because the, you had the layout of the place, and it looked like if we wanted to expand beyond 3125 acre-feet, there'd be more piece, parts, I guess, to allow for the capability of creating more desalinated water. So that cost, though, is just for the 3125 acre-feet, that smaller footprint? Or is it the expanded footprint?
Madam Mayor, that cost is actually for the 21 acre, 3125 acre-feet. However, it actually does include a lot of the piping for us to expand the plant. So while we won't be putting in the extra RO skids or any of the potential media, extra media that we might need for filtering for those higher rates, the piping will be in so that we wouldn't have to go back and do that if we did decide to expand the plant. So that piping is included in that cost.
Okay. So if we did need to go to 7,500 acre-feet, it wouldn't be twice as much in construction or anything, it'd be a portion? Do we have an estimate of anything like that?
So Madam Mayor, as part of the proposal, we did ask IDE to obviously look all the way up to 10,000, but they gave us pricing for a 7,500 acre-foot facility. The pricing that they gave us would be an additional 20 million to add that 4,000, roughly 4,000 acre-feet of additional capacity. And the operating costs, I don't remember them offhand, but the operating cost drops down dramatically. I think we presented $1,300 an acre-foot. The operating cost dropped down to about $900 an acre-foot at that higher operating capacity because there's a lot of fixed and labor costs associated with it. So the larger the facility, the more efficient it operates. And we wanted to have that for our planning purposes, should we need to make that decision in spring of next year if this drought does continue.
Okay. So the rates that we approved is for 3125 acre-feet, and you went through all of that in terms of how we're going to meet those financing goals?
Right.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Mayor Schnider. So I need some help with my SEQA processing. So the addendum, it, so an EIR usually comes out, a draft EIR, it's circulated, people get to make comments on it. That's not the same thing with an addendum? Or that's the definition of an addendum? It gets to skip that process?
It, the guideline, the SEQA guidelines does not require circulation or public review of an addendum. It is a documentation of the prior EIR's application to the specific activity.
Okay. There was just a whole lot of stuff in there that I would imagine the public would want to take a look at it. So there's, so there's no public comment on this, on this? We're not, and it was released June 10th? That's the date I see on it.
The date on the addendum is June 10th, and that was just the date of completion of the final addendum.
And then I got an email earlier from GeoSource Foundation criticizing the entity that we're considering giving the contract to. I think they're trying to sell us a different kind of technology, but they did make allegations that the person we might go with, or the entity that we might go with, that they will bid one thing and then the cost goes up after a while. Did you investigate that, Mr. Hagmark?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, yes, we did look into those. And as you can imagine, there are lots of people out there with lots of ideas about water supply. In particular, they have no documented use of it in a large municipal application, difficult time finding information on their website. You know, they noticed they didn't attach anything, there was no link. So I think that's, it's a little too good to be true what they're talking about, and I don't, I'm not sure that they're fully in the loop as to what our demands and needs are. I mean, there's been a lot of companies, certainly with the ones that can pull moisture out of the air. There's a lot of entities out there, but I don't, we're looking at an application that is tried and true and has been worked in numerous applications for municipal, municipal use.
Hey, I just, I just had to ask. And then, were we having some issue with the loan related to the EIR issue or, please?
Madam Mayor, Councilwoman Mario, no, we're not having any, any loan-related issue with the addendum. It was the matter of completion of the addendum, and the state loan requires that we have that SEQA document completed. So it was really a matter of timing more than anything else. There was nothing else associated with that other than timing.
So it looks like we're good with getting the loan?
It does. We're negotiating our final contract. There are, I think, are very few things left at this point that we need to work with the state on, and our hope is that we can finish it up shortly and be back accepting it in July.
That's it. Thank you.
Mr. Hart?
Well, this is really helpful information, and it represents a tremendous amount of work in a very short period of time. So I want to say thank you for all that. Do you know what the standby operating costs are versus the original estimate? I imagine they're less because the operating costs are less, but how much less are they?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, the preliminary estimate was $2.5 million a year was the standby cost. IDE's proposal is $1.5 million per year standby costs.
If, again, that's hopefully the most important number of all, so. The decision to extend the loan terms from 10 to 20 years, that's based on the fact that the low-interest state loan makes it so attractive to borrow money at that very low interest rate?
Councilmember Hart, yes, that's correct. We could pay it off in 10 years. I just don't know why we would at that interest rate, yeah.
Okay. And then the process to use, to decide on using Corolo for construction management, this has sort of been evolving because we used them initially to do the preliminary estimates for the plant, and then they developed a level of expertise that's sort of hard to replicate. But was there a point along that process where you thought about doing an RFP for that work? I mean, it is independent construction management work. There are other companies that do that. Just want to know more about what your thinking was in that regard.
Councilmember Hart, well, it is, it isn't construction management as we're used to. That's typically where we take the low bidder and we manage the contract. A lot of this is on IDE. They are managing the design, they're managing construction, they're going to be operating it. And so the role of Corolo, and this is more of an owner's representative, to make sure that what IDE says they're going to do, they do, and it's kind of a checks and balances, particularly to advise us if IDE wants to change something and they want to discuss a cost or credit to that. So it felt, we never did entertain some, another individual. We felt that Corolo's experience, getting up to, getting anybody else up to speed on something like this just wasn't, in the timeframe we had, wasn't going to be reasonable. And felt like, you know, Corolo has done a fantastic job to date helping us to pull everything together, and we didn't feel like we'd get a better product from anybody else at this point.
There's not a huge pool of experienced firms in this niche, right? Is that part of it too? So has Corolo done this before in other, with other D-SAL plants?
Corolo has actually done design, build before, and so they're experienced in that. They have actually done some brackish water plants, not actually a D-SAL plant, but the same sort of technology.
Okay, good. This is sort of a, probably a future agenda item question because it has to do with the contract terms and everything, and does this, what is the length of term that we are proposing to do with IDE to operate the plant?
So Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, this is a five-year operational contract. So as we discussed, this facility will be online in February, or, sorry, September of 2016. It would be five years of operations after that. So that's basically the term of this contract. And then it's extendable the way we have it set up, or we can rebid those operational services.
So it's extendable on the existing terms, just for length, or additional lengths of terms? Okay. And then is there anything in the contract that restricts our ability to do something different with the plant? For example, the conversation with the Montecito Water District is evolving, and we have been not engaged in that conversation because we had to make sure that we had our permits and everything was lined up, and it all made sense. Now they have approached the Coastal Commission to talk about the possibility of amending our permit to allow us to do some sort of a regional facility. Is there anything in that future contract that would limit our ability to do, to entertain that possibility and to work with them as a partner?
Councilmember Hart, we don't believe there's anything that would limit us in the current contract.
And you've looked at that very carefully because this is, this is a super important moment when, you know, we're going down that path. Just want to make sure that that's been looked at explicitly because it really hasn't been council policy to look at that. So I would imagine that isn't something that you would have considered necessarily unless you really were thinking ahead for, which would be great.
Well, Councilmember Hart, we did, like I said, we planned, we, IDE's proposal looks at this facility going out to 10,000 acre-feet. So as far as technically, that capacity is there, particularly even have costs going up to 7,500 acre-feet. So in that sense, we're solid. Ms. Connect would like to speak to the legal application.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart. There's one point I would just like to add, make an addendum to what Mr. Hagmark is saying, and that is that we're not quite finished negotiating the contract yet. So I hesitate for him to speak quite so definitively about that point. Because one of the issues that remains is the intellectual property issue, and that would, you know, kind of directly go to this issue about what we could do with the plant in the future. So I want to kind of hold him back on that a little bit.
Well, the reason I ask is just to make sure eyes wide open, provide as much flexibility as is possible because there may be an opportunity here. I mean, it is striking to look at how much more efficient it is on a per-acre-foot basis to see a larger plant operating. And so there, it does seem like there are interests that run parallel between us potentially in the Montecito Water District, particularly if you look out, you know, what our real need may be. It may not be 10,000 acre-feet, it may be less. So I just want to make sure that there's nothing that gets in the way of that. You know, I'm thinking about other legal agreements that we recently signed where that question wasn't asked, and I wish I'd asked it. So I'm definitely asking it this time.
Mr. Ross?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We're following along the same theme and anticipating either our expanded needs or certainly the desires of neighboring agencies. We've already talked about the piping and the capacity all the way up to potentially 10,700. Does that trigger another SEQA process, or have we already covered that in this initial process going forward if we decide to go to the next increment? And then I guess going into the financing is jumping the gun in terms of how that would be structured, but, so will we have, since we're already building that, it seems like the capacity being built in anticipation of potentially that next increment? Please.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember House, the, as I mentioned, the addendum does address the capacity range all the way up to the 7,500 acre-foot capacity. What could potentially require additional analysis would be any additional facilities that are needed to convey the water to the Montecito District. The Montecito District would also be a, is also subject to SEQA compliance on their own, so they would have to ensure that whatever activities or actions their board took were compliant with SEQA.
Right. Because as we've water-wheeled between agencies during this particular time and bought water, it seemed like it's almost a natural fit if the capacity were there to go forward.
Well, just to follow up before I get to Mr. White, to be clear, so I understood when we went to the Water Quality Control Board and to the Coastal Commission, is that the permits we received was for emergency drought response for city water residents. And so we can go up to 10,000 acre-feet should the city need it, but if we wanted to expand to other water districts, that creates a whole nother layer of regulatory review. Is that correct?
Madam Mayor, we're still operating within the boundaries of our original permits that were issued, and the original coastal development permit was issued, contemplated Montecito as part of that permit. So as long as we're operating within that permit, but that, there are questions about, you know, what, what that means.
Right.
So we need to, we need to really look at that issue.
So it's not like we can just say, oh, tomorrow, we're just going to go to Montecito Water District? I mean, there's definitely some review that needed.
Right. I mean, what it would take to do that, you know, we just got approval of a coastal development permit for the repair and maintenance to reactivate at the 3125. So anything beyond that would require a new look and probably, you know...
To the 3125 or to 7,500?
No, well, we got the coastal development, the re, the re- No, well, we got the coastal development, the repair and maintenance.
For the 10.
Okay, for the 10. So, as you can see, there's a number of questions about what that would mean to go beyond that at this point, so.
Okay, that's how I understood. It was for city, it was for drought response, emergency drought response, not, but it was about 10,000, it was for 10,000 acre feet.
Right, and it was definitely for drought response to serve the city. Well, okay, there was no conditions in it, but...
Well, let's, well, we should get that clear before we get back to the actual big contract of the build component and the operating component, which is coming back in July. Just to be absolutely clear about what we're able to do and what would require further review, regulatory review. I mean, today we're just looking at the final design anyway. So, all these other questions about Montecito Water District is really not applicable for today's vote because we're looking at the final design. So, but I think we need to be crystal clear on what those answers are when we come back in July.
Well, Madam Mayor, part of this is the Montecito staff have met with regional board staff and coastal commission staff and have received, I guess, feedback from them that they would support a partnership with the city over them pursuing their own D cell plant. And so, we're still trying to understand exactly what the regional board staff told them and what they meant by that, and so, we are gathering information on that now.
Okay, but for today, none of that matters.
That's right.
Just to be clear.
That's right.
And we'll get more clarity as we move along, but certainly would want to get clarity before the July date when we're looking at the build and operating contract that comes back. Okay, Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and sorry to pound this into the water or ground. Ms. Connect was saying that this is a drought response permit, and my understanding was that this is a long-term supply permit, that this is, so I would appreciate hearing the answer on that.
And Councilmember White, I think that's where the confusion lies a little bit because are we talking about the original permits that were issued or are we talking about the permits that were recently issued for the reactivation? So, and I think Ms. Bjork wanted to clarify a little bit more on my response to that, so, do you want to?
Sure.
Yeah.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. There have been a lot of permits, so not surprisingly, there's some confusion about what does what. Our original permit for this plant, for the permanent long-term plant, was the one issued by the Coastal Commission in 2004, I believe. Those permit conditions still apply and they can contemplate four different operating scenarios, inclusive of a regional plant that could include Montecito. Those permit conditions were upheld. The more recently applied for a permit condition was a maintenance and repair permit for work in the ocean to do modifications and maintenance to reinstall the screens, pumps, and things that required a maintenance and repair permit in order to get the plant operational and go. So, generally speaking, our permits are for operation of the plant within the four different scenarios, but we would be most comfortable taking a look at these issues with regard to talking about how we can use it beyond our current contemplated use, which is getting it ready for this drought response and bringing that back to you in that context. Then, we would have a chance to look at it in terms of what does it mean we can do and what we can't do because what we've been looking at as a staff have been, how do we respond to our current drought emergency?
And then, my second question, Madam Mayor, is about, in the executive summary, your staff report, you indicate that sedimentation in Kachuma is one of the reasons why we should be, could be looking at this as a long-term supply. Do we have a quantification on sedimentation in Kachuma at this point? I hadn't heard a specific number on that in a goodly long time.
So, Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, what we wanted to do is kind of plant the seed that there are other impacts to our water supply despite drought that we'll want to look at in more detail. Unfortunately, we don't have all that and we're here to discuss our needs related to the drought, but there certainly are things that threaten our water supplies that may make keeping this facility online very advantageous, particularly, I think, since Kachuma was built, they have lost about 25,000 acre feet of capacity. That's roughly a year. The county is currently working on a study about what the safe yield of Kachuma is and they're looking and basically saying that the lake is over-allocated and we could be looking to up to a 20% decrease in our annual allocation from the lake. Furthermore, we have the biological opinion that's still working its way through and anticipate it wanting to allocate additional water for fish habitat. And again, that just decreases the amount of water that would be available from Kachuma, which as you know, is a big source of affordable water for the city. And so, how do we backfill that if that indeed gets reduced? And so, certainly having the D cell plant continue to operate would provide a significant amount of that water.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then, finally, before we get to public comment, is there anyone from IDE here who can introduce themselves and say hello? And there we go, put a face to this entity. If you could introduce yourself and welcome.
I'm Madam Mayor, Councilpeople. My name is Mark Lambert. For the record, I'm the CEO of IDE Americas and we're very proud to become part of this project should you vote today. We've been working for over six months, I think, with your great staff. I can't say that I've seen a community do a better job of planning. Some of the slides that Mr. Hagmark show are kind of far beyond what we normally see. And so, from a strategic perspective, I would support the decision that you're making. We're here to help. It's what we do for a living. All we do is desalination. It was mentioned earlier that we are doing the Carlsbad Desalination Plant, which is going through its commissioning phase today as we speak and it'll be producing water in September. Happy to answer any specific questions that you had about what you saw. I thought it was a pretty complete presentation.
Great, thank you very much. Thank you. Okay, let's get to public comment. We have a few speaker slips here. We'll start with Tom Woodrow, then Kira Redman, then Phil Walker.
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, Tom Woodrow, City Watch. First off, I just wanted to thank Councilmember Hart for bringing up a couple of the points we brought to your attention at the last meeting that were concerned to City Watch, just the notion of whether or not we needed a regional facility in light of what Montecito is doing, whether or not we need a larger facility. That's another question I think is considerable. Also, considering that we buy state water from the governor where we subsidize the construction of the twin delta tunnels, so state water is more expensive. And I wondered whether or not, City Watch wondered whether or not there was an opportunity to go for a larger D cell plant if necessary. Also, I wanted to address the idea of the 4.1 million in operating costs. I think Ms. Mario, Councilmember Mario, mentioned that she thought that perhaps there could be a partnership with solar companies to help mitigate the cost of energizing that plant, but City Watch also says there are oil and gas companies, and I know it's not particularly popular right now, but they do need permits and they do need to be accommodated and they do fund a lot of what we do here in Santa Barbara County. And that 4.1 million is a lot of money to operate it when it's not on standby. And in light of the fact that we may be going to the people to ask them for $7 million a year in tax revenue and a sales tax to fix roads, that $4 million, if you could save it through a partnership with the private sector, would certainly be material. Thanks very much.
Kira Redman?
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm here to express concerns with the SEQA addendum and its determination that a supplemental EIR is not required for reactivation of the D cell plant as proposed. Since the public was given six days to review the 470-page document, I haven't had much time to research this, but my initial review suggests that this is wrong. SEQA guidelines say no subsequent EIR is needed unless new information of substantial importance, which was not known when the previous EIR was certified, shows that the project will have more significant effects not discussed in the previous EIR, significant effects would be substantially more severe than shown, mitigation measures or alternatives previously found infeasible would in fact be feasible and would substantially reduce one or more significant effects, or mitigation measures or alternatives considerably different from those analyzed in the previous EIR would substantially reduce one or more significant environmental impacts. The 1991 EIR is finding that the impingement and entrapment impacts of the intake would be insignificant was based on grossly inadequate studies, basically a few plankton toes done offshore of Ormond Beach, 40 miles south of here, in the early 80s. Fortunately, science has evolved over the past 35 years and studies that estimate impingement and entrapment are far more sophisticated today. Moreover, as Mr. Monaco admitted at the January Regional Water Board hearing, the impingement and entrapment calculations were based on an erroneous intake volume that was 18 times less than the actual intake volume. This seems to trigger SEQA conditions in itself that would require an additional EIR. There is a strong likelihood that the city's open ocean intake would indeed have a significant adverse effect on marine life, but we don't know because the city has never properly evaluated this. Even with the use of a 1-millimeter wedge wire screen, there's likely to be significant adverse environmental impact on marine life. The state water board's D cell expert panel concluded that intake screens reduce entrapment of all organisms present in seawater by no more than 1%. The state D cell policy cites studies that find a 1-millimeter screened intake will result in zero reduction of entrapment for some of the most prevalent larvae in California waters. Finally, the old EIR barely addressed a subset of subsurface intake alternatives and dismissed them as infeasible. Thankfully, technology has advanced over the past 24 years and today's subsurface intakes are indeed feasible and are being used at numerous D cell plants around the world. This seems to be yet another strong indication that additional environmental review is necessary at this time pursuant to SEQA. Thank you.
Phil Walker? Is Mr. Walker here? No, he hasn't. Okay, so that concludes the public comment. It's to the council. Mr. White?
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, this project is one whose time has come. This is, I think that when I look back on now, a year and a half of basically standing, sitting here nervously waiting, hoping for rain and finding that we're not getting that and look, and starting the process of seeing what our permit process is, what our financing options are, and how we can manage importing water, which I think we have done a good job of managing off-the-cuff imports. Nonetheless, we find ourselves, for the purpose of reliability, needing to move forward with this project today. So, I'm certainly in firm support of it and at the right time, I'd be pleased to make the motion to approve this.
I don't see any of the lights on, so you can go right ahead if you'd like.
Right. Then, I move that the council appropriate funds for reactivation of the plant, execute the professional service agreements as outlined in the staff report, including the contract with Corolo engineers, and adopt resolutions to reimburse ourselves with funds spent prior to the issuance of loans, and finally, approve the addendum to the 1991 EIR.
Second.
Okay, so basically, recommendation A through F.
The full set of staff recommendations, Madam Mayor.
Okay, okay. Moved in second, and Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I will have to be voting for this today. Today, we received an email from Brad Smith of Sweetwater Collaborative calling for a water stewardship council. I hear from Channel Keeper today that they're undertaking a study with some Bren students. I really would like to initiate long-term planning for our water supply needs. I see we have to do this today. The D cell plant will use a lot of power and we're moving toward community choice energy renewable sources to balance that out, but we are charging ahead without it being in place. And the D cell plant is so expensive, the water rates are so expensive for our customers. And I hear people saying, let's make some landscaping changes. What's more important, you know, these yards that we're so used to or really planning ahead for a world dealing with climate change, with global climate disruption? And we haven't talked about that today. That is one of the items that, the arguments for doing D cell because things are so unknown as we go forward with this new reality in our natural environment. So, I've talked about this before, putting together a summit of these genius people who have been coming to talk to me at City Hall, Art Ludwig, Joe Giever, other people who have these great ideas. And if I can't do it through the city government bureaucracy, then I will work with the community to put something together so that we can think about water, rainwater capture, stormwater capture, and so that we don't demonize the steelhead trout because they have to get some water too, all right? The fish and the other animals and the habitat, all of that is suffering under the drought just like we are. You know, I'm not resenting that we have to let go some water for the fish, okay? So, I'm glad to work with the community members that want to forge a different kind of vision, not against our staff, but, you know, in cooperation with them. But I'll be voting for the motion, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Mr. White, you had something else, and then Mr. Francisco?
Yeah, I think that it's, and I do too appreciate the range and depth of contributions that we have received over the last 18 months on a variety of water topics. But I want to ask those of you who are making those good suggestions to start that planning a whole lot sooner. Where, we had a long-term water supply plan that we worked on for several years, there wasn't a lot of input in that from the public. It's kind of like wildfire where when things get really bad, then the room is full. And so, now, help us drive this conversation over the next five years. Hopefully, Kachuma will be spilling next spring and, but it's in that time of wealth of water that we start planning for the next drought and we do it with many years' advance notice so that we can prioritize, invest. That's the way we can do it. If we're a year out from being in critical shape, that's not a time when we can do long-term planning. So, help us over the long term to get to these better places with conservation and management of our resources.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with Mr. White and both city water staff and this council has been doing long-term planning concerning our water supply for decades. And obviously, there's always new ideas out there. There's always new technology coming along. But I believe that we have done a good job of examining what the available possibilities are out there. And as Mr. Hagmark pointed out, one of the great advantages of desalination for the city of Santa Barbara is that that is a source of water that we control. Unlike Kachuma, unlike the state water project, unlike many sources, which I have to say, the environmentalists have been very successful at diverting what was originally intended for human use. This one will be under our control and it is more expensive than our other sources of water. But it is unlike other sources of water in that we completely control it. And there is great value in that to the people of this community and to the people of this region. Thank you.
But I'd first like to commend our city water users for their conservation efforts. Between that and then the aggressive pursuit of purchasing other water from our staff and us having the funding to enable to purchase it, we actually delayed this decision, I think, at least by a year. And so, that, and we gave ourselves, I think, as much time as we could with the information we had at the time to implement our water supply management plan and stretch it out as much as we could. And we still need that conservation effort as was said earlier. So, really to thank everyone involved for doing their part and to please continue doing it. And I know we're just doing the final design piece today and we're going to come back in July for the big ticket item, which is the build and operate contract. But, you know, we are moving down this path and I think it is, adds to the portfolio of different options that we have for water supply. And I look forward to hearing from the new project with the Bren school students and Channel Keeper, to hearing from Heal the Ocean. I know is working on indirect potable reuse. There's lots of different things out there that we're talking about. What to do on a regional level and a long-term basis is a conversation we do need to have at the appropriate time and that is coming up pretty soon, actually. So, to this day, this is the culmination of a lot of work and I know there's more to come, but I just want to commend everyone involved in getting us to this point. And if Mother Nature could tell us what she had planned this winter, we'd probably breathe a little easier... a little easier or not, or, but she doesn't, and so we'll have to do what we can with the information that we have, and I think this is the right path for this moment in time. So with that, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you. We're going to do the one last, right? Are you still up for the water rates? We'll do that, and then we'll take a break right after that. So unless you want to take a break, or we want to take a break right now, are we okay? The next one should be pretty quick. Yeah. So let's read item number 13. Public hearing regarding proposed utility rate increases for fiscal year 2016.
Madam Mayor, council members, my name is Chris Toth. I'm the wastewater system manager here with San Diego. With me is Matt Forre, our environmental services manager. We're going to give a brief presentation on our proposed utility rate increases for the upcoming fiscal year. By a quick overview, we're going to talk about state law noticing matters. We'll discuss briefly the wastewater rates that are proposed, the trash recycling rates proposed, and then the issue of a public hearing, which this is part of. The state law and noticing involves Proposition 218, which governs our service charges for wastewater and trash recycling collection. Wastewater and solid waste notice was provided in utility bills this past year. And during this process, over the last several months, the city received two protest letters as of today. By way of public process, in March, on March 17th, the city proposed adjustments to these utility rates, and that was presented to the city's finance committee. In March 23rd, the city began mailing notices to waters, to wastewater rate and trash rate payers. On May 12th, we again met with the finance committee and recommended rate adjustments that are now being recommended to the city council. And so to talk specifically about wastewater rates, in fiscal year 16, the city's proposing a 5.5% rate increase. And subsequent years, currently with our financial plan, are to have 5% rate increases annually thereafter. In terms of comparing our wastewater fees with those of other agencies locally, we see we are more or less in the midpoint. We're proposing for single-family residents, average users, a utility bill 4536 for wastewater services, and we compare favorably with other agencies that are nearby. So our FY '16 recommendations for wastewater are a 5.5% wastewater rate increase for all customer classifications, and that during this coming year, we'll update our commercial user rates based upon additional research and outreach that we do this fiscal year coming up. And so I must mention also that we plan to study the potential drought wastewater rates for fiscal year 17. That is, we've done great as a community conserving water, but those have had an impact on our wastewater revenue. And so with that, I'd like to turn it over to Matt Foray, who's going to talk about trash and recycling rates.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. Matt Foray, environmental services manager. Just to briefly talk about the proposed adjustments to trash and recycling rates for fiscal year 16, they fall into three categories that you have, thank you. We've traditionally brought to you. Two are contractually mandated. That's a CPI adjustment to Marborg, our franchise waste hauler, as well as a pass-through of any tipping fee increases from the landfill and the processing facilities that accept and process city waste. And the third is to continue a rebalance of the multi-unit property cart, can, and dumpster rates that we began back in 2013. So very quickly, every year pursuant to our contract with Marborg, we grant them a CPI adjustment based upon the CPI index. It's very small, the CPI continues to be virtually flat, and Marborg receives 70% of the CPI, the year-over-year CPI adjustment. The thinking is that 70% of the collection costs are attributed to the hauling portion, and about 30% of a customer's bill are related to processing and disposal. So they receive 70% of the CPI. We also have a very nominal increase to the tipping fees charged at Tahiquis this year, and so that'll be passed through to Marborg to keep them whole on disposal costs. So with those two adjustments, rates across the board for residential, multi-unit properties and business customers will increase about 0.8%, very small compared to other years. The last adjustment to the rates that we're proposing is to rebalance the rates for multi-unit property carts, cans, and dumpsters. It's something that we began back in 2013, when we executed the new contract with Marborg. Traditionally, the cost of service in multi-unit cans and carts has been drastically lower than equivalent service in dumpsters. And so when we, when we signed the new contract with Marborg, we closed that gap a bit, we brought it to within 10%, and we've been slowly adjusting those rates on a revenue-neutral basis year-over-year until we bring them to 1 to 1. Because multi-unit properties are highly variable, and customers have a lot of needs, and carts and cans don't always accommodate large bulky items. Dumpsters don't have to be rolled to the curb, they're serviced in place, unlike carts and cans. So this is really just a customer service enhancement that we're doing. So the net, I'm sorry, so the net effect of that is that the cost of carts and cans will increase, and the cost of dumpsters will decrease slightly, is the end result. So what does it look like for typical customers? These are the same customer classes that we bring to you every year. A very standard, single-family residential customer with 65 gallons of trash will see a 0.8% increase. Same with the multi-unit dumpster customer there on the third line will see a decrease of 0.8%. And then I showed the middle customer, this is a multi-unit property with 15 cans of service, and you'll see that their total rate increase is 2.4%. And we limited the impact of this rate readjustment to 2% on any individual customer, net of the CPI and the tipping fee increase. So the same with the business customers, you'll see that it's the straight 0.8% across the board for a cart-can customer, as well as for a dumpster customer in the business sector. So if there are, we can take questions. Otherwise, we would recommend that, that council hold the public hearing as required by state law regarding the proposed utility rate increases for water, for, sorry, wastewater and solid waste collection services for fiscal year 16, and then provide direction to staff regarding any changes to the proposed fiscal year 16 utility rates for wastewater and solid waste collection services.
Thank you. Why don't we open up the public comment? We have one public speaker slip. It's Bonnie Raisen. Come on up.
It's astounding to me, and yet I understand, Madam Mayor and council people, we're talking about huge amounts of expense regarding the recycling plant, which I think, you know, was a great presentation and certainly a very rational discussion, and I also think that more needs to be done regarding a regional approach. But what I'm going to address just briefly is that you're asking for a 5.5% wastewater rate increase on the same agenda that you will be discussing a half-cent sales tax increase. Psychologically, this probably isn't too great, even though 0.8% for a single-family residence for the trash and recycling doesn't sound like a lot, but if you top that off with what's going to be an increase, I'm sure, as a result of our water management, with a half-cent sales tax increase, you know, it just doesn't seem reasonable to me. There are too many people in this town who will be affected by an increase in the sales tax. And I don't think it's good policy at this time, when you are considering what we need, and that is the desalination plant. And the contract with Marborg, perhaps, I don't know if that can be negotiated, but for whatever reason, I think it's not right to do both, or all three, major project and then tax increases on top of that. So those are my comments, and, you know, I'm not judging, just anticipating some sane resolve on this. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, that closes the public hearing. It's to the council. Ms. Rouse?
Madam Mayor, I'd like to move stack recommendations A and B.
Okay. Moved in second, and Ms. Mario.
I just, yeah, I'll be voting for that, just with all due respect to Ms. Raisen and other people who are concerned about the cost of living in Santa Barbara going up. It's a necessity.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And that's unanimous. Thank you very much. We're going to take a 10-minute, 10 council minutes.
...recommended operating and capital budget.
Okay, Mr. Samario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council, Bob Samario, Finance Director and Acting Assistant City Administrator. So we're here today to get final direction from council on the fiscal year 2016 budget. Next Tuesday, we'll be back with all the resolutions for adoption of the budget, the official adoption. Well, whatever is decided here today, we'll incorporate into those resolutions and bring them back next Tuesday. So you recall that we were here June 1st. It was the final budget hearing, and we brought to you a lot of information, recommendations from the finance committee, for example. We brought to you a list of funding requests and those kinds of things. On that day, we did get direction from council on requests from outside organizations, and I'll show you what those are in a moment. But secondly, we were asked to bring back a strategy to close the gap in our general fund policy reserves relative to our policy over a two-year period. And we were also asked, just for discussion purposes, to see what it would look like if we were to do that over a three-year period, so we'll talk about that as well. So first, the approved funding request from outside organizations, this is the complete list, I'm not going to go through them, but other than to say that we had a net funding request on the bottom right of almost $280,000. The items that were approved were from five different entities or agencies. One is CASAS-PRONZA, and this was to continue for one more year, it'd be a one-time funding in 16 of $125,000, and we, the council would be able to reevaluate that after this coming year. And then a request from the Community Environmental Council for a community aggregation and energy study. As you may know, the county, the county recently approved funding of $400,000 toward this, so they will likely be in the lead. This money will be held in our budget until we come back with some kind of plan from the county as to how that's going to be spent. And then the Santa Barbara School District asked for additional funding of $12,830, which council did approve. And then a reduction in the Pacidities, Police Activities League rent at the teen center by $9,800, and then funding for the Common Ground Downtown Project of 25. So total funding requested 22, 22, 813. You may recall that $50,000 of that would be charged to the Water Fund, that's the Sea, the Community Choice Energy Project or Study, and then the balance of 172 would then be charged to the General Fund. You'll see that number coming up shortly. So I just wanted to let you know that I have these, and you also have in your handout, these are all the, the service enhancements that we kind of talked about in two categories, those that require additional funding in the two slides, and then those that do not require additional funding. So if we need to come back to these, we can. But let's move on to the options for closing the general fund reserve gap. So you've seen this before, I wanted to kind of show you how we arrive at where we're short, how much we're short. And this lays out the two-year financial plan, but it also goes out one more year to 2018 to make sure we're not, you know, missing some kind of a structural problem. But in the next year, you'll see that the beginning balance, or July 1, 2015, is $27.4 million. We're going to add to that pursuant to our current city policy, half of the projected surplus of 669. And then we also wanted to adjust for a new estimate on some, on a settlement cost, but our ending reserves, as adjusted for next year, are expected to be $28.3 million. So I wanted just to point out that this will apply to, of course, the, anything we look at in terms of options for closing the gap, that we are proposing that we recognize a few things in how we're measuring the reserve gap. The first is a loan we currently have receivable from the waterfront fund of over $1 million. Because they do have reserves of their own, over policy, of about $2-plus million, we feel like we can, we can treat that loan as being available, whereas in the past, it has been treated as unavailable and measured in our reserves. And then you'll see a couple items that are ongoing. One is our GPU, the general plan update loan repayments. That process, that effort, that study, costs about $2.5 million, is essentially a loan from the general fund. It is being repaid over a 20-year period at about $100,000 a year. This is the, a surcharge is added to building permits, 11%, and it generates about $100,000 per year, so that will effectively repay back that loan over a 20-year period or thereabouts. And then we talked about the employee mortgage loan assistance program repayments expected over the next three years, which would essentially become monies available to the general fund and our reserves. So at the bottom, you'll see that what we're trying to close in terms of the gap is about $1.8 million next year, but really, if you look out, it's a slightly bigger gap in 2018 of $2.2 million. So that's really the number we're trying to achieve in whether we go two years or three years in this strategy. So this first look is how we get there in two years, and at the top is the same number we just looked at. It's just, it's not a cumulative number at the top, so the 1.8 really gets up to about 2.2 over a three-year period. So the first thing you'll notice is that we do have some additional requests from outside organizations that we're funding, that's the 172, 813 that we mentioned, so we have to add that to the deficit. And then I wanted to sort of go through the various measures that we as staff are proposing. The first is, when we looked at the enhancements, and council asked us to look at them as well, we are proposing that we eliminate those proposed enhancements for two, in two areas. One is the transportation planner. It was a position that had been in the general fund many years ago. We shifted to the, to the streets fund in order to help the general fund during the recession, actually, two recessions. So we had proposed to bring it back to the general fund, and so we're saying now, if we need some money, let's put that back to the streets fund for now, we can reevaluate later. It is an ongoing savings of $122,000 over the three-year period. And then the position that was proposed by the, with the fire department, a public education officer, this is a position that would be restoring, a position they've had a number of years ago, the cost of that would be $9,200, we're proposing at this point to remove that from our enhancement list.
Before, before you continue, the transportation planner position itself will still exist, it just will be funded through the streets fund.
Yes.
It's not eliminating the position, it's just eliminating the cost of it from the general fund.
And our intent was to free up some money for pavement, so we're just bringing it back.
People saw that, I just didn't want them to think we were getting rid of the position itself.
Thank you for the clarification.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Quick question, how long has that position been unfulfilled, unfilled, I guess?
So the position, the transportation planner, or you're talking about the transportation planner? Yeah, those, we've had several positions that were originally in the general fund that we shifted into the streets fund and over a number of years. I think it was about three positions. The proposal that we had for next year was to bring one of them back into the general fund, and this reverses that.
So we've been doing without it wherever they were for a few years?
No, no, it's currently staffed. There's currently an employee in the position. There's currently an employee in the position, it's just how it's being paid for.
Okay.
Yes, it's going to be paid for.
Is this sort of like, which pocket are we taking the money out of?
Yes, yes.
Got it.
I'm going to move to the bottom here, because this will be the case for the two, in both these scenarios, this will be the same. And this is a proposal then to reduce our capital that's proposed for next year. There are three projects that are included in next year's budget, the Thousand Steps, the Artificial Turf Projects, an urban forest management plan in Dog Off, Leash Park areas. This totals about $575,000. And we thought that this, these would be good for removal, and we can reconsider them later, of course, in light of the fact that, one, they're, they're really just studies, they're not really, you know, improvements to facilities or new construction. And given the fact that we have our pending retirement of our partial recreation director, from a workhorse perspective, we thought it made sense, maybe these, these would be good to kind of put off for a while and reevaluate later. I do want to point out that it is, like I said, 575, but 125 of that is really budgeted this year, so in terms of this year's impact, it's 450. But the total that we would be looking to save with these projects is 575. So the, really the focus of the, this slide and the next slide will be on how we kind of close the remaining gap, and it's really about how we deal with their, their capital reserves. As you know, and to remind you that we have a policy currently that says that any surplus we have at the end of each year, we would split between our capital reserves and our operating reserves. That was a policy implemented back in 2013. So our strategy proposed for how we deal with this over a two-year period is essentially using some portion of these surpluses between last year or the current fiscal year 16 and 17. So the first is to take So the first is to take a portion of what would have normally gone to the capital reserves at the end of this year, not the full 50%, but half of that 50% or 25%, which totals 337,000, and say we're going to allocate that toward our operating reserves instead of capital reserves. And then similarly, the 50% of the, of '16, all that surplus that we were planning on going to the capital reserves, we're going to say, you know, we're going to put that all into the operating reserves on a one-time basis. So that's what we would do in '16, and then for '17, we're still going to be a little short, so we would propose is taking 25% of the, of the expected 2017 surplus of 274, and that essentially would get us there over a three-year period, or two-year period, I should say. You could see in this, next year, we'd have a balance down at the bottom of 246, but by next year, in '17, the second year of the plan, we would be, we essentially have closed that gap with a slight little surplus. And I want to point out that these are all projections, you know, of what's going to happen the next two years. You know, we're going to see some variation in what actually transpires, but from a planning perspective, this is kind of how we see it shaking out. Any questions on this one before I get to the three-year proposal?
If I might?
Sure.
Just for public consumption, most of us think, oh, well, if, if the economy does better, our TOT and all that stuff is better, then our reserves will just get, you know, go way up. But we're sort of chasing a moving target.
That's correct.
So as the economy approves, improves, the reserve requirement also improves.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, as our, as our budget grows, so do our reserve requirements, because it's a percentage, 25% of the budget.
And so we, technically, I mean, could we ever make that up with just the improving economy? We never could.
Sure, to the extent that we see revenues exceed our estimates, then all, half of that would go toward our operating reserves and half to capital. And when you looked at kind of our recommended budget, we sort of felt that that was how we would get there anyway, because it didn't provide for this kind of a balancing.
Madam Mayor, another way I could maybe put it in context for all the council, it's really a choice between capital and reserves. They're kind of equally one-time monies. And if we had not adopted the council policy to put half into capital and half into reserves, but left the old policy of it all going to reserves, we'd be fully funded at our reserve policy level. And so it's the priority of trying to get more money into capital that has made it harder to kind of chase that moving target. And so the way you balance in two or three years is you suspend that policy, depending upon how dramatically you want to do that, and focus on reserves as the priority.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Thousand Steps, $100,000. What is that? Is that a design fee for rehabilitation? How's that for speculation?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, the funding proposed for next fiscal year would fully fund our ability to get us through to construction drawings for whatever repair we were able to pursue with that project. By not including it, we would still be able to do some conceptual plans and get a better sense of what our options are.
And that's definitely one of those projects that has potential to get grant funding.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, yes, similar to the Mesa Land Steps project, assuming we can move forward with a coastal development permit, we would seek outside funding to support construction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
So I wanted to point out, because this is important, that overall, in terms of how we're allocating these capital reserves, in this proposal, it's about $1.3 million, almost. It's essentially going to be the same in the next proposal, it's just how we spread that out over a two versus three-year period. So here, you could see, we're essentially doing the same idea, we're just sort of suspending temporarily, but just over a longer period of time, the policy of 50% to capital, 50% to operating reserves. But essentially, we get to the same dollar amount, we're just saying, let's spread that over one more year, so that by year three, 2018, we close that gap. You can see a small amount remaining of $9,700. But again, the concept is, how much of these policy reserves do we want to take from our normally, we go to capital reserves in two versus three years? The same dollar amount, though, is what's needed to close the gap.
Which projects in year, if you, because, okay, basically, we're, the difference between year, in two years and in three years, is the FY 2015 surplus amount, right? So, what, the 337,000?
Right.
That we would not spend on capital?
Right.
Which projects would we not, where, where's that money? Where would it have gone?
Madam Mayor, we still have not identified that yet, because for '17, we'd have to kind of wait to see what the final dollar amount is for '15, but...
That was money that we'd still have to carry over for another budget year before, to identify the projects.
We'd be back, I'm sorry, go ahead.
You know, we, we do have a five-year capital improvement plan that lists a number of projects. I think you would start and look at the four projects that you've deferred here as possibilities. But then we also had projects that we identified as needing money in those fiscal years going forward. And the biggest one, I just want to throw out there, is the remaining amount that we're expecting to fund, the Cabrillo Bath House and Pavilion Project. We've got that leftover RDA money that we don't think is going to be sufficient. At this point, conceptually, we think we're about a million, a million and a half short. And so that was a very large capital project in next fiscal year, fiscal year '17. And so that's one of the things, we're going to have to crack that nut to finish that project.
Okay, so in terms of fiscal year '16 list of capital projects that will not occur, it's just those four things that you're being, that are being recommended?
Correct.
And then the rest is just dollar amounts that we would consider in the next budget year?
Correct.
That haven't been identified yet?
Yep.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So I wanted to show you kind of how this would be reflected in the, in the sources and uses of funds.
Mr. White has a question.
And a question, and we, this has been repeated several times, but since we're teeing this up today, I want to do it one, perhaps last time. The difference between the two and the three-year hitting, refilling of our reserves, if we go with the three-year, we would have between $500,000 and $600,000 to spend this year on capital projects. Is that, am I on base? Well, I mean, coming up, just...
Yeah, it would be the following year, '17.
'17, '17, we would have a half a million dollars plus. Okay, thank you.
So the recommended budget for '16 is in the, in the far-left column of numbers. You could see that we had a proposed use of capital reserves for capital, of course, but essentially with the balanced budget, $126.8 million. It really doesn't change, it's just how we sort of allocate the monies. So, so this $41,000 reduction to our operating budget, that's the, that's the net reduction as a result of two things. One, the, the funding of outside organizations totaling 172, but the reduction of those, equal to those two positions, the transportation planner being shifted over to Streets Fund and the elimination of the proposed public education position and fire, so that's the net, if you will, impact of the operating budget. That's going to be shifted over to the appropriated surplus, essentially, we're going to be budgeting that surplus, so it's a net impact of the 450 of reduction in capital projects and the 41,255 net savings from what I just described. And you can see below that is the reduction of capital, but really, we're just shifting all those dollars into the appropriate surplus, then that would then fall into our, our reserves. And so that 1.8 million appropriate surplus normally would be split half and half between capital and operating reserves. What we're saying is that part of this plan, this strategy, whether it's two years or three years, is to take all of that and have it drop into our operating reserves at the end of next year. So from a budgetary impact, it doesn't affect the bottom line, it just shifts some of those monies from capital and operating into our appropriated surplus. So at that point, at this point, we're ready to answer any questions.
Okay, and we do have a public comment speaker slip, so any questions at this time? Okay, why don't we, Ms. Wiscombe?
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and members of City Council. I'm Leslie Wiscombe, Chair of the Parks and Rec Commission. The closing the gap plans before you to bring reserves to policy levels in two or three years obviously will impact the Parks and Recreation Department's capital program, a program in which we've gained considerable momentum following the end of the economic downturn. Recognizing that our needs are huge, from renovations to replacements to restoration of facilities, the Commission notes that the department's capital program focuses on providing high-quality municipal facilities that benefit our community. While we understand that closing the reserves gap will impact the department's capital program, we hope you'll consider the following during your discussion. Number one, the department's proposed capital program includes projects that address public safety and infrastructure maintenance backlogs. And two, the program looks to the future's increasing demands in recreation programs and service needs for Santa Barbara's future generations, and addresses some specific requests from our community. I also want to reemphasize the Commission's support for restoration of two proposed positions after the department's large staff cutbacks during the recession. The recreation specialist position will assist with programming the Creo Rec Center to generate revenues. This is a revenue stream that produces citywide benefits. As well, the reinstatement of the project management supervisor position is key to achieving successes within the recommended capital program. Improving program safety, staff efficiency, customer service, and revenue generation, and the ability to move capital program forward are all strong priorities of the Commission. We hope that you will choose the three-year close-the-gap plan, as it will potentially be less impactful to the momentum we've gained in both the capital program and staff restoration since the recession. Thank you.
Thank you. Is that for the sign? Mr. Widrow, why don't you just come on over here then?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers, Tom Widrow, City Watch, thank you, first of all, for going through the budget in such detail. Appreciate that our, once again, that our City Council cares about how we spend our dollars. City Watch has a concern, though, about the community choice aggregation, the $50,000 coming out of the Water Fund for the feasibility study. I've just done some research over the past week since it was brought up, and there's a real question as to whether or not community choice aggregation really is good for our Apparently, we run the risk of defunding the overall infrastructure. In other words, we're subsidizing what's quote-unquote "alternative power sources" through tax subsidies, as opposed to relying on the infrastructure that the utilities pay right now. And so I think people perceive this as somehow a savings, when, and I know many of you are very concerned with being fiscally responsible, and they somehow imagine that this is cleaner energy, but I'm not sure that it is clean or green. And I think you really, it would be great if you could have a little bit broader discussion before jumping into the $50,000 feasibility study, at least to understand the parameters, kind of what the debate that's going around the state and around the country about community choice aggregation. I think it presents some false kind of promises. So I'd appreciate it if, if you could take that seriously and take a look into that before you jump in with the $50,000. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Okay, that's it for the public comment speaker slips. It's to the council. Mr. Hart.
Well, I, to me, this issue is really simple. Here we are, following the recession, in good economic times, and the first thing in the budget that ought to be done is that our reserve policy ought to be met. Everything else after that is secondary. And I advocated initially for a one-year period of time to get to our fully funded reserves. I think it's incredibly important to the future item on the agenda, this discussion about revenue enhancements. I don't think we can have a credible conversation with the taxpayers about that unless the starting point is, is the ability to say, we have fully funded our reserves, we are meeting all of our ongoing capital needs in the sense that we're not making the backlog worse, and then we have a plan to spend that money. And then this point is sort of bleeds over to the next agenda item. But I think it's, the whole point of this, and the whole reason for me to bring this up in the context of the budget, is to make this case, to make the best case possible that we are being good, strong fiscal managers. So to me, the two-year plan, the three-year plan, is just delaying what we need to do. And, and obviously, there is an impact on the Parks and Recreation Capital Program and the other capital programs for the city. But the point is to get to a place in fiscal responsibility to be able to say to the taxpayers, we have done all the things we need to do. We are still, we still have a deficit, we still have a capital backlog, we need additional revenue to meet that. And I think it, it doesn't make sense to go to the voters and say, we're aspiring to spend a little bit on capital, we're not meeting our, our, our reserve policy, and we still, and we want you to give us more money. It is a simple messaging issue, it is a principle issue, it is, you know, a downward sliding slope that the council got on prior to the previous recession when reserves were spent in good economic times that put us on this trajectory. So we can spread this out, we shouldn't, and to me, the issue isn't two or three years, it's whether we should do this in one year.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree in part with what Councilmember Hart just said. And when I first got on council in 2008, we were already well below what the policy reserves should have been. And we have spent much of the time that I've been on council clawing our way back in the midst of a deep recession, and frankly, in the midst of a recovery that's not that wonderful. But we've managed to get close. I think we should close the gap all the way. I think we should either decide that the reserve policy is too extreme and settle for something less, or we should stick to it. And I think we should stick to it. I think the two-year plan is a reasonable way of getting there. I guess where I would disagree with Mr. Hart is, this in and of itself, if he meant that, is not sufficient, in my mind, to demonstrate seriousness about a focus on the city's priorities, the top priorities of public safety and infrastructure. I believe we still have a lot of spending within our budget that is not devoted to those, and I understand that a lot of that's historical and based on earlier policies, and maybe based on better economic times in general than what we face today and what we're likely to face in the near future. But I still believe that this council would have to make a much more serious effort on trimming expenses and devoting more to infrastructure before we go to the taxpayers and ask them for money. But be that as it may, on the question before us, I favor the plan of achieving our policy reserves and the general fund within two years.
Dwight.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I, too, partially agree with what my colleague, and obviously, I've been advocating for the three-year refill. On this basis, the comments were made, which I think spoke to the concerns I have, that the hole we made in the reserves was not made by the crash. By the time we got to the crash, our reserves were gone, at least the rainy day reserves. So we clawed our way out of the crash, taking meat and bone, particularly out of parks, library, and many other places. Again, there were a lot of creative elements that were, were brought to play in order to, to preserve public safety the best of our ability and, and keep, keep the lights on. There were furloughs, lots of, lots of concessions by the whole team to make, to get through the tough times. So we're, in getting, in getting our reserves refilled, if we're just trying to fill the divot that was made by the crash, okay, I would say, you know, get it, get it done right now. But this was a, what, five-year hole that was created in reserves, and so to take five years to refill it, I think makes sense. And also, I think this year, we get more bang out of capital buck than we may in a few years when those inflation may return again. So, and our, as we know, one form of capital that's, we are, I know we're most concerned about, we'll hear a little more about it soon, is our streets. And we're putting, what, 30 cents into our streets for every dollar we should be. And so even if we took that extra money this year, while oil is relatively cheap, and put it into repairing roads, we could do, we could do a chip seal of 25 blocks, shall we say. We could re-grind five blocks. We could really take five blocks and bring them back. So these are the kinds of things which I think would be reasonable options. I also, obviously, when I was making my comments about Thousand Steps, I feel like that would be one that I would want to tee up today to be eligible for grant funding for the next couple of years. So I, I think we're, we're talking variations of a same theme. I'm glad to hear we're saying, hey, you know, we're not following the, what I know Mr. Francisco doesn't believe in, which is, let's change our reserve policy, and nobody is saying up there that we ought to do that. But I think we could take a, a less steep slope to get there, and I think we're still showing fiscal prudence.
Okay, I've heard one, two, and three. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last time we talked about the Community Environmental Council's feasibility study about community choice aggregation, my understanding was, we're going to come back with, we'd heard only proponents, and we wanted to examine it more carefully and see what it really means. I think it's going to, personally, I think it may mean an increase rather than a decrease in cost, but Mr. Casey, do you want to take that one on?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, councilmembers, your direction was to place in the budget the $50,000 request, but before you expended that fund, you would want to see a plan that whatever the city and the county came up with as a proposal, and have that presented that whatever the city and the county came up with as a proposal, and have that presented to you before you authorize the expenditures of that money.
Okay, so we're not authorizing here, we're just...
Correct. You're preserving $50,000 for a study, but it would need to be returned to you with a scope of work and have your direction and authority to expend the money.
Okay, good. Second question. Would a quicker resolution of our reserve challenge affect our financial picture when we go after grants, funding, et cetera? Is it too minimal to make much of a difference?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think it is too minimal to make a difference in that regard.
Thank you.
Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I too would like to take the opportunity to partially agree with my colleagues. I think on the, the plan to either do it one, two, or three years is all based on projections and assumptions. So to me, it makes the most sense not to jump fully into the first year, but maybe take a, take the three-year plan and re, take another bite of the apple each year, and look and see where we stand. Well, it is incredibly prudent to have your reserves totally filled. We have been working our way towards that. One of the other prudent moves we made was to take half of the surpluses, and rather than figure out ways to budget them, sink them right into a dedicated capital fund, which was unusual in the old budgetary ways. So I think that also shows fiscal restraint and responsibility. So rather than just try to, you know, cook the whole goose this time around, let's go ahead and take the three-year plan, let's visit it again, that's budget cycle, and see if we want to, which buttons we want to push, what are gross volumes going to be, what our reserves are actually going to be as opposed to what they're projected to be, and see what we've got. That'd be my plan.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I thought option, the two-year option was a perfect compromise. Some people were saying one year, some people were saying three, but there's a number right in the middle. And I watched the June 1st discussion that we had, just so I would be refreshed on what we were talking about, and I was persuaded by what the mayor was saying, that when we set aside some money for capital and some to make up the reserve, in the context of putting forward a sales tax initiative, which is our next item, that we demonstrate to the public that putting aside money for capital is important, and that signals to them that we're planning and saving. So I like the two-year option, and I also like the CEC, the set aside for that. That's really important, the community choice energy. Thank you.
I have a question again about Thousand Steps. So the $100,000, here's where I want to get to with my questioning, is, is the $100,000, if we were to work on whatever is necessary to spend that money, help us get to a point where it be shovel-ready, so you can get faster potential grant money to actually do the project, right? And so if we delay doing Thousand Steps in fiscal year 16, then there's no chance of getting grant money. But if we did the $100,000 this year for Thousand Steps, would be eligible for grants in a year? Or what's the timeline? Can you help me out here?
Sure. Madam Mayor, councilmembers, the goal prior to soliciting grant funds for a project is to actually get through preliminary design and have a permit issued for the project. With the funding that we currently have in our capital program for the project, that is likely to be possible. The recommendation to fully fund the design and construction drawings would get us ready to actually build the project. So if that helps you understand, you know, in the next year, if we get the project designed and permitted, that puts us in a position to apply for grant funds.
And that's what the $100,000 here would have had, would be...
The $100,000 would get us through final design, which is the next step after permitting, before we actually break ground for construction.
So we could still apply for grants with the current money, in the current budget, even with this $100,000 no longer in next year's budget?
We anticipate that that is entirely possible, yes.
Okay, I just didn't want to close the door on that item. So, okay, so that answers that question.
May I ask you that just momentarily? I stand corrected on that. I thought that, I really, I thought that we needed that $100,000 to get to the stage that Ms. Zachary is speaking of. So I do stand corrected on that.
Okay. So if we found some grant in the next year and needed $100,000 to get to final design, then we can come back and figure out how to pay for it at that point, if it's, if we take the $100,000 out now. Okay, but we can still apply for grants. Okay, that helps. I, well, I partially agree with some, like, well, I have to, we have, I didn't hear Mr. Hotchkiss whether you preferred one, two, or three at all, but I'll just say, I think either, we're entering into a two-year financial plan. We have a budget for next year and a financial plan into the second year. There's some logic to a two-year plan there. I understand the three-year plan as well. I could go either way. I think doing, my concern with just doing everything, well, two things. If we do everything in one year, that's another, I guess, 246, quarter of a million dollars that could go to capital, that's not, that could cost more than $246,000 to do the same capital a year later. I think the value of that money spent now on capital is probably better served in the first year. The second thing, just to get to the point of actually meeting our reserve policy, if we do a two-year plan here, we're off by a quarter of a million dollars in a $100 million-plus budget. I mean, that's pretty much, I mean, I think that's a good message, saying we're putting money into capital, we're using the money where it's well-spent and can be well-leveraged, and we have in a two-year financial plan, the ability to fully fund our reserve policy with this two-year financial plan that's going to come to us next year for adoption. If there's still push for three, I could go that way, but it just seems like there's a nice rounded process in there. But I appreciate what you were saying about the three, but I think, you know, and maybe our projections will be better in the next year, and we can do more in year two and three, depending on how well we budget, how much we keep expenses down, and how well the economy returns. So I guess if I had to weigh my options, I would say two would be the best option, but we can see where we go. If that doesn't get us anywhere, I can go with three as well. Now we have Mr. Hart.
You know, another element of this that we didn't talk about, that isn't in the staff report, is the question of how much money we need on an annual basis to make sure that the backlog on capital doesn't increase. And I know we had some discussion about that with Mr. Dewey. He had a million-dollar number. Mr. Casey at the Finance Committee said he wanted to work with Mr. Dewey on fine-tuning that number. Mr. Dewey sent us an email recently that they said the number's more like $2 million. I know you've, you may not have had an opportunity to talk to Mr. Dewey some more about that, but that is also part of this conversation. That, I mean, these two pieces go together. We need to be able to say to the public that we have fully funded our reserves, that we are not making the backlog of increasing capital any worse. So doing new capital projects in the context of that does not make any sense. I mean, really, this is, this is like doing your own personal budget. You need to have an emergency fund, you need to have, you know, make sure that your roof isn't leaking, then you need to add the new driveway. And so that, it is that simple. And it is, we can take longer, we can defer the capital, we can take advantage of the cost savings that come from doing capital early, but we are not just fundamentally hitting the notes that are important to communicate to the public that we are doing a good job with taxpayers' money, at the same time we are talking about going out to the taxpayers and asking for more money. It is that simple, and it needs to be addressed that way, and it used to be addressed that way. And during a time, during good economic times, the council spent reserves that it shouldn't have. And we can wait longer to solve this problem, or we can demonstrate some resolve and do it now. And it is a very small amount of money in the context of the entire city's budget. I think frankly, if we had given this direction to the staff, you know, to Mr. Casey at the beginning of this process, he probably could have figured out a way to get us there sooner. It's, you know, probably not fair to have tried to do this in mid-cycle, but it is simply a matter of will from this council, and I think, I think it's that important to just make the statement and do the right thing.
Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Just a question of information. So do you have any idea when the CCA concept is going to come back to council?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, no, I don't have a real good sense of the date. The county did fund, I believe, $400,000 towards the feasibility study as well. So I think there's money set aside now to start working on a scope of work and drafting that. So three months, four months, we'll have to continue. We've already had one meeting with the county to conceptually start talking about it, but it'll take some time.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I can sure tell you that if changing my position from three years to two meant that I found five votes on here for the sales tax increase that's coming up, I would change that in a heartbeat.
Well, we, that's the next item.
It's beautiful.
Figure that out. You know, I think, I think Mr. Hart has a lot of good points in messaging, and I also think what you say could be said with a two-year plan. We have a, we're entering into a budget and a two-year financial plan, and by the end of that financial plan, we will fully fund our reserves. And we're putting more money into capital projects at a time when it's cost-effective to do so. We are putting money into capital while we are also asking for additional money in the, in the next item, if should that happen, for future capital. We're not relying on the public for all the capital needs. We are putting it, our own money into it as well. So I think the messaging could be very similar to what you're saying with the two-year financial plan. So that's, but, you know, we can disagree. That's okay. So, but we do need some direction to give to staff for this item, and then we can debate on the next item, at the next item. Which way are we going? We need a motion. Mr. Francisco.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we direct staff to go forward with a budget plan that includes a plan to get back to policy reserve levels within two years.
Okay, is there a second? Moved and seconded. Anything to the motion?
All right, let's see where this goes. Why don't we do a roll call, because I have a feeling it'll be a split vote.
Councilmember Francisco.
Aye.
Hart.
Aye.
Hotchkiss.
Aye.
Mario.
Aye.
Rouse.
Aye.
White.
Aye.
Mayor Schneider.
Aye. Okay, that passes six, one. Okay, so you have your direction for, and it'll come back next...
Thank you very much.
...week, all in a night's little bow. All right, so now, item number 15.
Potential ballot measure on sales tax increase for infrastructure needs.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Nina Johnson, and the item before you is a potential sales tax measure. Considering steps to place a sales tax measure on the November 2015 ballot for infrastructure I wanted to provide some background information on this issue, especially for anyone who might be joining the conversation and watching at home. So just to provide a little bit of the background information on the issue and describe some of our public outreach and polling results. In 2008, a private group of community members convened and studied the city's infrastructure needs. They concluded that the city was facing a significant shortfall to fund infrastructure improvements. Last year, the council appointed a council infrastructure committee to conduct public outreach. The committee comprised of Mayor Schneider, Councilmember White, and Councilmember Rouse. They set out to perform public outreach and get ideas and input on what the community desired in terms of facility improvements. The council tasked them with informing the community about the condition of the city's facilities and why there's less funding available to improve our infrastructure, and get ideas and input to close our funding gap and complete improvements. To recap our challenge, we have a lot of old historic buildings still in use. So our challenge that we're facing is how do we keep these buildings viable for continued use, and how do we make sure they're safe, clean, and modern enough to meet the community's needs? We've triage, we've had tight budgets for several years, so that means we've had to triage our funding towards the highest priority projects, and this means that we've had to reduce funding or even close some facilities where urgent repairs were needed. During the recession, the state eliminated redevelopment agencies, and this meant the loss of $16 million a year for projects that we, in the downtown and waterfront areas, to revitalize, the downtown and waterfront, projects such as the State Street sidewalks, our fire station, the upgrade of the Korea Recreation Center. The loss of the redevelopment agency also meant the loss of $30 million that was set aside for future projects. People may see construction work around town, but much of this work is the result of outside grant funding. Staff has been successful in leveraging outside grant funding for projects such as improving dangerous intersections or replacing 100-year bridges, but we can't count on this grant funding into the future, and grant funds aren't available to pay for a lot of our vital, essential facilities like our police station. In the past decade, we've steadily made progress to ensure seismic safety in a lot of our older structures, so buildings such as our airport, our fire station, our parking structures, the Korea Recreation Center. But our 1960 police station still isn't prepared for an earthquake, and this is where we're losing money to quick fixes. We recently moved all of the 911 dispatchers out of the police, the basement of the police station and into the Granada garage. The cost to build, to move everyone out and build a functioning 911 call center, $2.3 million. And then moving out to our roads, we're also seeing more quick fixes just to keep up our roadways. Funding levels haven't changed much in the last decade. Our gas tax revenue, pennies on the gallon, it's buying us less and less. Meanwhile, the cost of asphalt has risen sharply. So we've made the best use of the $2 to $3 million in annual streets capital funding to slurry seal the streets in each neighborhood every six years, but what we really need to focus on is the actual reconstruction and repaving work of our streets, and that's more expensive work, as this slide is showing. In terms of our public outreach efforts, the Infrastructure Committee held 17 community meetings, eight of those with the general public, and the rest with business groups, neighborhood associations, service organizations like the Kiwanis and Rotary. A large part of our engagement effort was also the use of an informal survey that was available in English and Spanish at our community meetings and also online. It was not intended to be a scientifically valid survey, but to get good preliminary feedback from people. We received almost 500 surveys as part of that effort. We asked them a difficult question. If you managed our budget, rank our infrastructure funding priorities, and the top two answers, the top two facility needs, you can see here in a combined answer, streets and pavement topped the list, followed by sidewalks, the police station, fire stations, and so forth. We also had a strong interest in expanding public-private partnerships, and also heard from people that they're interested in us exploring additional revenue options, everything from a sales tax increase to changing, increasing our parking fees. So based on all of the input that we received at our meetings and the survey responses, the Infrastructure Committee made the following recommendations. Continue expanding our public-private partnerships, so projects like the children's library, for example, it's a great example of that, where construction has moved forward due to, thanks to many generous donors. Review our municipal code and insurance requirements, and make sure that we're allowing for enough flexibility for philanthropy. And then get more information from the community through a community poll and conducting a couple of community meetings to really gauge the interest in various funding options. So we convened two community meetings in February, and then in terms of moving towards a community poll, the committee reviewed our infrastructure needs and looked at different funding options. Based on the, we estimate that our ballpark estimate for unfunded infrastructure needs is about $400 million per year. That breaks down to $20 million per year. We also see that a half-cent sales tax increase would generate approximately $10 to $11 million per year. So that would take care of half of our estimated unmet infrastructure needs. So this was the revenue scenario that was used as part of the community poll. We worked with Godby Research to conduct a community poll in March and April. So basically, they conducted a scientifically valid community poll. They surveyed a broad cross-section of voters in, by demographics and geography. 640 voters were surveyed in both English and Spanish. In response, when asked whether they would support a half-cent sales tax increase for 20 years with citizens oversight and all funds staying local to protect services and improve Santa Barbara facilities, including all of the various areas that are listed up on the screen, 64.4% of all of the respondents supported that sales tax increase. Also, a few other key findings, that 69% were pleased with the job the city was doing to provide services to the community, 66% were pleased with the job the city was doing to maintain city facilities, and 51% were pleased with the city managing and spending taxpayer dollars. At this point, staff needs direction from council on whether to initiate steps to place a sales tax measure on the November 2015 ballot. And specifically, we're needing direction on the amount of tax and the structure of an independent oversight committee. So that would mean looking at the structure of the independent oversight committee in terms of ensuring that funding was spent on whatever, as voters intend. So looking at the... of ensuring that funding was spent on whatever, as voters intend. So looking at the size, composition, membership of the committee, and duties of the committee. There's some language in the council agenda report that gives a good starting point for, for council for that discussion. Also attached to the council agenda report is a sample resolution with the ballot measure language, put that up on the screen, with sample ballot measure language and the enacting sales tax ordinance. So based on council's direction and input, these documents, the draft resolution ordinance could be revised, and we could return to council to take fin, to take an official action to place them on the ballot. To get on the November 3rd, 2015 ballot, council would need to take action in adopting these documents by the end of July, so that's by July 28th. That concludes my presentation, and I'm going to keep the draft ballot measure language on the screen, and staff is available to answer any questions.
Thank you, and we do have two public comments. Speaker Slips, any questions first?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Cologne.
If I might add just one, one short comment. As you review the proposed ballot language at page three, if you get to that stage, I, I do want to note the use of the word "citizens." It was used by Mr. Godby in the proposed question that he tested with the voters, so I carried it forward. That term is not essential. You may choose to use residence or public or any term in addition to or otherwise from the word "citizens."
Okay, thank you. And just as a reminder, it takes five votes to put this on a ballot, so if we're going to go anywhere with this, we need at least five people up here to agree to something. So, questions? Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Cologne, if we, as I prefer, made this a specific tax that required two-thirds of the citizens to support it, of these things that are on the board now, as it were, which of those would remain, and which are too broad, if I can put it that way?
The only one that's too broad is other general services, other general city services, the very last bullet.
All right, so we could accomplish and focus and reserve the tax monies for the above ones, except that, with a two-thirds.
Yes, I think you'd want some financial analysis to know exactly what you could pay for before you proposed a special tax that identified the projects.
And if we, if others on, on the council here agreed with me, what would our process be to go forward in that manner rather than just a general tax?
I haven't looked in detail at the question, but it wouldn't be a lot different. The only notable difference under Proposition 218 is that you wouldn't be required to go in the same year as a general municipal election. That could be done in 2016 if you so chose.
We could do it this year, though, also, if we got the votes.
Good.
Okay, thank you very much.
Putting a tax measure on an election that's not a regular municipal election would take a unanimous seven vote, vote of the council, correct?
Only a general tax. A special tax can be placed on any election.
Okay, by a five member, or four?
That's a good question. I don't know.
Okay, all right. Okay, so Mr. Widrow, and then Ms. Raisin.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and councilmembers. Tom Widrow, City Watch. Just wanted to thank the mayor and, and councilmembers for recognizing that our infrastructure is in trouble. There are cities here in the state of California that don't put infrastructure at the priority that it needs to be, and our city does. So on behalf of City Watch and the other residents of Santa Barbara, thank you. I think, City Watch, we're certainly open to supporting the possibility of a tax, a sales tax increase, but I do echo what councilmember Hotchkiss just said about a specific tax. I think, according to the Godby poll, you all registered as having a high degree of trust amongst the, the public, which is a credit to how you're, you're doing your jobs. I have no idea what future councils will look like. I don't know if they will be composed of people who rationally discuss these things. I don't know. It might be, but they might also have different priorities. They may have priorities that, that aren't infrastructure at the top. And so, you know, I know councilmember Mario said, oh, we should, we should trust future councils to make those decisions, and I appreciate that, but I, I can't see into the future, and nor can you. So I think by having it be a specific tax and requiring a two-thirds majority, you then get, as councilmember Hart has mentioned before, you get a specific list of items at which you address for funding. I think you also need a unanimous vote here. You need all seven of you, really, to, to launch forward and to, and to ensure that you're going to get the two-thirds support on a, on a specific tax, or what they call a special tax. I think you could fuel your opportunity here, too, by actually making some meaningful cuts to non-essential government programs, considering we have fallen so far behind on roads. One of the ones I brought up was government TV, and, and once again, councilmember Mario brought up, it is, I liked government TV. It just seems like, you know, when it's 400 grand a year, that perhaps, perhaps maybe we need to prioritize ahead of what a small group of people use, as opposed to what the broader group of people need. Thank you for your time.
Bonnie Raisin, and then Steve Bellamy.
Mayor.
Yes.
If I might, while the speaker's coming up, answer your question.
Ms. Raisin, come on up.
A two-thirds vote is required of the council for a special tax as well, and in addition, for councilmember Hotchkiss, the ordinance has to include an expenditure plan describing the specific projects that are going to be paid for.
But just to follow up, if we, if, if there was direction to go for a special tax this year, between now and the end of July, we need to be very specific in an expenditure plan of what that would look like.
You would need an expenditure plan describing the specific projects for which the revenues from the tax may be expended.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Raisin.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I didn't understand. Do we need five or seven votes for that?
Five votes this year, for anything this year.
Five for this year.
We would need seven votes for general tax next year, and five votes for a special tax next year.
Thank you.
Yep. Ms. Raisin.
I'm Bonnie Raisin, and thank you. I'm, I, I was encouraged by what I just heard. I think, well, anyway, since roads and streets and infrastructure has not been a priority of this council, else we wouldn't be here today. So, we are here. So I guess now what I'd like to say briefly is that if this is the only way to repair our neglected infrastructure, a specific tax, specific tax, would be the only way that I would feel comfortable, because, as Mr. Widrow said, it is up then, it would be up to the discretion of future councils to say, oh, well, this program needs funding and this pro, and I, I think that would be a huge mistake. I am not in favor of a tax at all. But I would feel better, and I would be able to be more lucid in my comments to my friends if I could tell them that, yes, what you're voting on is going to, maybe not just surry seal, but really fix our roads and sidewalks and crosswalks. And so, if it is inevitable, which it sounds as though it's going to be, then I would please ask you to, in your wisdom, to make it a specific tax that would specify exactly what the monies are going to go for, exactly. Thank you.
Madam Mayor and councilmembers, good afternoon. I would just like to draw attention to one fact, and that is, since 2012 to 2015, the amount paid in salaries and benefits to city employees has increased by $20 million. And so, I have to observe that if you're proposing to increase taxes, precedent and history would suggest that the tax increases will be to pay increased salaries and benefits to city employees. Thank you.
Okay, it's to the council. Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is, by way of background on this entire project, we were sent forth by this council to go forth and talk to the public and find out what it was that they wanted to do. We certainly presented the problem. We presented a problem that is a discussion in every municipality all over the country, on all levels, federal, state, and civic. And in most cases, the financing that needed is exotic. In other words, it's outside of the normal cash flow to accomplish these things, partly from what Nina said about the, the cost of petroleum products to actually fix the roads. But as anybody who's in business knows, that the percentage of labor has gone up so much over these years, that that really is one of the big issues. The kind of work we're talking about, specifically roadwork, we actually contract out quite a bit of that to the private sector. We do oversee it, but we, we actually don't physically lay the pavement down in most cases. But there are a lot of projects going on, but when it comes to a tax, you know, I specifically would not want to raise taxes, and I, of course, I also didn't want to start the decal plant. I just voted for that, too. These are, these are tough choices in tough times. We can do nothing. That'll be the choice that we would like to give you. We can do nothing, or we can vote for this. But the thing is, what is it that we prioritize? And what we got back from the citizen groups that was backed up by also a private poll, was that people want to see roads not just covered over and band-aided back into drivability, but actually fixed, repaired, for things to move on. What we do in Santa Barbara is we sell Santa Barbara. Santa Barbara is a hospitality-based economy. We do, we do hospitality, and we do government. So we're actually investing in the economic engine. When this place is bright and shiny and looks good, and the roads are drivable, and the old, classic buildings that are shopworn and, and falling apart are now restored to their original luster, that actually helps boost the rest of the economy and feed all the other programs we have. So, but my, my point isn't to sell this tax. My point isn't to convince you to vote for this tax. My point is to help convince my colleagues that we should let you decide about this tax, and that hopefully we can also develop, with the help of Mr. Cologne, a structure of a, of an oversight committee, because I agree with Ms. Raisin. I don't trust future councils, I barely trust ourselves up here sometimes, to do the exact right thing. And it is, you're exactly right, Ms. Raisin, it is an issue. But if the oversight committee is, is structured properly, with the proper direction, the proper mission, to ensure the taxpayer's will is carried forward, we can use this move, can move forward quickly on this kind of repair that we're doing. We can leverage this newfound revenue to do things like the police station and float a bond with the, revenue helping to service the bond. We can do the things that we had planned to do with the end-of-the-ARDA money, but the ARDA money went away, so that's, that's gone. So if we do what you told us to do, which was to go forward with this, and what we do now is to allow you to make the choice up or down, I think that is what we were tasked to do. Thank you.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I would back up one notch here for at least a minute, and to say that we are all so lucky to live in this city. This is a city which is the vision, the result of the vision of 100-plus years of great people, generous people, forward-thinking people, and good times, let's face it. Post-World War II was a great era, economic era, that helped fund many of these things. And we are now at a place where the, we are the stewards, we're the beneficiaries, and we are also the stewards. And so, as I have struggled now for these years up here to find ways to do the right thing for this city, this is one of the strategies that has come forward. Let's face it, I think that our conservative friends and our liberal friends would both say that our tax system in this state, and even in this nation, is a bit of a mess. And so, we can't fix that here. But we, what we need to do is look at our city and say, how can we contribute to the future with something? And so this is the tool that has come forward, gone through a year plus, year and a half of vetting, of, of engagement with our community, that seems to hold up and say, this, we've got a shot at this. And Mr. Rouse made the point that we're not, this isn't something being imposed on our citizenry, rather it's, it's teeing something up to say, let's have this conversation during the next five months, and let's decide whether we are going to pull the yes button or the no button. And I hope that we get to have that conversation. I think that Mr. Rouse made another point that is important is that we can bond for, I mean, the big, single capital element that is there is the police headquarters. It's, it's just, it's a, it's a sad testament to infrastructure falling apart. Future councils would not have the ability to say, we're not going to pay that bond, but that building would get built under, let's say, under a three, four-year process of planning, design, and contracting, and so forth. So, and we can do a piece of that with our roads, to say, let's set aside 10, 15, 20 million dollars, a number of that scale, to say, we're going to borrow that much money, and we're going to get our streets up one notch at least, so that we're not having our streets, which are now in our annual financial report. We're obligated to say our streets are at risk. That's, that's the line item in our, in our, in our budget, in our CAFR, our financial report. I'd love that statement to say, no longer at risk. We can do those things, and then those bonds would get paid off over the next 20 years. So I hope that we have the votes here to at least present this to our citizens over the next five months, and have that conversation, and give our citizens the right to vote on it.
Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I don't disagree with anything that my colleagues have said, have said, except I want to set the bar a little higher. This is a big deal, and we should treat it as such. And to, right now, the way it is, half of the people could say yes, and half could say no. We would have virtually half of the city with us. I think we should have two-thirds of the city with us. In other words, I want real enthusiasm behind us, or none at all. So my hope is that, another thing is, you notice we have an oversight committee. That should be a red flag. That means that there could be problems down the way. We don't want those problems. We can eliminate that if we make it a specific tax with a two-thirds vote. I agree with all the things that they've said about the importance of addressing issues for which we have no funds. I would be the last guy ordinarily to vote for any tax increase, and in calling me conservative, I think Mr. White, I hope means that philosophically rather than politically, because I want to conserve things, and I want to conserve the great status of the city, and to feel the need to raise some money, but I want to be sure that everybody agrees with this and agrees with me. Thank you very much.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. If I'm perceiving all of this correctly, there's 64% of the polling, people would say yes to a general tax. So we all agree that we have need for infrastructure funding, and we're all political animals up here. Let's put it on the ballot, please. I, we just need five people to put it on the ballot, and then if you, you know, if you want to work against it, or be neutral, let the rest of us, you know, fight for this funding with our voters. We need the money, and we've gone through this process painstakingly, talking to the public. We know what their, what their desires are. I would nominate Ms. Raisin for the oversight committee. We can, we, we have to have some trust in this process. Our buildings are not getting any younger. I'm not getting any younger. We, we really need to move this forward, and I, and I think I'm directing my comments to, to councilmember Hart, to really, please, just put it on the ballot, and, and let those of us who are enthusiastic about this work for it, and, and get the money into our coffers. And a general tax, because it'll be easier. Here it is. It's an easier way to get some money to help our city. Thank you.
Hart?
Well, I think this is a classic example of the, should we do it right, or should we do it right now? And we should do it right, because, you know, if you really think hard about what the citizen oversight committee is, it's a fig leaf, because this is a general tax increase. There is nothing for the public or the citizens to oversee in that regard. The decisions of how that money would be spent could be changed on any Tuesday by a majority of the council. So what we'd be doing, I think, by putting this on So what we'd be doing, I think, by putting this on the ballot, would be fooling people by saying, we have this infrastructure problem, we're going to give this tax increase, and we're going to solve this infrastructure problem with this tax increase. There is nothing connecting those two elements at all, other than just the decision of the council on any given Tuesday. So I can't support putting that on the ballot. I recognize that we have a revenue need and that we do need to go to the voters to have a tax measure to increase revenues, to address our infrastructure need, but we need to have a measure that actually accomplishes that. And the only way to do that is with a specific tax. I'm encouraged to hear Councilmember Hotchkiss is interested in that as well. I think there is a way to do this right, and I think it will take more time. And I think it will involve more dialogue with the community. I think what the subcommittee did to date was valuable work, but it didn't finish. It basically, the direction we gave that committee was to go bring this problem to the public and to raise awareness of the problem. The charge was not to discuss the solution to the problem, and that's not what the committee did. The committee didn't talk about the solution to the problem. Then we did a poll that only proposed one solution to the problem. So we have been slightly missing the mark consistently for the past year, and we need to correct and get onto the right path. And it's going to take some time to do that. It's going to take time to have a sophisticated dialogue with the public, to figure out exactly what the expenditure plan is going to be, precisely to be able to tell voters, this is what you're going to get with your tax dollars over a certain period of time. That's the way to be successful. It is a higher bar. It's frankly silly that it's a higher bar to have voters approve a specific tax as opposed to a general tax, but that's the world we live in. And I think that the fact that we have a close poll would be improved by having a specific tax on the ballot and giving the voters that assurance that when there is a Citizens Oversight Committee, that can actually look at an expenditure plan and say, did the council invest the money in the things that we proposed to spend it on and be able to verify that? That's how you get accountability, that's how you get credibility, and that's the only way to do that.
So I guess for me, I'm trying to be very realistic and very practical. And I do agree, it is silly that state law says that to be, have a specific tax, you need a higher bar than for a general tax. It should be flipped around. And maybe that was a mistake when the bill was passed in Sacramento, maybe not, but there's the, you know, it is what it is. The reality is, we get reports every year, every election cycle, through the League of California cities, cities, hundreds of cities up and down the state, inland, Republican-dominated cities, Democratic-dominated cities, decline to state, whatever, time and again, put on the ballot a general tax and pass it. And a lot of them don't get the two-thirds majority vote. So if you want to set up the bar, and so here's the practical side coming out. If you want to set a bar up for a special tax, when we have a polling that says it's not going to pass, and where we're basically saying one-third of the electorate gets to, one-third plus one of the electorate gets to decide what happens to the majority of the city council, that's not, to me, what it means when you have majority vote. And yes, I would agree, I would love to have 80%, you know, voter approval on something, but to be practical and to really get the work done in a way that's going to pass, I think you need to go with what cities have done all over the state, which is a general, a general tax. I think the Oversight Committee is not just a fig leaf, it's something real, it shows accountability. They're going to be people who, I think, there's be an open public process as part of that. I think the bonding issue, we'll set it up early from the start to show that the majority of this money will be used for debt service for actual capital projects that we've been told that need to occur. So, and then if we wait until next year, we don't know what the state's going to do with Prop 30 expiring. There's talk of whether to extend it, not extend it, whatever, what else is going to be on the, whatever else is going to be on the ballot. The school board might have something, City College might have something. Again, there's, you know, all this kind of talk, the timing to do this, when we're not in competition with a whole variety of other potential things locally and statewide, is this November. So I think we follow through with what we set out to do, and we try to be very realistic and pragmatic about it. And again, we're not making this decision, the voters are making the decision. All we're doing is asking the voters what they think. And they can say yes, and they can say no. And the majority of the votes that come in is what happens, and that's usually how elections go. So that's, so I think, I don't know if we're going to have, I haven't seen Mr. Francisco yet, but I would continue with the half percent general tax. And so we have two lights on, Mr. Rouse.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would want to correct one thing that Mr. Hart talked about, and is that what the committee did and how we proceeded. We went out twice to these groups. One time to talk about the problem and illustrate that and get their feedback about what their priorities were. The second time was not with a direction on how it was financed, but a menu of options, including the option of not doing anything at all. What does status quo get us? What does status quo do for infrastructure, what does it do for maintenance? But then there was an entire menu of options as far as financing, half cent, quarter cent, utility users' tax, parking fees, whatever it was, yeah, whatever it was that would have to generate the revenue that was needed. And it turned out that the half-cent sales tax was the only one that seemed to make sense for most people. Once again, it wasn't a top-down presentation. It was a citizens-up presentation, and that's how we went out, and that's how we received the information, and that's what we're presenting to you guys today.
Your lights on.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would just say to all of you that say, well, let's go out and, you know, we'll work and inform the public that if we set the higher bar, we'll have to work even harder to inform the public. And I do think that the public, I mean, I know the public generally does not understand the difference between specific and general taxes, because some of us up here haven't always understood it, and we've had to repeat it about four times. So that kind of work is necessary on such an important step as increasing taxes. And, okay, I guess I'll go along with the half cent, but I really want to make it something that people carefully consider. Remember, we have talked about this before, an informed citizenry, an informed populace is absolutely vital, and it's our responsibility to inform people and show them why we're making it tough to do this. A, we're fiscally very conservative and want to be very careful, but secondly, we want you to make the right decision, knowing the challenges that are before us. Thank you very much.
Okay. So we at least want to see if there's any direction with five or more votes going forward. So we need a motion to try to start something. Mr. White.
Madam Mayor, I move that the council direct staff to draft a sales tax measure of a half cent for 20 years as a general tax with the, basically with the layout, with the Oversight Committee, as described in the staff report, with the intent of funding infrastructure needs primarily, as outlined in the staff presentation that's on our screen before us.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved in second. Why don't we have a roll call?
Councilmember Francisco?
No.
Hart?
No.
Hotchkiss?
No.
Mario?
Yes.
Rouse?
Aye.
Mayor Schneider?
Aye. So that was four-three, but you need five, so that failed. Okay, so is there any other discussion or motions at this point?
Madam Mayor, may I make a motion?
Yep.
I move what Councilmember White just did, except a quarter cent sales tax.
Is there a second?
Does that appeal to anybody else?
I'm not hearing a second.
You know, I'm trying to give a little here, a general tax. Nina Johnson is telling us it'll pass, we'll have that money, we'll be able to help our city.
I'm not hearing a second, Ms. Mario.
I'll second it for discussion purposes. I think, I would say, I want to hear from any of the noes to say whether there's any movement there. I certainly don't want to, I'm not up here to just make futile motions. So I appreciate hearing from our naysayers if there's any change.
Mr. Hart.
What we need is strong support from the council for a measure that everybody agrees to. You know, I'm confused by Councilmember Rouse's point that he's only supportive of putting this on the ballot, he's not supportive of actually, you know, advocating for the tax. That, to me, is the recipe for disaster. You know, that is not how you go forward to the voters halfway in. We either have a plan, and we tell the voters, this has been fully thought out, and this makes sense, and we're embracing it, and we're supporting it, and we want to convince you to do that, or we don't. You can't be halfway in the middle of the street on something like this.
Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss.
Are we still discussing Ms. Mario's motion?
We should, it should be to the motion, yes.
No, I don't have anything said.
Okay. So I'm gathering that the folks who did not want a general tax to begin with will probably say no to this as well. So I don't see any reason to go forth with money that really won't be adequate for the needs and putting in, going through a whole election doing this. So I appreciate the endeavor, Ms. Mario, but I don't think it's going to be...
Should I withdraw my motion, Mr. Kulan?
Well, that's up to you.
Okay, I withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right. Anything else at this point? Mr. Hotchkiss.
Madam Mayor, I would move that we direct staff to pace a possible sales tax measure on the November ballot with a half cent, and it's a specific tax that requiring two-thirds vote among the populace to succeed.
Is there a second? Okay, I don't hear, I don't hear a second. But I do appreciate Mr. Hotchkiss actually putting a motion on the floor to actually put a sales tax measure on the ballot. I just want to put that out there, that was appreciative. Mr. Hart.
I think we should take Councilmember Hotchkiss up on his thought. I don't think it's possible to do that between now and November, but I do think it is possible to do it by 2016, although it's still going to be a rush. But, and as proof that that can happen, regardless of the competition on the ballot, is there have been two specific taxes passed in the city of Santa Barbara in the last 15 years. There was Measure B to invest in our Clean Creeks, and then Measure A, which is the transportation sales tax measure that was passed regionally with 80% of the voters passing it county-wide. And in 2008, there was the state sales tax increase on the same ballot at the same time. So voters understand good plans and will support them regardless of the competition. If you talk to pollsters, they'll tell you the same thing. So the issue is not when and trying to be sneaky with the timing and trying to beat everybody else or whatever, it's putting together a good plan. And what we need to do is just put together a better plan and be ready for a 2016 election. And I think if we had a strong unanimous council in support of that kind of measure in 2016, it could pass.
Okay, I wasn't being sneaky, just put it that way. I think we're all being very open-ended about this, open-minded. Mr. Rouse?
Yeah, and I'll remind Councilmember Hart that we did have a measure for a police station at one time that failed. We have a different, you know, view of how government works. I mean, to me, it was the idea that I was being dictated to by the folks that we went out and talked to. So if it's up to me to foist my philosophies out and sell what I believed to everybody, I'm, clearly I've got this wrong. So it might be a slight, it might be a nuance, but that's really the way I felt about going out and talking to people. That's why we went to all those meetings, and that's why we presented the choices that we did. And I thought what we were doing is carrying it back here to see if, you know, and if we're not, obviously it's not going to go on the ballot, and I'll live with that. But that was the purpose, and that was the way we saw it. It wasn't to carry out some mission that I had philosophically, to raise taxes and go forward and do these things. So the option will have to come up at some other time in some other forum.
Okay. So I'm not seeing any consensus here today, so what I would suggest is that we have until the end of July, in case for some reason there's a consensus that could come about. But for now, I think we should stop having a conversation about this item, because we'll just go in circles. And if there's another plan that comes up, then two council members can put that on a future agenda, whether it's for this November or for 2016. So with that, I think we should move on, if that's where we should need to go. Okay. And before we go on to the next item, I just also want to just thank Councilmembers White and Rouse for the amount of time they've put into the subcommittee. I think it's still good work that we have and won't go unnoticed, or it'll still be helpful into the future with whatever we decide. So with that, okay, let's move on to item 16.
Ealing's Park Foundation Annual Report Presentation.
Ms. Rap.
Nancy Rap, Parks and Recreation Director. And I just have to say, I know it's been a long meeting, and we have one more item after this. So we are here today to do a presentation to you on Ealing's Park. Ealing's Park is a 230-acre public park within the city, with 133 of those acres owned by the Ealing's Park Foundation, and 97 of those acres owned by the city. We have two long-term leases between the city and Ealing's Park Foundation, the park parcel, and then a second for the La Spacida's tennis facility. There is a requirement in each lease for the submittal of annual report, which is very similar to many of the property leases that we have for park property within the city. Today, I'm going to start by giving you a brief overview of the history of the park and the relationship with the Parks and Recreation Department. And then Matt For, the Environmental Services Manager, will be here to give an overview of the city's landfill and environmental issues related to that, since that's been a topic of conversation recently. And then John Britton and Mike Nelson will give a presentation on Ealing's Park. So it's interesting that we're following the few discussions that we just had, because the city has always struggled with how they were going to meet and fund park and recreation needs for the community. And it has been a challenge. I'll be here next week with a discussion about Franceschi House, which for 45 years the city has tried to fund rehabilitating that house and preserving it for public use. And so here we are today, talking about a park that was a dream, a community dream, from a closed-city landfill that was a vision in 1965, when park advocates promoted it as an opportunity to build a significant sports and recreation complex for the community. The parks and the recreation commissions, at that time there were two, made a recommendation to proceed for the city council, who agreed, entailed then a community vision and a master plan for that park. And with the funding of a state park grant, the Phase 1 of the tennis court complex was completed. So that was 1972. Here comes the part we're all familiar with. In 1975, the city said, whoa, stop, we just don't have any funding to realize the rest of the dream. And city council directed Parks and Recreation staff to consider alternate uses. So a group of park advocates in the community, including Jerry Harwin, the park superintendent at the time, Mike Pejos, Cesar Usaka, and at that time Recreation Director Richard Johns, rallied community support for an alternate project, which would be a public-private partnership in which the foundation would build and operate the park without city funds. A very unique concept in those days, more common today as municipalities have struggled with how to fund community park and recreation needs. In 1977, the Parks and Recreation Commission approved the development plan for the La Spacida's Park, recommended it for city council approval. In 1980, the La Spacida's Park Foundation formed and entered into a long-term lease with the city to develop and operate the park, and the park opened in 1985. So since that time, it has operated as a public-private partnership that works. So since that time, it has operated as a public-private partnership that works. And when I became the director, there were significant concerns about the financial stability and feasibility of the Ealing's Park Foundation to continue to operate the park. And I'm pleased to say that that is a very different situation today. And it just points to the challenges that the private part of the operators have in operating a public-private partnership without any tax support. So it can be a challenge. The city entered into a separate agreement for La Spacida's tennis facility. I think all of you are very familiar with how that came about. What you may not know is that the tennis courts were originally included in the master plan for the park. And over the years, there had been discussions between La Spacida's Park, Ealing's Park Foundation, and the Parks and Recreation Department about having the park take over the tennis courts. It was not anything that we moved on. In 2009, when the department was going through significant reductions, we were asked to look at opportunities to have community partners operate and fund city facilities providing community recreation. We looked at three. Two went forward, the Police Activities League for the 1235 Teen Center and Ealing's Park. The Parks and Recreation Department, as you know, over the next few years, we lost about a third of our general fund subsidy and about a quarter of our Parks and Recreation workforce, and we're still not back to pre-recession levels. At that time, the unfunded capital for the Parks and Recreation Department was $60 million. Today, it's $112 million. What was included in that $60 million was $1.3 million, or 1.1, I can't remember which one it was, for improvements that were desperately needed at the La Spacida's tennis facility and not funded year after year after year, not a high enough priority with other competing priorities. So as part of the lease that was negotiated, that they would undertake the funding and completion of those capital projects. So in December of 2010, the city council approved an 18-year lease for the tennis facility. So that's kind of a quick overview of how we got here. And with that, I'll defer to Matt For to talk about the landfill.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor. Councilmembers Matt For, Environmental Services Manager. Just want to briefly talk about the regulatory oversight that is involved in overseeing the operation and maintenance of a closed landfill. It's interesting, I've been here for almost five years now, and people are still surprised to learn that a closed landfill underlies Ealing's Park. To that, I always say, you know, it's a perfect post-closure land use. Parks and open space are absolutely a good alignment with what we want to put on top of a closed facility. There are a number of other examples of where closed landfills have been converted into recreational spaces. Up in Northern California, where I came from, Mountain View, a shoreline amphitheater in Mountain View is a closed landfill. So it really makes, that post closure decision makes our job very easy, makes it much easier. This is a, just a diagram of the waste footprint. And about 90 acres of the site is the closed landfill. This red dashed line here shows, it mostly encompasses the ball fields in the BMX facility and the soccer fields. But that's the landfill as we know it. The main reason or the main point here tonight is that, three things I want to take away. One is that landfills are highly regulated. There is a substantial amount of regulatory oversight that goes into not only open and active landfills, but also closed landfills. The modern-day landfills are subject to formal close, post closure maintenance and regulation for 30 years. And really, any landfill, for all intents and purposes, we own it and we monitor it and take care of it until there's nothing left to be concerned about. So there are three primary agencies that oversee the site. The first is CalRecycle. That's a state agency under the Resources Department. It's the former Integrated Waste Management Board. CalRecycle is primarily in charge of monitoring our landfill gas monitoring and control system, the integrity of the top cover that was placed over the facility after it was formally closed, and also these post closure land use decisions. CalRecycle delegates its oversight authority to Santa Barbara County Environmental Health Services, so they are our day-to-day regulatory agency that we interface with. The second agency that we interface with is the Air Pollution Control District. We maintain a permit with APCD for our landfill gas collection system and the small flare that operates out at the site. We also have a permit, a COUPA permit with the county fire. And then the other big state agency that has substantial oversight is the Regional Water Quality Control Board for all of the surface and groundwater monitoring that we There is a substantial amount of monitoring, as I mentioned, and we, the city, through contractors and some that we do ourself, we monitor a lot of things out at the site. The first is landfill gas. And on a monthly and a quarterly basis, we are monitoring a perimeter, a network of perimeter monitoring wells that surround the landfill footprint. And we make sure that the landfill gas concentrations at the landfill perimeter do not exceed 5%. We also are under a regulatory requirement to make sure that landfill gas in buildings on-site, and there are some, including the restrooms and the offices, do not exceed 1.25%. In tightly enclosed spaces that are not well-vented, landfill gas can be an issue where it concentrates. That's why the lower threshold. But the venting is so good out at the park in the way that the buildings were designed, we never see landfill gas accumulate. The second thing we look at is to preserve the integrity of the top cover. What we really want to maintain is what we call a dry tomb. Landfills are designed so that moisture does not infiltrate through the top cover and get into the trash. And so we look at the top cover and make sure that water that is either applied by the sprinkler system, or if we ever have rain, does not pond, but rather drains off the site into planned drainage courses. We also monitor groundwater. We monitor surface water quality. For surface water, we look primarily during the rainy season. During storm events, we go out and take water samples. And groundwater, we monitor a network of about seven groundwater monitoring wells twice per year for a number of constituents. So to start with landfill gas, you know, what is landfill gas? It's the gas that's generated by bacteria, by anaerobic bacteria, as organic material like wood, paper, plant material, and food breaks down and decomposes. Then methane, primarily, and some carbon dioxide is generated. The amount of landfill gas that we generate really depends upon a number of factors, like the age of the waste. For example, Taheguis landfill, not only is it bigger than La Spacida's, but it's in its prime decomposition stage, so a lot of methane is generated. They actually produce so much, they can combust engines and sell it back to the grid. We don't. Our waste is a lot older, the last being placed in the mid-1970s. So we produce some, but definitely not enough to generate power. Also, the waste characterization, the higher the organic load, the more gas will be produced. The moisture content, as moisture infiltrates the landfill, it spurs the bacteria, and they become more active and more methane is generated. The silver lining to this drought is that we have seen our landfill gas production fall because it's been dry. And finally, temperature. You know, we will see much more methane be generated in warm Southern California climates than, for example, in Alaska. This is a slide, not to memorize where the landfill gas-specific wells are, but just to show that this perimeter of landfill gas monitoring wells follows the perimeter of the landfill footprint. And so that's where we are monitoring landfill gas concentrations. This includes all of the monitoring wells, as well as the 10 buildings that we monitor on site. Like every other landfill in California, the city and the closed La Spacida's has had a history of landfill gas production. And in 2001, without any control measures on-site, we started to see an increase in methane. In response, Santa Barbara County Environmental Health issued us a compliance order and said, develop a work plan to take care of it. What we did then in 2011 is install a landfill gas collection system, which this council appropriated funding for. The total cost was about $900,000, and we received about a $400,000 grant to offset those costs. We constructed the system in 2011. It took us about two years or so to optimize it and to go through various iterations of getting it right. And then in 2015, we've been really consistently operating it, and we'll show what the results of that have been. So this landfill gas collection system, what is it? We put in four extraction wells that are really just perforated PVC tubes with a vacuum that's attached, and we actively suck methane out of the landfill. At this point, with it being such old waste, it's really a guessing game for us as to how often we operate this system. The landfill does not produce enough gas to operate this 24 hours a day, and we have a propane tank that supplements the combustion reaction. So we look on a real-time basis through a data system to see how much gas is coming in versus how much propane is being burned, and we make adjustments accordingly. So we have four landfill gas extraction wells. Those wells are connected by a central header pipe that then goes to the small skid flare that we have in the lower parking lot. So what is the result of all this work? This red line really shows the trend of landfill gas concentrations over the years, and you can see that it's definitely trending downward. So in 2002, we had concentrations of over 30%, and now in 2015, we are at or below the 5% threshold. That's really the take-home of this. The last reading that we took last month, landfill gas was at 3.4%, I believe. So things are looking good. So that's gas. The last element I'd like to talk about real quickly is the water quality monitoring. The same principle as the landfill gas, as water does, you know, the trash that was put into the landfill had moisture entrained in it, and as some moisture does enter the landfill, it will pick up the chemicals and the constituents that are in the underlying material. So as the liquid percolates through, it picks up things like volatile organic chemicals. That would be things like solvents and fuel. It also will pick up metals that was in the waste, some salts and other organic material, and we monitor what's happening. How the law looks at water quality at a landfill is that unlike other industries like gas stations and dry cleaners, landfills are subject to a zero-tolerance rule, which means as long as there's anything there underlying the landfill that wasn't naturally occurring, we monitor it, and we'll continue to do that. So how do we determine compliance? We monitor surface water and groundwater upstream of the landfill, at the landfill, and downstream, and we compare those results to background analytics. And that will tell us whether something is emerging from the landfill itself. This is another diagram, very similar to the landfill gas collection system. This shows the network of groundwater monitoring wells and surface water collection points that we take, and you'll see that same thing follows the perimeter of the waste footprint. So what are those water quality results? There are some small amounts, small concentrations of volatile organic chemicals that are underlying the landfill. It's not unexpected, but they are foreign. They're not naturally occurring. But there's no evidence that those VOCs have left the property, and that's what our downstream monitoring shows us. With metals, metals are a bit tricky because metals occur naturally in the geology of the site. And so what we are still working on as a city is determining what that background, what those background concentrations of metals are, and we will then compare those to the metal concentrations on-site. We're not done with that, but we're continuing to work with the Regional Water Quality Control Board on that. And we expect to be done with that work around January of 2016. And from that, the Regional Water Quality Control Board will, for the first time, give us long-term monitoring and reporting requirements for the landfill. So what do we conclude from all of this? The big conclusion is Ealing's Park is safe. That's what I want everyone to take home with this. There's a, from the landfill gas perspective, there's a finite amount of landfill gas. The waste is old. I believe we are on the tail end of what is going to be produced. And at some point, I expect that we shut down this landfill gas system because there's nothing else to take out. The second is that there's no evidence that city drinking water is impacted by the landfill. The nearest drinking water municipal well is more than a mile away, and there's no evidence that a royal borough is impacted by the landfill either. Lastly, the city is in compliance with all of the regulatory requirements that we are subject to, and as those evolve, for example, with new requirements that come down from the regional board in January of 2016, we'll comply with those as well. So with that, I'd be glad to take any specific questions.
Thank you, Ms. Murio.
Thank you, Mr. Forth. So you said there's about a royal borough in the last slide. Just tell us how you know that. Who checks out the water quality in a royal borough? Which agencies or Creeks Division, maybe?
Sure. So I'm speaking specifically to the sampling that we are doing at the facility. There's other monitoring of a royal borough that occurs. What I can tell you is that the groundwater monitoring and the surface water monitoring that we perform directly upstream of the landfill, at the landfill, and downstream of the landfill at the site entrance, there's nothing that's coming out of the landfill and crossing the entrance to the facility.
Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? No? Okay. Thank you very much, Mr. Forth. Okay. Next.
So I believe that John Britton, who is the president of the Ealing's Park Foundation Board, will begin the presentation, followed by Mike Nelson, the executive director.
As I should. Make sure the mic's on with the green light.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, good evening. My name is John Britton. I'm the president of the Board of Directors of the Ealing's Park Foundation. I've served on the board for more than 20 years. When I started with the board, the primary users of the park were the softball players and the soccer players and the hang gliders. In my time, I've seen significant change at the park from the acquisition of the Jesuit property, the growth of our youth programs and summer camps, the establishment of the dog walker group, the undertaking of the La Spacida's tennis courts, and many new users to the park, including BMX, remote-controlled cars, rugby, and lacrosse, to name a few. This year marks the 30-year anniversary of the park, and a couple weeks ago, we had a celebration up there to celebrate the opening of the park. Now, we were honored to have Bill Burtka speak at the event. Most people in the community know Bill Burtka as a very successful, longtime member of the Lakers organization. But before Burtka became involved with basketball, he was with the city's Recreation Department. And he was one of the individuals who started the development of the park some 50 years ago. Bill spoke of the long-term partnership between the city and the park that led to the transformation of the old dump to what is now a park that our residents can enjoy. And that partnership still exists today. With the continued support of the city of Santa Barbara, we're able to provide recreational opportunities for our community. I would like to thank you for your support for this park, and we look forward to a long, positive relationship with the city of Santa Barbara.
Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you. It's a pleasure to be able to, even at this late hour, to be able to describe the community benefits that the Ealing's Park Foundation provides Santa Barbara and those who visit it. The foundation's always been guided by a simple principle that out... The foundation's always been guided by a simple principle that active outdoor recreation is as important to someone's emotional health as it is to their physical health. And at that park, we provided millions of recreation experiences without any public subsidy, completely handling our operating costs. We, to speak a little bit about the conversion of a landfill, urban populations are swelling nationwide, and we're seeing a repurposing of railways, of canals, of highways, and landfills to handle a seemingly, you know, insatiable appetite for recreation in open space. Today, landfills have created hundreds of urban parks. In Berkeley, on the bay, there is Caesar Chavez Park. In Albuquerque, there's a regional park that's where the balloon festival that helps brand that city. In New York, Flushing Meadows, the site of Two Worlds Fairs, is now a local park managed by a private conservancy. And finally, at the edge of Staten Island, there's a park called Fresh Kills Park. And Fresh Kills will be three times the size of Central Park, but it will also be built on the world's largest landfill. Urban communities are realizing that the cost of monitoring, public safety, water quality, air quality are not unreasonable when you consider the incredibly high cost of real estate to acquire 100 acres within a city limit to build an urban recreation area. I think it's safe to say that the Santa Barbara, city of Santa Barbara's decision to convert a closed landfill into a park is a proven concept and an approach that is as correct today, was decades ago. It seems fitting that we are here today to acknowledge our 30th anniversary to the council, our partner, because you did accept the recommendation of your recreation commission and its chair, Jerry Harwin, who became our first president. You authorized the creation of the nonprofit foundation and executed the 25-year lease that created the park that's before you today. As an overview, the park's geographic prominence is only going to increase. We are the hub, the centerpiece, if you will, of an incredible public landscape that includes Hedry's Beach, which the county manages, which includes the Douglas Preserve, which the city manages. And is just across the street at Las Pecitas, a recently optioned property by the Trust for Public Land that could provide important stream value protection to Royal Borough Creek. The assembly of Ealing's Park is better shown on this map. Everything above that sort of brown-gray squiggle there is what we call North Park. It is where both leases are, where the 94-acre lease is, I'll go back a little bit. The 94-acre lease is for the landfill footprint and up in the left-hand corner, the tennis courts. Essentially, the tennis courts, the property up there was acquired from, I think, the school district to build out the park. The landfill footprint and the Ealing's Park South is the property the foundation required from the Jesuits. North Park, which is the heart of the lease that we have, we've been working the last year in terms of an annual report. The five fields are completely over-prescribed. We were having difficulty with turf management, and we thought perhaps this year was the one that we would actually try to do something a little different. Where we've done that, we are looking at different types of grasses. We're looking at soil amendments instead of fertilizer because we're dealing with recycled water, and we're dealing with a clay liner on top, which makes growing the fields difficult. We also sought for the first time to have some of the user organizations participate directly in the cost of renovating and restoring these fields. And I'm happy to say that Santa Barbara Rugby and Lacrosse Associations did just that. Rugby raising $50,000 and Lacrosse convincing a corporate donor to donate $75,000, the curvature company in Galito. We're very proud of that. But also, in addition to the athletic events, we do wedding and special events. The park holds real special meaning and a sense of place to many within our community, our community. And the fact that we make the venues available for weddings and community organizations, the photo before you today is one of the organizers of a hike for the Summit for Danny with the Summit for Danny statue in the back. We also made the property available for Glow in the Park, which is for a balloon festival, for Santa Barbara Street Medicine, and Doctors Without Walls. But the community, the community events are really quite interesting. Just last Friday, the Santa Barbara Middle School had their graduation. We have local businesses. We have local businesses, banks, engineering firms, all sorts of local businesses use the park. Then there are other community organizations like Glow in the Park or Summit for Danny, which also use the property. So making these venues available allows these organizations to generate funds, to give back, and do more community services. As far as our key public programs are concerned, John mentioned softball. Softball today, we have 75 teams out there and about 800 to 900 players. They're there every night of the week. It's probably our most popular adult program. We recently started a Mesa Trails program 12 times a year. We have 3K, 5K events, tournaments. We have 10 tournaments a year for kids, 9 through 18. Summer camps. Summer camps has long been an important part of our program. We're particularly proud that we worked through pals to place 100 scholarships to children that can't afford to go to camp. We also have both the off-leash dog program, which, as we speak today, has 650 dogs and their owners enrolled in it. But we couldn't do it without partnerships. We don't, we look to organizations to actually provide and perform recreation services. And Mario will quickly run through these. These organizations provide recreation opportunities for both adults and children. And now on to the other leased area, Las Pecitas Tennis Courts. As has been described, we accepted responsibility when asked by the city for the courts, largely because it was always a important integral component of the park and one that the board felt very, very strongly about. Since we have taken control of the property, our objective has been won and it remains that. We're trying to create a community resource where people can enjoy and learn the game of tennis, and it's a public facility for players, families, and young people to enjoy. We're trying to change the programming, so it is managed seven days a week. There's a comprehensive tennis program that offers summer camps, clinics, tournaments, special events, fundraisers, a full range of tennis activities. On maintenance, we sort of, we had two responsibilities. One was to provide, to maintain the park, but also to redevelop the center of the park. We've focused, our focus to date has been twofold. We're working with ABR to, in fact, get the permits to go forward with the design. But the photograph here is particularly important, Mari, if we could go back to it. We were able to raise this year $75,000 to resurface the courts, to replace all of the chain-linked fences, to paint the poles and repair the lights, to put in new, to new wind screens, which hadn't been done for 11 or 12 years. And we're really, we're really proud of that, and we hope it's going to help us increase visitation. As we move into the conceptual design, we're working with ABR on this. We essentially have been before them twice. They have made some solid recommendations to improve the design of the facility. We're finally at the point where the bulk size and scale of the thing has been determined to be appropriate by ABR. We hope to return on the 22nd of this month with a landscape architectural plan that they requested. And if we're successful in getting their conceptual approval, we'd like to think that within six to nine months, we could actually go forward with breaking, with a groundbreaking. Why do we think that? We're really confident about our experience in fundraising, right now, with the support to do the much-needed repairs. We feel we can raise $2.5 million from donors and have had indication from a small donor group that that is, in fact, possible. We've already received a pledge of $1,005,000 to make this happen. So we're hoping to raise enough money, not just to rebuild the center, but to also create an endowment for its long-term care and maintenance. Visitation is going to be a challenge for a while. We, though we've experienced some growth between 2013 and 14, you can see from $8,600 to $11,000 for a period in 2014, we've still got a long way to go. We'd like, we'd like visitation to increase dramatically. We particularly want to see that occur with members, annual members. We only have about 47 to 50 annual members. We'd like to double that, quite frankly, and we think we're going to have to pursue some new directions with our partner, the Santa Barbara School of Tennis, who has recruited a new tennis pro that will concentrate on adult play and annual memberships. We at the park are trying to push some of, double hat some of our folks to spend additional administrative personnel at the park, our volunteers. And the thing that we are most excited about is we started to use folks that play tennis there on our advisory committees and on our board of directors. We now, because we want, we want to hear from people that play tennis at Las Pecitas to give us, give us guidance, whether that's promotions, whether that's reexamining our rate structure. So we are definitely open to the input of those players. As far as conclusions, financially, we had a good year. 2014 was good for us. Our income was $1,048,000. Our expenses were $972,000. That reflects a split of about 75/25 between user fees and revenues we generated on the grounds and those that we received from donations, gifts, and grants. It's important to realize that that figure includes the Las Pecitas tennis courts because, as in every park system or every park, they don't, every venue doesn't pay for itself. Some do better than others. As it stands today, the tennis courts don't pay for themselves. We would love to be able to break even, but we're not. In 2013, our shortfall was $75,000. In 2014, in 2013, it was $76,200. And in 2014, our shortfall was about $24,000. So there has been, there has been improvement, and we hope that will continue. But looking forward, though we celebrate our 30th anniversary, we recognize an obligation to adapt our programs to the changing demands and demographics of this community. And we realize that we've got to continue to be a learning organization. We've made some mistakes, and we'll probably make some more. But one thing we do is we own those mistakes. We try to fix them, and we always learn, we always learn from those mistakes. And I think that's reflected in the fact that we've been successful for three decades. So the foundation takes pride in its relationship with the city, and we are confident this partnership can provide a future as bright as the legacy that our past would suggest. Thanks very much. Be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for the presentation, but what mistakes have you made? You kind of...
Well, there, we, as we have grown the park, as you'll recall, Phase 3 has gone, went through a number of iterations, and we have eventually dropped Phase 3 and have focused on the existing footprint of the, of North Park. So we learned from that and have gone forward.
I think we have one more. This was just for information, or are you going to go over this at this point?
Only if you had questions. I basically prepared it as background for you.
Right. Great. Okay. Why don't, we have a number of public comments. Speaker Thibodeau, why don't we go to that? And we'll start with Glenn Gibbons, to be followed by Karen Van Hoek. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. My name is Glenn Gibbons. I am a resident of Beller Knowles, which is the residential community adjacent to Ellings Park. I am the father of three children, two of whom are in high school, one of whom is still in elementary school. My children and I played tennis at Ellings Park when it was a public tennis court. But when the city council entered into the ground lease with Ellings Park for these tennis courts, my children and I unfortunately no longer play there. And the reason I don't play there anymore is because it's essentially become a private club. I certainly do feel fortunate to live next to Ellings Park and to have all these wonderful amenities right nearby, like a Royal Borough beach and Douglas Preserve. And as Councilman White had noted, I do think, you know, we have much reason to feel fortunate, you know, to live here. But with respect to these tennis courts, I don't feel lucky. I feel like the city gave away a valuable public amenity for a dollar a year, for something like 18 years, and then it's renewable for something like up to almost 30 years. And I think that's kind of, that's poor stewardship. I wonder what's next. Will we give away Royal Beach under the same terms of a deal because we simply can't find it in the city budget to maintain the beach, and we'll have private fees for using Royal Borough? Or, for instance, Douglas Preserve, the same kind of thing? I just think that's, it's sad that the city of Santa Barbara has to have that, the public tennis courts be that way.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So there's a number of people that want to waive their time to Ms. Van Hoek. I want to make sure you're still here. Nancy Savage, are you here?
Yes.
Herb Veick, thank you. Kathy, is it Mays?
Yep.
And John Trinidad. Is John here? No. Okay. So Karen, you have one, let's see, two. Karen, you have up to five minutes and then, I mean, sorry, up to eight minutes, and then be followed by David Niles.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I'm Karen Van Hoek. I'm a long-term resident physician of Santa Barbara and have played at the Las Pecitas Tennis Court since 1988, when I came into town. And our public tennis facility, Las Pecitas, where many of us played for decades, was taken from us and handed to the private entity, Ealing's Park, for a dollar a year. Ealing's now has a private academy running the facility with whom they split profits. Children who played free under the city are now charged $8 a day or $250 a year. Annual adult passes have increased 400% under Ealing's management. An entire community of tennis players has been disbanded due to Ealing's Park management. City Charter 520 states that no such transfer lease or sale of public land should occur without a vote by the city electorate. So how did this occur? There was no public notification or public input during this transfer. It was voted away in a simple calendar consent vote without any discussion by the city council at the time. There was no independent financial analysis to assess whether this lease of a multimillion-dollar facility was financially responsible and in the best interest of the public. There was no bidding involved. Data we have reviewed, we obtained this through the Freedom of Information Act, showed that there was greatest usage of these public tennis courts, with more people with annual and day passes playing here than at Muni or Pershing Park at any given time. and day passes playing here than at Muni or Pershing Park at any given time. These are the actual monitors reports that showed that during any given hour, multiple annual passes and daily passes were obtained, and much more than they were at Muni or Pershing. This is in stark contrast to the use of the facility under Ellings. They themselves report very few members, and at any given time, the courts are usually vacant. The city is not monitoring the lease agreement with Ellings. They have had illegal banners, not allowed in the city, which we had to press the city to have removed. They now have a sign posted called "Ellings Park Tennis Center." The lease calls for a city council vote before any facility name change. Most seriously, they have done non-permanent and non-inspected construction, including a retaining wall, and cut into the hillside that caused the death of oak trees. This is a clear violation of the lease, as no permission for any construction or alteration was given by the city. Ellings is therefore in default of their lease agreement, and the city should immediately revoke the lease and return the Las Pecitas tennis facility to the public. And it's disingenuous for Ellings to say that this has always been a master part of their plan. I was in part of fundraisers in the late eighties and early nineties where they were trying to raise money to build a tennis facility up at the top of the park, and that never materialized, but I donated for that cause. Additional Ellings history. Ellings cannot maintain their own playing fields. They're built over garbage which is constantly settling. This shows the pooling of water right after the winter rains. And they're saying that there's good drainage. There's not, just massive pools of water. They are using groundwater from Valverde Well with a new three-hundred-thousand-dollar pump plant paid for by the city. Should our groundwater be depleted for playing fields in this time of drought? Should playing fields over an old landfill even be irrigated, as this leads to more contamination of the groundwater and runoff of contaminants into creek neighborhoods and ocean below? Ellings had to be sued by the county in 2010 to stop their BMX track already built on the South Park, the property acquired from the Jesuits. The county had even provided Ellings a half-a-million-dollar grant to help acquire their property. Yet this BMX track was built in defiance of the covenant for only passive use for the property. The officials from Ellings, and it was printed in the Independent, were calling the Mesa Neighbors elitist, because of, they were objecting to this annual bike festival with loudspeakers on this environmentally sensitive land. In 2008, Ellings proposed a zoning change of their entire park to a regional park, which would have a thirteen-thousand-square-foot event center and other buildings proposed. This zoning change would have allowed carousels and other amusements, a virtual fairground. This proposal is currently on hold after neighbors were forced to organize and hire an attorney. Neighbors are already suffering from bright field lights and noise from loud weddings and whining remote-control cars from the park. Ellings has illegal winter hosts living in trailers on the park, with illegal plumbing and electrical wiring jutting out there. This is not allowed under the city, and yet there is no enforcement. Ellings runs its ventures with loose agreements with private groups for their weddings, softball, soccer. Yet the North Park is zoned A1, and this zoning prohibits commercial activities. Ellings has large, multiple public events without a conditional use permit. One such event was a hot-air balloon for the Doctors Without Borders. Yet methane gas levels from their gas monitoring and venting systems have shown levels of up to forty percent. And this is a report from April of 2014, which showed one of the levels was forty, thirty-nine point six percent, another had six point nine percent methane gas. Ellings is a bad example of a nonprofit. They are arrogant towards neighbors and public, have made disparaging remarks about long-term players in the press and other public documents. They ignore the laws and lease agreement. They waste resources like water and cost the city enormous amounts of money while claiming they take no tax dollars. The one-point-three-million-dollar gas venting and monitoring system on the park is just an example of the city's costs. They have potentially dangerous events with alcohol, and yet seemingly the city turns a blind eye for all things Ellings. Ellings has been given a treasure, and they just do what they want with it, once they have it. Our courts need to be returned to the public. Thank you for your time.
David Niles, and let's see, Dominique Caby? Is Dominique here? No? No. E.A. Taylor?
I think anyone's here.
Okay, so you have two minutes, Mr. Niles, to be followed by David Boone.
Madam Mayor and City Councils, my name is David Niles. Ellings Park is currently in default of the lease agreement it has with the city for Las Pecitas Park, and that's why the Las Pecitas Tennis Group and supporters are here today to respectfully request that the council act in some capacity to restore the public rights at Las Pecitas Park. Your own staff and consultants confirm volatile organic compounds in the water. The problem is the monitoring pipes are all shown above the park. If you look at studies, basically, monitoring should be done below the park and in the watershed shed and not above the park. They should, the, I think Cal Recycle is the one who required the installation of a million-dollar thermal oxidizing machine because of the toxic and explosive levels of gas, up to forty percent, as Karen indicated, and that there's been a three-hundred-thousand-dollar irrigation booster pump installed by the city and is being used to pump water from the city's Valverde groundwater supply to irrigate Ellings Athletics Fields. A Royal, and a Royal Borough, and a Royal Borough watershed is on the Clean Water Act as a compromised recreational waterway for the last, I think, thirty years. So there is monitoring and there is pollution. It doesn't appear that the city is reporting that. These issues are taxing city resources and appear to be displacing public facilities. Ellings' own report to the commission tells of plummeting membership counts down from the hundreds to unconfirmed numbers in the tens, possibly with no junior members. Their financial information stated a nearly ninety-thousand-dollar loss on the operation and maintenance of six public tennis courts. This includes the higher fees that they have chosen to charge. And in addition to these unflattering reports, Ellings is currently in default of the lease agreement. Many believe Ellings' violation of the lease agreement is a red flag and a sign of disrespect to the city and public. If you look at some communication between Ellings and the city, it looks like that Ellings was negotiating with one hand on the door.
Need to wind up, please.
A couple of comments. Ellings says, "We need to have the leeway to operate the courts in a manner the foundation deems appropriate and not in a way which might otherwise inhibit our ability to generate sufficient revenue."
Mr. Niles, your time's up.
Okay. Please return the Las Pecitas tennis courts to the public. Thank you.
David Boone, be followed by John Milton.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I'm just here to express my disappointment with Ellings and the high fees that have been levied there on our children. And as a family, and a family of four, it's caused me to go other places. I've stopped playing there due to the high fees. I know many other families that have been discouraged by the fee structure at Ellings, and I think it's appalling that they, our park that is a public park was a public park. Our children are forced to pay to play at a public park now, and I think that is wrong. And I hope that the city council will think about possibly taking this park back or actually working with Ellings, if Ellings would work with the public in some manner, to make it affordable for the general public, just like all our parks are, just like Muni, Pershing. I mean, there's no reason, if they're stewards of the city and they're going to take our park and they're going to run it, they should run it as a public park, not as a private facility, and raise the fees to exorbitant amounts that, pretty much, if you go by there now, there's no one playing there. It's empty. I drive by there every day, and there, those courts are beautiful, and they sit empty. And it's a shame that they do that and that our families in the neighborhood can't go down there and use the facility. Thank you.
John Milton? Be followed by Steve Bellamy.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilmembers. I'm, I've been going to Ellings, I was playing at Ellings Las Pecitas Courts for many, many years, and I've been going there almost daily, six, seven days a week for the past two years, hitting against the law. And I can, I have, can see there's usually at least four courts empty all the time, especially in the afternoon, when it would normally be prime time. Before, when it was public, you'd show up, you had to put your name on a waiting list to get a court. All six courts were being used. You congregated in a central area that was really well laid out, so you made friends, you developed tennis partners, picked up a game. I once had a pro at Ellings say, "You know, why don't you join?" And I said, "Well, everybody I play with is gone, and, you know, what would be the point?" And it's just deserted. There are two courts used for lessons, and that's about it. There are occasionally other things that happen, but it's on a day-in, day-out basis. If you were to go there and take a look for yourself, you'll see it's deserted. And it would seem to me that it's really not, the intention isn't to have it be public because if it were, the prices would be set at a rate where these people would come back and be members again. And I can't even understand the economics of having the rates so high that there's no one there. It doesn't make sense. The other thing is that some of the improvements they've done, I don't think they're aware that whoever did the fence did not, and there are several places where the fence does not come all the way down to the court, and you're playing tennis, the ball rolls out under the fence, very annoying. So the old fence didn't look as pretty, but it didn't have that problem.
Thank you.
I will say that whoever did the court resurfacing did do a good job on that. But I don't know. I think the Ellings people need to really see what's going on down there.
Thank you very much.
When this gentleman asks for suggestions, the rate would be a good place to start.
Okay. Steve Bellamy will be followed by Casey De La Barra.
Mayor, Councilmembers. We've been told repeatedly over the last few years that the city gave away the Las Pecitas tennis courts because the Parks and Rec Department didn't have the financing, didn't have the funding to pay for the ongoing maintenance. But when you look at the city's finances, you'll see that the Parks and Recreation Department's salaries and benefits budget increased by one million dollars just in the last year. So I'd like to nail this point once and for all. The issue is not that the Parks and Recreation Department doesn't have the money. The issue is how it chooses to spend our tax dollars. And the fact is that in the last year, Parks and Recreation Department chose to put a million dollars into their own pockets rather than spend the money on, excuse me, on our parks and tennis courts. And so I have to appeal to you and ask you to recognize that our public tennis courts and our parks are family treasures. We hold them in trust for future generations. They're not ours to give away for a dollar to some private entity. So I must ask you, please change this fundamentally wrong policy, which is based on a financial lie. Please return Las Pecitas tennis courts to the public. Thank you.
If that's correct. Followed by Paul, I think it's Coniff, or Con, Paul something, and then Phil Hill, and then Bruce Giffen.
Hello, Madam Mayor and Councilmembers. I am new to Santa Barbara. We moved here, my family, in August of this year, and prior to that, we had certainly come out to Santa Barbara to visit. My parents have been here for a long time. Now, we are a tennis family. I grew up utilizing public courts in Northern California as a child and have always utilized public facilities. And now my daughter is playing, has been playing since she was three, and the bulk of her practice has always been out of public facilities. We moved here from the East Coast, and there, the public facilities are managed in a very similar way as to they're managed here. There's, there's a user fee. It's, it's not like when I grew up, where I'd walk onto a court. The taxpayer doesn't flip the entire bill anymore for tennis facilities across this nation. You can go from the large complexes in Mobile, Alabama, to San Diego's Barnes Tennis Center. They're all utilizing user fees, and the user fees that we're talking about here are very much commensurate with those standards that are, that are across the nation now. I would, one of the things I reflect on when I, when I used to come out here on an annual basis and visit is the state of the facility was in complete disrepair. There's obviously been capital improvement in it, and I think a vesting which stands the facility in good stead moving forward so that it'll be there available for my children and down the road, because clearly, these types of, we're talking, the cost layouts for facilities like this are substantial. Simple resurface of a court's typically ten to twelve thousand dollars. Replacement of a court, we're talking about sixty to seventy thousand dollars. And there's certainly a lifetime to a court, typically every...
Need to wind up, please.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. White.
Sir?
Actually, we have a question for you. Go ahead.
Yeah. And what, so if you could crystallize your, your, your point down, what would be your main point?
My point is that the, the direction that the facility is going, I think, is a very positive one. I think it's been managed very well, and it's been managed in a construct that is very consistent with what public facilities, how they're being managed across this country.
Are you a member of the Las Pecitas group now?
I pay the daily fee.
Pay the daily fee. Great, thank you.
Which is the same daily fee that I pay at Muni.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, and you're going to have to pronounce your last name for me, and then Phil Hill.
My last name is Conliff.
Conliff, okay, there, that's what, that's what it says. Okay. Go right ahead.
Madam Mayor, City Councilmembers, my name's Paul Conliff. I am an airline transport pilot certified under the FAA. I teach the United States Tennis Association Junior Team Tennis, kids between the age of ten and fourteen. And I've been doing this for six years. We utilize the Ellings tennis courts. Ellings does not charge the USTA, any of the children, any fees to play there. I want to let you know the courts are in pristine condition. They are at college-level courts, just as we all know, resurfaced, refenced, rewindscreened. I believe I'm here for the kids. Kids are enjoying it. The kids have a smile on their face when they learn to compete, have fun, and learn. And this is about the children. It's not about bickering between adults. So I'm here for the children. I thank you for your time.
You. Phil Hill?
Madam Mayor, honourable Councilmembers, pleasure to be here. Just want to say, I, I played at Las Pecitas Courts many years. I've been playing tennis in Santa Barbara since I, you know, since the early seventies. Las Pecitas was probably the best place to play in Santa Barbara as a public facility because of the drop in play. The hitting wall was a center of that, and people, I, I'm, I still go there. I don't, I don't pay the permit, daily permit, because there's no one to play with. I mean, if there, I, actually, I don't see anybody to play with. I see a couple courts taken, used to give, for lessons, private lessons by Demeter and his group, which is great for those kids. But what I remember in the years preceding Ellings taking the courts was in the mornings, a group of older players, probably around thirty, gathering there as a community, playing. Many times, some of them were injured and couldn't play, but they would sit around and hang out there, and they had a great time. I remember going there at two in the afternoon, pretty much any day of the week, and hitting against the wall, and then shortly thereafter, being asked to play doubles, and then playing for the rest of the day, or the great part of it. And the proposed development at that facility, in my opinion, is going to gut the heart of it. The, they're talking about putting what's called a, I think it's a multi-purpose room to replace the hitting wall. The hitting wall was a place where people figured out, hey, look, that guy can hit the ball, or no, he can't, he's just like me. the ball, or no, he can't, he's just like me, let's play, you know? And I look at what they're proposing there, and it looks like it's down, probably their long-term plan is to make it their corporate office. I mean, I don't think they're saying that, but it, I know there are trailers up above, but it appears to me that that's what they're after. And I think that's a mistake.
Thank you.
For a public park.
Bruce Giffen?
Madam Mayor and Council, I'm Bruce Giffen. I've been on the Board of Ealing's Park since 1998, and I'm an immediate neighbor of the parks. I get to enjoy all the things that go on and take in the sights and sounds. And, you know, Santa Barbara has a long tradition of people volunteering and working together and taking on these causes to make things happen, and a long tradition of this public-private partnership. And I'd like to invite Mr. White and Mr. Hart to bring their rackets down and take advantage of those new resurfaced courts in the near future, because they're really nice to play on. The, it's a labor of love. It's an ongoing effort. What we've done is pioneering. There's been no operating manual. We've had to figure it out as we go. Things like fees and like that, we're constantly studying, seeing how we can better serve our community. And that's what our Board of Directors is about, serving our community, creating recreational venues, and operating in a way that benefits this tradition of stewardship of Santa Barbara. So happy to work with you and see that we can serve our community. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes public comment. It's to the council, any comments? There's no action required, but comments welcome, of course. Mr. Hart?
Wish items were separated. I wish there was the annual report from the park and then the discussion about the tennis lease, because I just see the two things differently. I think, you know, the Ealing's Park and the board and the foundation and the history and what's been accomplished there is really incredible. It is truly unique. There's nothing like that. But I don't think the tennis court thing has worked out well. And I'm a tennis player. I know exactly what the people that spoke about what Las Pecitas used to be, it's just absolutely true. That was a unique situation. You were able to play, pick up tennis. There is no facility like that. The six lighted courts at what used to be Las Pecitas, now Ealing's, are, those are, there are only three lighted courts that work in the city of Santa Barbara now at Muni. All the Pershing lights don't, are actually just not useful at all. You can't play there, not Muni at Pershing. So there's been, and there's, you can hardly get on the Muni courts at night. So there's six courts at Las Pecitas that charge $15 an hour to be, to play there. People aren't playing there, and people can't play at Muni. And I think, unfortunately, that's just the reality of where it is. I think this was all a well-intended experiment. You know, I don't fault the decision at the time. I don't fault the intentions. But I think here we are today, and the courts just are not being used by the public like they used to be. And it's because of the price structure. And yes, they've been beautifully maintained and improved, and I think this is an incredibly ambitious plan, and apparently it has private fundraising, but I don't think the model actually is sustainable. I think that what's gonna happen is you're gonna have a really expensive facility that's gonna require expensive revenues to maintain. And I just don't see this model ever being successful financially in Santa Barbara. I think that, you know, the idea was that there's a price up here for private tennis courts, and then there's the public price, and that there was a spot in between those two numbers that would be sustainable, that would generate enough membership to have an ongoing revenue stream that would allow for the improvement and capital investment in the courts. And I think what's happened is that that marketplace has sort of demonstrated that it doesn't exist, the way that people imagined that it would. The 40 or 50 members is not a sustainable revenue number. Now, you know, one way you could look at it is that that's Ealing Park's, Ealing's problem, and that you have to make that work, and that you're gonna invest in this facility, and then you're gonna bet that you're gonna be able to make those revenue. I don't know if that's the right way to approach this. I think there's a public stewardship issue involved in this, where there has to be a partnership going forward. And I don't think, I think people need to pause and take a breath and take a look at this, and see if this makes sense going forward. I think the facts are different than they were imagined to be at the beginning of this process, and I'm open to that conversation.
Mr. Francisco?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I'll preface these remarks by saying I'm not a tennis player. I'm a city council member at best. And so I did not experience Las Pecitas before this change. I haven't experienced it since. I've been out there to look at the physical facilities. And I can also say, based just on the conversation that we've had here today and numerous letters to the editor, clearly, there are people here and people in Santa Barbara who used Las Pecitas before this change and who were very happy with how things were run and the camaraderie and everything else. And I don't question that at all. However, I look at that facility, I was out there just a couple weeks ago to look at it, and the courts themselves have been resurfaced. I didn't see what they looked like before. I've heard they were not great. The tennis center itself, the various rooms, it's horrific. I mean, it would probably, in another five or 10 years, if nothing was done, it would probably all slide into Las Pecitas Road. It's incredibly deteriorated. And if Ealing's Park carries through on their plan, their fundraising plan of $2 million-plus to replace that, I think that will be a tremendous benefit to the community. And it's something, it's something that the city of Santa Barbara could not afford to do. The whole reason we have this partnership with Ealing's is because the city could not afford to take care of that park. I've heard people say repeatedly, you know, we're giving away this valuable thing for a dollar a year. No, we were giving away a cost. I believe that tennis, call me hard-hearted, if you will, tennis should be treated the same way golf is in this city. It should be paid for entirely by the people who play. I wish we were in a different situation. I wish we were in the economic situation we were in the '60s, when the city had plenty of money for these kinds of things and could afford to do that. We don't. One of the speakers talked about the increase in salaries to the Parks and Rec employees. I'll tell you something about that, too. The increases that CalPERS demands from this city, they demand, and by law, they get it. We don't negotiate with CalPERS. They tell us what we're gonna pay, and we have to pay it. And we can't get out of the system. Now, that's something that the legislature in Sacramento gave us. We're stuck with it. And I don't think anyone in this room has a way out, other than a voter referendum. And if the voters decided to change the system, which they should, I wouldn't be surprised if a court somewhere struck it down as unconstitutional. We are stuck in a terrible financial system. And that's not anything that the people in this room did, other than vote for some of the people we have in our Assembly and Senate, and I wish they voted for different people. People have repeatedly said, in the paper and in this room, that Ealing's is in default on its lease. That is simply not true. And go ahead and make the accusation, it's false. Now, this was a landfill. It has been repurposed for something that is extremely valuable to this community. And I've heard a lot of talk about pollution and toxic gases and everything else. I've also heard people say that the fact that the city is paying for remediation is somehow another gift to Ealing's. No, it wouldn't matter. If there were no park there, if there were no Ealing's Park Foundation, the city would still be paying the same amount for those facilities. Absolutely, because it's state law. We don't have a choice. Now, I want to close by reading to you the conclusion from the Santa Barbara Grand Jury. Now, these may be other diluted, non-tennis players like me, I don't know. But here's what they said. "The 2014-15 Santa Barbara County Grand Jury found the transfer and lease of the facility from the city of Santa Barbara to the Ealing's Park Foundation properly documented, supported, and approved. While the daily prices for use of the courts have gone up, they are similar to or less than other city municipal tennis facilities. There are typically two or more courts open to the public. The tennis courts are adequately maintained. The Ealing's Park Foundation is continuing fundraising in order to complete the rebuilding of the restrooms, shower and locker rooms, and the storage office building. The jury believes the city of Santa Barbara made a fiscally responsible decision by entering into a lease agreement with the Ealing's Park Foundation to operate, maintain, and improve the Las Pecitas tennis facility." So I don't know where we go to get a more objective opinion about what is happening at the tennis facility than the Grand Jury. I seriously doubt that they were under some kind of pressure to come up with that conclusion. So I'm sure that there are problems with how the facility is being managed compared to an ideal tennis facility. I know that Ealing's wants to fix those problems, and I know that Ealing's wants a facility that, like the rest of Ealing's Park, is utilized by an enormous number of people in this city. I think they're trying to do the right thing. And again, as I said, I'm not a tennis player, so I can't tell you the details about every little thing there that's right or wrong. But I think they're on the right path. I think the Grand Jury supports that, and I think the city made the right decision in leasing that facility to Ealing's.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, once again, today, I partially agree with both my colleagues over there. And I, what an interesting item to see, get such a passionate presentation by Mr. Francisco. I was a tennis player, and I actually had the privilege of playing on the Las Pecitas Courts for a number of years in my, toward the end of my tennis career. Also, before that, was, did my graduate work in Hawaii, where at the Diamond Head Public Tennis Courts, there is a public-private partnership that really was in my mind when I supported this lease, because it embodies the various ingredients of, there we were convening together, finding games to play. It was work, it worked. And so that was sort of the comfort zone piece that I was, that said, okay, this can work. I think that, and I saw Mr. Milton here, who, again, he and I date back, the rec was at 40 years to when I did, was a tennis player, say, there were a couple of key things that the facility isn't working quite. And I heard, I heard the Ealing's folks alluding to that, that you're looking for, you're trying to get your ear on the combination there and get it dialed in. And I really give great respect to that. I think the numbers that are in the fees here were numbers, I don't think these numbers are very far off from the numbers that we saw four or five years ago, as far as what was projected to be, the daily fees, the monthly fees, all that was kind of close to what is actually being charged today. And so I'm, I want to urge the Ealing's folks to be trying different combinations, whether it's, you know, looking at a 10-year plan, that you drop the fees and then you start, you know, it's like the frog in the pot, right? You can raise them a little bit as time goes by, is one approach, whether there's a couple, you know, there's gotta be various ways to look at this, to try and get some more action there. Now, you can go by the, you can go by, and that's a, that's a long bunch of tennis courts there. You can go by there a bunch of times and see them virtually empty as well. So tennis is not what it was when, in my prime. It just isn't. And so we're looking for a few, you know, good facilities, good, and obviously the good surfacing and windscreens and fencing is all our key ingredients, and the fence needs to come all the way down to the ground. Another piece is the new development. And I'm hearing that it's coming forward, and I'm wondering, I'm surprised it hasn't gone to Planning Commission. I mean, I hear ABR is gonna be, you know, it's got the sort of the, what it looks like. But I would think the function, the concern I have had is, is this, is the function heading away from where the intent is? And so that's a question that I appreciate hearing back about, you know, is the function consistent with, is it getting vetted properly before the size, bulk, and scale is the issue at hand?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, I can respond to the discretionary review of the proposed renovation or new project for the Las Pecitas Tennis Center. So it has been to ABR for review twice. It is, and they intend to return, I believe, next week. And based on the project's scope and description, we've deemed that it fits within the description, the designation of that area of the park. And also, given the scope of the project, it will remain at ABR. There's nothing that we see at this point that would trigger Planning Commission review, based, again, on the amount of square footage and the designation as a, as a public facility.
Okay. Well, again, it would be the sort of the, having it, the function wander a feel from the original intent, I think, is an important ingredient here. So the lack of play, that's a big deal, obviously, and it's everybody's concern. The former players obviously still feel alienated, that that's been a, I don't know how that can get, that reconciliation can occur. Obviously, that would be a really, something that would make everybody feel better. Seems, the fees, to me, looked in the ballpark at the time, but obviously, something isn't working, so I certainly hope that that changes with time. I'm also, by the way, a, one of the dog-walking crew of Ealing's, and I'm also a hiker, and I get to use all, so I'm using Ealing's in a variety of ways and appreciate the public service that the park provides in a host of ways. And so I do wish Ealing's success in dialing in that next combination. I hope it, if it were to include some kind of reconciliation and ability to bring back into the fold the passionate group that obviously loves the place as much as everybody else here does, that would be even better. It's, and also, the points that were made about finances, clearly, we're still, and many of you sat here during a couple of items to just hear the struggles that we are going through to try and maintain this city. And it goes on with every single piece of the puzzle that we're talking about, whether it's water, whether it's parks, streets, buildings, these same kinds of issues are confronting us. So I hope that we can nurture this inheritance of ours better going forward, and this, that Las Pecitas can be a humming little center, as it was back in the day.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm in agreement with Councilmember Hart that I wish these items were separate. I really would. I do congratulate you on your successes. And I've had good times at the park when I had a dog that could be off-leash. We were up there in another life. I was a drama teacher for children, and we had a class up there for disabled, developmentally disabled children. I've been to funerals there and weddings, and so really, really, congratulations. I would, though, like to start the conversation about breaking the lease or getting out of the lease on the tennis courts. I don't think that we violated the charter regarding public parkland, but it feels like the spirit was compromised, where we privatized, in a sense, the tennis courts instead of keeping them under the public trust. And I say that with all due respect to Parks Administration and the city council that made that decision. I was there for the Great Recession. It was brutal, and I, you know, in my personal life. And so I know there were difficult decisions to make, and so I know it was done in good faith. But I do hope we can get back to another arrangement. And then maybe it wouldn't be this troublesome thing for you, like you can go on to do all your wonderful things and not have the tennis hanging over you, because it is, I don't, I don't think, I don't think the arrangement is working, as has been, as has been said. And then you, when you said redevelop that land, that kind of triggered me, too. I mean, I was hoping it was just, Ealing's was supposed to take over the maintenance of the tennis court, not build a whole bunch of things and... of the tennis court, not build a whole bunch of things and develop it, you know? It's supposed to be for, you know, for tennis. So I, Ms. Rapp, how would we move forward when, how, it's a 16-year lease, I guess I, or maybe that's a discussion for another time, since it's, since it's so...
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Mario, that would be a question for the city attorney. However, I would like to clarify that the new development and the comments and assumptions that you heard at public comment are not accurate for how the, what is being proposed. So I would ask that if you have questions about what is being proposed, to ask to learn more about the project, because how it was portrayed in public comment would not be accurate with what I know from looking at the plans and how it's being proposed to serve tennis. And it is required to serve tennis as part of the lease.
Okay. I will do my homework on that. And the last thing I'll say is, I have told the former players over there to tone it down, you know, sometimes you guys come on a little strong, and I know there's an anger element there because you've lost something, and now you're talking about different things about the, about the park. I'm satisfied by what Mr. Forrest said about the environmental issues there. But when you stick to just, "It's a public park, it's a public resource, and it should have stayed that way," I'm in full agreement with you. So, thank you.
The Hachkis?
Well, thanks, Madam Mayor. For those of you wishing reconciliation, I hate to shoot down your balloon here, but these, this is third, what, second or third year I've heard the exact same arguments from Mr. Niles and his supporters. And Ms. Rapp has it right, they're not accurate. I met with them two years ago, suggested that the one thing they needed was credibility, and in my mind, they've never established it. Distortions all along the line, so they don't have my ear, frankly. If you were honest and forthright, you would. I think the park is doing its best. I hope it gets better. I'm not a tennis player, although I'm sort of thinking of taking it up again, just to try the whole thing out. But I wish you good luck and continued success.
Okay. I'll just, I guess, just say, if there really is movement, I'm hearing some comments from some council members of trying to change the lease, is to look at what the financial impact would be bringing it back, and it's going to sound a lot like the golf course situation, which we're split on, on that. As I remember the decision when it was made, and it was not made lightly, it was during a budget hearing. There was at least two hearings about it, the Parks and Recreation Department budget and well, as well as the final budget hearing. There was plenty of opportunity to speak about it. Granted, I do remember, and I do say we could have done a better job outreach-ing out at the time, but it wasn't like it was a secret or anything. It happened just on some consent calendar. It was a whole discussion, I remember it. But part of it was also to upgrade the facilities. It wasn't just about the operation and management of the facility, but it was to upgrade the actual capital facility, which was a big piece of it, because that was part of the long list of, and we just talked a lot about it today, about different infrastructure updates that we need and the funding gap that we have. So to have Ealing's Park Foundation actually step up and do what it can, along with everything else that it's doing, I think I'm actually quite grateful for that. Is it perfect? No. Could there be some better hopeful, takes two to tango here, I guess the tennis goes both ways, right? You've got to lob both ways. And conversations about trying to mend relationships as possible. It's hard to say how different it could be if the daily rate between Las Pecitas Park and Muni are the same. If you go a dollar less than you can claim, you're less than Muni, and see where that gets you. But, you know, I look at the trends of tennis, and I wish they were more popular than what the trends are showing citywide. It's not. So, you know, I just, if we're, if some want to look into unraveling this lease, I'm not personally interested in that. Just look at what are we going to replace it with, and we're going to be in a situation where we'd have to find a couple million dollars or a million dollars to upgrade the facility, and then the general fund subsidy, if any, to deal with the, with the operations of it anyway. And then finally, on the staffing level, you know, the, we went, during the recession, Parks and Recreation budget was cut dramatically. I mean, one of, I think it was the top cut, the largest cut in the entire city, was in Parks and Recreation. And not just capital projects, but staffing and furloughs. And you can't just have a nice park by itself. It takes people to maintain it. It takes people and maintenance to maintain it. And you have to pay people to do that. That's what they do. That's, and part of the increase in staffing, whether you agree with perts or not, I'm putting that aside, but the increase in staffing was additional staff that were cut that we brought back in order to maintain the beauty and the maintenance of the parks. So I'm not going to apologize for bringing back staffing levels to where they should be. It's not even back to where they were before the recession. But it was the biggest hit for the whole city during the recession, and it was a big sacrifice. So I just want to keep that in mind as well. So I want to thank Ealing's Park Foundation for all the work that you're doing. Obviously, the thought of having it still be a landfill and not a park is, you know, think of the alternatives. And so, you know, it's really a beautiful space. It's a great place to work out walking up a hill from the west side and then see this amazing view on the other side and have a lot of trails to be able to enjoy, especially in a part of city that, on the west side anyway, does not have a lot of open space. And so with a little extra huffing and puffing, you can get up Valerio Hill and enjoy just an amazing spot. So, okay, so with that...
Madam Mayor, may I just add a closing comment? Because I think with some of the interest in revisiting the lease in all fairness to Ealing's Park that is trying to undertake a capital campaign for the facility renovation, and they already have donors who are, because of all the controversy, who are afraid to go public with their donations, they've, it's really been difficult. And with council members talking about unraveling the lease, I think you, at some point, you need to decide whether you are or you aren't. And I would add two comments. One, at the time that the, these courts were transferred, all city tennis facilities, tennis maintenance, and tennis programs were subsidized by the general fund about 50 percent. So you have to think about that. So, but I think really, truly, in fairness to Ealing's, you should probably decide yes or no before they go out and they try to raise more money. And then the other thing is, I would like to suggest, from this discussion, that perhaps staff meet with Ealing's Park, and we have a little bit more discussion about some of their perspectives from what they've heard from you today, and how we might look to address some of the issues that were raised about participation. And maybe there's a way to kind of move that forward. So it's truly with you, but I just had to make those couple of points, because it's a very real challenge for Ealing's, trying to fundraise for a facility that there's discussion of the city taking it back, because people are not giving that money to the city to improve those facilities. So...
Well, and actually, and we have a couple more lights on, but you mentioned something, and I meant to mention it in my comments. When we were doing the infrastructure meetings, one of the top suggestions from the community was expanding public-private partnerships. And we're doing that with the Community Arts Workshop, with the Children's Library, with the Cabrillo Arts Pavilion. And if done right, and if can, and it can be celebrated, that this is actually a public-private partnership. And it is something that we've heard time and again of a way to be more, better stewards of our funding and our infrastructure, is working with nonprofit groups and other community groups and making that happen, the Park Foundation being a great one as well. So I appreciate those comments. Mr. Hart?
Well, yeah, I don't think this is a simple issue, and I think that Ms. Rapp is right to raise it the way she did, but I do think fundamentally, the standard of success here is use of the facility. It's not the capital campaign to build a beautiful facility if nobody's going to use it. And there's a tension here, there's a reality here about the use previously and the use today. That's just a fact. There's numbers to prove that. There's maybe a lot of different reasons as to why that's the case, but people have to have their eyes wide open in doing a $2.5 million capital campaign, incurring $130,000 in annual expenses to run a facility with a revenue stream that doesn't approach half of that, and the hope that by building it, they will come. That is one model. That could be successful. I think that was the intention, you know, in this whole plan. Well, here we are, four years later, and those things haven't happened the way they were envisioned to happen. Maybe they will happen in the future, but I think it is completely responsible and reasonable to ask the question, "Why haven't they, and what assurances do we have that it will occur the way folks are hoping it will? And what happens if it doesn't?" And I think those are legitimate questions, and I think there's a division of opinion here on the council.
Mr. Hachkis?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm sure there's a division, there's no question about that. There's also no question in my mind that if we withdrew the general fund subsidy from the other tennis courts, their prices would have to go up and their maintenance would go down. I'm, I feel certain there is not majority support on this council for looking at this lease again. This, call it an experiment, call it what you like, but we are going to have to find another way to finance these kinds of activities, other than the taxpayers picking up the tab for tennis. And I believe that Ealing's has demonstrated over decades the ability to raise funds and to inspire this community to support recreation in ways that have benefited tens of thousands of people who otherwise would not have been able to afford that recreation. So I believe we need to continue to work with Ealing's and give them the opportunity to make this into what they envision, and if it takes a few years longer, so be it. But this council, I am absolutely certain, is not going to vote to take back a tennis court, quote unquote, and support it with general fund money. That's not going to happen.
Mr. Hachkis?
And I would like to take that one step farther and say that we should affirm this lease and thank Ealing's for what they've done. Let them go and continue their challenge of raising funds, knowing full well that the city is behind the lease, glad it made it, glad it will continue, and wish you the best. And I'll make that, if I can, a motion.
I don't know if we, we don't think we're agendized to have a motion, but you can, we get the sentiment of what you're saying here.
Well, maybe others can comment on that, then.
But if two members of council want to bring this back, to have a discussion, that can happen. But I'm getting the sense from just the discussion that there's, there's not a majority of council who's willing to unravel the lease at this point, but that's just my sense from the combination that we've had. So, okay. Well, for now, we're, I think we don't have a, I think this was just to receive a report, and thank you for that. If someone wants to bring another item up to a future council agenda, then they can do so at some other time. Okay. So with that, first, I want to acknowledge the patience of Mr. Ludford. You've been waiting for a very long time for this item, and we do want to take it seriously. And for that, I really need a five-minute break before we get to do that. So why don't you get ready, and we'll take a little break before the last item. I'm going to read 17, but we might do some agenda management first, but can you just read item 17?
Appeal of the Parks and Recreation Commission action to deny the removal of the street tree located at 3740 Pescadero Drive.
Okay. So I was just speaking to Mr. Ludford, the appellant, and he acknowledges the long day that we've had. He is willing to table this for two weeks on the 30th, if we put it on right after the consent agenda, unless we just want to do it. So it's up to the council how you want to proceed.
I can stay, Madam Mayor, for tonight.
Let's get it done? Let's just get it done? We good?
The problem is, is I can't play that disc because my computer does.
So we have a, we have a technical difficulty, but maybe we could play the DVD on the, can we do that? Can we accommodate that?
Mr. Iasko?
We could try doing that? Okay.
It needs sound, too.
Yeah, no? Okay. So Tony, if you're listening, maybe you should come upstairs.
You may get your continuation after all.
It's a long day.
We could try? Okay. Well, why don't we, why don't we have the staff presentation, and we can test it, and hopefully, if it works, and if not, you can speak to it. You have photos, I think, you showed, right?
I do have some photos, but the camera of the line is really important. It's a critical piece.
Yeah, and you do need to be on the microphone. Actually, let me, let me, let me, let me try this. As I understood from the site visit, the information that you may be able to present was not necessarily presented at the Parks and Rec Commission. So let me, let me suggest this. Since there's new inform, do you want to review that? I mean, what's, what's your sense? Do you want to review this information if it's new information and?
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, we did meet with Mr. Ludford this morning and reviewed the DVD that he had at the site visit yesterday. We would make comments on that related to his request to remove the tree. However, we don't know that it would necessarily change the recommendation.
Okay. Okay. I'm hearing people want to just do it. Is that what I'm hearing? Okay. Well, let's, let's just go for it. Okay.
Well, but only if his presentation is, you know, can make it, it's no...
It's a five-minute...
All right. So why don't we quickly just check to see if his DVD could work on our equipment, and then assuming, we'll find out if it does, and if so, we'll make it work. Or if we have another...
This one isn't connected, is it? No. Mine's, also, you need a power supply. Power supply is what I need. There you go. Rob's all, Ariel's multitasking. That we can fix. There we go. Here for a turn.
That might solve the problem. Yeah, that's, we don't like using the computer, but...
The election is clear. Now, here. This will work. Yeah, I don't want to turn.
It's a ransom virus. Okay, so it looks like we can do this, right? You want everything, don't you?
3D. The IMAX would be nice. This isn't a goofy council.
Does, does the sewer line sing or something? I mean, what does?
Now, I'm going to call. Listen. That looks like a call.
4E Pescadero Drive, I'm going to be coming backwards from private lateral.
Okay, all right. So, okay, Mr. Ludford, it does work. So when we get to this point, we can, we have access to it. Okay. All right. So first, we'll get a staff presentation.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, Jill Zachary, I'm the Assistant Director of Parks and Recreation. With today's presentation, we will be going over information related to the appeal of the Parks and Recreation Commission's action to deny a request to remove a Brazilian pepper street tree at 3740 Pescadero Drive. We'll talk a little bit about the street trees on Pescadero. We'll review very briefly the guidance that we have from the municipal code to evaluate street trees and street tree removals, and then also the process by which the city goes through reviewing an application that we received from a private party. Present the appeal issues and then the recommendation. So to begin with, Pescadero Drive currently has 35 street trees, two of which are pepper trees. We believe they're the original trees from when the area was developed, so probably planted in 1960. Pepper trees themselves in this, and certainly in this location, we assume will have a lifespan of 80 to 100 years, so this tree is about 55 years old. The tree itself is currently in mature form, and it's regularly maintained by the city's forestry program, with the last trimming in January of this year. As I mentioned in the beginning, the municipal code, Chapter 1520 Tree Planting and Maintenance, which was first adopted by the city council and is known as the Street Tree Ordinance, establishes the... establishes the Parks and Recreation Director's authority to maintain street trees and also the permitting requirements for the maintenance or removal of trees by private individuals. When we receive an application to remove a street tree, it's first reviewed at the Parks and Recreation Director level, and at that point, the, the director can determine whether the removal is beneficial to the urban forest or necessary for public safety. At that point, it can be approved, denied, or referred to, for review. Generally, we, we refer them for review. If they're clearly an issue and in danger, then it, it gets taken care of immediately. The application first goes to the Street Tree Advisory Committee and then goes to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Both the Street Tree Advisory Committee and the Parks and Recreation Commission consider whether the tree is an official historic or specimen tree, whether the tree species and placement conform to the master street plan, the condition and structure of the tree, and the potential for proper tree growth and development of canopy, the number and location of adjacent trees on city property, and then the possibility of maintaining desirable density in the area. Any beneficials, lastly, upon adjacent trees to be expected from the proposed removal. In this instance, we received an application from Mr. Ludford on March 4th with the request to remove the tree due to potential damage to private sewer lateral, driveway apron, the leaf litter from the cars, and then a possible future damage to a water or gas line. Also, the application mentioned that the public sidewalk had been recently repaired, replaced by the city, which was done in 2012, and concerned that that would need to occur in the future. At the time we received the application and before it was referred to the Street Tree Advisory Committee, we did contact the applicant to request information about his concerns regarding his infrastructure. We did not have that information in advance of going to the Street Tree Advisory Committee. This is obviously a photograph of the tree. It's healthy. It's in its mature form, and, and is regularly maintained by the city. April 2nd, the Street Tree Advisory Committee, their regular meeting, reviewed the application. They visited the site, and they discussed considerations related to hardscape and also considerations related to the damage that the applicant had regarding the utilities. Specifically, the advisory committee desired more information, and the lack of information made it difficult for them to determine whether there were any impacts to the utilities. Surrounding infrastructure, certainly the public right-of-way, had been recently repaired. Their recommendation was to deny the removal. The Parks and Recreation Commission subsequently considered the application for removal on April 22nd. Similarly, they discussed the condition of the tree. They discussed the, the potential loss of tree canopy in the street with the removal of the tree, and that the canopy was sufficiently high. One of the issues that was raised in the application is that the tree interfered with vehicular traffic. The commission also discussed their concern that, given the drought conditions, the loss of the tree and the replacement of the tree would take a long time to resustain that canopy. They concurred with the Street Tree Advisory Committee 6-0. So Mr. Ludford has appealed the decision of the commission and is appealing it on the same concerns that were raised in, in the application, current and potential future damage to infrastructure, concern about sewer line repairs, leaf litter damage, damage to the water line, and hardscape. We did meet with the appellant after the Parks and Recreation Commission's action to, to discuss whether there was any more forthcoming information regarding the condition of the sewer lateral in particular, and whether any repairs to the lateral would need to be made, and whether it would affect the tree. That often happens if someone actually needs to trench and replace a pipe, that we have to look at the tree and determine if the tree would be destabilized. In other cases, pipes can be slip-lined and with no impact to the tree, and that's one of the things we look for when we're trying to find more information. We didn't receive any additional information. However, as, as we mentioned, Mr. Ludford did have a video, and we watched that this morning. Based on our review of the video, there are areas where there are tree roots entering the pipe. It's not something that can't be maintained, and also, there are alternatives for, for addressing the pipe if it were to be repaired in the future or replaced in terms of sliplining. So with that, the appeal findings that staff is still recommending is that the sewer line and hardscapes can be repaired and maintained. Leaf litter is, is a, is an issue that trees can provide. It's something that can be managed. We believe the Parks and Recreation Commission did consider all the relevant issues, and we, and we didn't have, and this slide was written last week, no additional information, but as I said earlier, we did review it and understand Mr. Ludford's concerns. However, it appears that there are other ways to address the issue, and there's no imminent failure of the sewer line, the sewer lateral, in this case. Last, so to conclude, excuse me, we are recommending that council deny the appeal and uphold the Parks, the decision of the Parks and Recreation Commission to deny the street tree removal application.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. We usually have member of the Street Tree Advisory Committee and Parks and Recreation, if you want to speak at this time, you can. Did you have a question, Mr. Ludford?
Yeah, I actually do. So we're saying that, yes, there is damage to sewer lines, but there's a way to rectify that, either with a new sewer line or by frequent cleaning out of whatever you have to do.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgekis, the pipe is, is a clay pipe.
Right.
And so water in pipes, wet pipes, there's chances that the pipe will attract roots. Most people maintain it by doing a rotor-ruder until the point at which they have to replace the sewer lateral because it fails. It was not, it did not appear to us that the sewer lateral is currently failing. Mr. Ludford, I think, is concerned that at some point in the future, it will fail, and that the tree may play a role in that failure. But it could be either maintained and/or at some point in the future replaced with the feasibility of replacing it without trenching.
Yeah. Isn't there a, a system now where you put a pipe inside the pipe? And I don't know if that's less expensive, but at least it wouldn't disturb the tree and it would solve his incursion of root problem?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hodgekis, yes, in, in some instances, that is a very successful method. In other cases, it, it may not be possible, and, and we look at those on a case-by-case basis, depending on what the condition of the, the lateral is and what the needs are for the homeowner.
Oh, thank you.
So would sliplining work in this case?
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Would sliplining work in this case?
Madam Mayor, Councilmembers, we did ask Mr. Ludford if, if he thought that would work, and, and he did think it was feasible. You know, it's a matter of decisions that people make about what approach they take.
Okay. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you. Ms. Zachary, is the Brazilian pepper tree still a authorized city street tree for planting today?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, on this street, the designated street tree is now an evergreen pear. We believe the designation was changed in the late 70s when the street tree master plan was approved. I would have to defer to Mr. Downey whether we have that as a designated street tree in parts of the city. I don't believe we do, but I may be incorrect.
Mr. Downey?
Mayor and councilmembers, we do have a, a few streets where the, the species is the designated tree.
Okay. Thank you.
But not there. Okay. Okay. Mr. McPherson, and then Ms. Wiscombe.
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, I'll just really be brief here. I don't think we have to drag it on too much longer. The fact is, the tree roots have to find a source of water, and that points to the fact that the pipe has leaked, and the roots have found that water source and moved into the line. The other point I might make is that, well, the, if this tree was removed and another was planted, the same situation would recur. I really do feel that the sewer line should be replaced.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Wiscombe.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the City Council. Leslie Wiscombe, Parks and Rec Commission Chair, and also, I am the commission's liaison to the Street Tree Advisory Committee. And I was present at the committee meeting on April 2nd when we made the site visit. The committee voted unanimously to deny the removal. The tree was in, is in healthy condition and shows no sign of declines. Duke is a certified arborist, and he was there as well as Mr. Downey, so. There was not sufficient evidence that the tree was damaging utility lines as the applicant stated. Hard evidence of the applicant's time and expense to deal with the alleged damage caused by the tree was not provided, and that was something that, that the Street Tree Advisory Committee noted. And, and also, loss of substantial canopy would be a negative impact on the neighborhood. It does have a pretty substantial canopy. At the Parks and Rec Commission meeting on April 22nd, we also voted unanimously to deny the applicant's, deny removal of the tree. Commissioners noted the tree is a public asset. This is a street tree. It's not a setback tree. And no further evidence had been provided by the applicant to substantiate the applicant's damage claims, even though I know in the interim, Mr. Downey had asked if there was, if there was actually hard evidence, because that was a question that STACK had asked. The tree is in very good health. Commissioners said they saw no damage of, no damage on the tree trunk caused by trucks. And again, the loss of the tree canopy would negatively impact the neighborhood. The tree is very significant in the neighborhood. I know you've all been out on the site visit. And replacement of the tree, which the applicant said that he would do with, with one or two other trees, it's really not possible during the drought, and the substantial tree canopy just wouldn't be recovered for many, many years, because the tree is, as Ms. Zachary said, 50-plus years old. So, and we also did receive an email at, at the commission meeting from a neighbor who urged that the application be denied. So in, in closing, it is a, it's a, it's a public asset in very good condition, and the loss of the canopy would negatively impact the neighborhood. So we urge you to support staff and deny the appeal. Thank you very much.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Ludford, you're on.
Oh, thank you. I appreciate your time tonight. I know it's late and everybody wants to go home. So do I. Some of the approaches that, that we're taking here, I'm going, I'm going to turn this a little bit of a different direction. Now, you have all spoke tonight about infrastructure, and how when you let streets go pretty soon, you can't slurry them anymore. You got to tear them up and replace them completely. This is the case with this tree. It has found its only source of water in this drought, and it is tearing that clay pipe apart daily. It's, that's where it's getting all its water, and, and it's getting fed, too. This is not just going to, you know, go slowly. This thing is going to collapse fast, and it's right underneath that tree. I guarantee you, the roots spread out 10, 12, 14 feet solid all around that tree. The sewer is one foot away from the left side. Now, when you talk about what it costs to replace infrastructure, okay. You know, you spend $18,000 to do a block, or you spend $80,000. Well, to me, you know, the $7,000 to $14,000 to replace this sewer line is a large, large project. Now, you talk about sliplining. I'm a contractor. I know what sliplining is. And yes, that will work. You still got to punch a hole in the ground in front of the house, and you got to go down however far out in the street that that lateral is, which could be 10, 14 feet down. You got to put a hole in both ends. Now, you could probably keep that tree. I don't particularly care for it, but I'm not going to use dropping of leaves and things like that as an excuse. I am concerned about my water lines, and if you look at the picture of the tree that he gave you, all that bush and everything all around it, that is the tree. It's not some other plant. This thing sends out shoots, and it just goes on and on and on and on, and they pop up in the middle of my lawn 30 feet away. You know, I've got big ones coming up all around my water line. I've got pictures of the root masses that are inside the clay pipe, which I had cleaned six months ago. It's, it's happening fast. It's happening often, and it's going to get worse. Also, by the way, that tree in two states in the United States is considered a category one or three pest. They won't even allow you to transport the seeds of a Brazilian pepper. They're also illegal in five countries in the world. That you can look up on the internet under Brazilian pepper tree. So it, it, it's a pasty tree. I don't like it. I admit that. I admit it. I'm willing to plant anything you want there, even a pretty mature tree. I do have to agree, you know, it'd be difficult on trees that are freshly transplanted in the water situation we have right now. I'm hoping this El Nino coming will change all that for all of us. Be nice to have some water again. My yard, brownouts. All my trees, most of them are almost dead, and that doggone pepper is, you can't kill that thing. So it truly is a drought-resistant tree. I still don't like it. Ruins my cars, drops sap all over the place, gets in my sewer line, and if I'm going to drought-proof that yard, which was kind of my intention, you can't put the cart before the horse. You know, you landscape the whole place, whatever you do with, you know, drought-resistant stuff, and then you have to turn around and dig the whole sewer line up and wreck the whole thing again? Kind of a good idea to fix the sewer line problem first. Sliplining is a possibility, but it's still coming out of my pocket. If the tree were gone, it would get cleaned once, and that would be it. The problem would be over with, especially if I plant other trees that are, you know, 10 or 15 feet away from my sewer line. I don't think it's going to be a problem anymore, at least not until after I'm long gone.
Did you want to show the video? Or did you want to show the video that you had?
Yeah, yeah.
Which is over there.
She can show it.
Lateral. All right. This is Jeremiah Anacapa Plumbing. I am camering from back outside, cleanout, three-inch stack. I am at. See address here?
3740 Pescadero Drive.
3740 Pescadero Drive. I'm going to be coming backwards from private lateral, backwards from city lateral. You can see the city lateral going that way. I'm going to be coming back. So you can see the city, the private lateral saddle is in good shape. No root intrusion there. 103 feet out from back cleanout. You can see the line is clay. So far, no root intrusion. A little bit there. And a little bit of root intrusion there at 85 feet is when the majority of the root intrusion goes, about 40% of pipe. I'm going to pause this right here. Nice. So this is Jeremiah again, Anacapa Plumbing. Sorry, I just paused it. I located the line of first root intrusion, or major root intrusion. It's just underneath that pepper tree in the front of the property, at the breezeway of the city. It's probably like, maybe a foot or two from the, to the right of the tree, facing the street. So we're going to continue coming backwards.
You know, you'd have a good idea to locate that thing where it comes out from underneath
And then about... Then about minor root intrusion, 79 feet.
Where was the first one you saw?
84 feet.
Well, it's 5 feet.
So you got a little bit more root intrusion, 76 feet. Looks like a lip is already forming, collecting water.
Well, it's probably in a couple sections of the clay pipe, right? That's about the only way to crack.
No, it's like a couple sections, yeah. I can't see anything that's like definitively cracked.
Okay. Does that conclude your presentation?
I suppose there were a lot of things that I would have liked to have said, but I'm too doggone tired to think of it now.
Okay. Okay. Thank you very much. So, I don't have any public comment. Speaker slips to this, so it is to the council. Mr. Francisco.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, I think that the Street Tree Advisory Committee did its job, especially considering that at the time, they didn't have this evidence of root intrusion. But, they also said in their report that they were denying it without prejudice, that they were willing to hear more about what was going on. And I also think that the Street Tree Advisory Committee, as well as the Parks and Rec Commission, has an inherent and totally justifiable, it's in the ordinance, bias towards tree preservation. That's, you know, if they can find a way to do it, that's their job. Personally, I look at this, it's part of, it's partly an issue for me about a neighborhood over time. This tree was planted 55 years ago. It was probably a mistake when it was planted. Today, you walk out in that neighborhood, and this thing is, it's a colossus towering over that little house. And I agree that it provides a canopy. There's no question about that, and that's a benefit to the neighborhood, but it seems completely out of scale to me. Part of the, part of the problem that we saw when we were out there was the, the tree completely fills, overfills the parkway, and it's lifted up, there's a joint in the curb and gutter there. It's lifted up the curb, so it's preventing water from flowing as it should. I see, I see a lot of practical problems there, and I also agree with the appellant that if that tree were out of there, it's apparently about a foot from the sewer lateral. If that tree was out of there and younger trees were planted further away, it would probably be a very long time before there was a problem. Now, I also agree that, given the age of the sewer line, it's probably going to have to be replaced anyway, and the appellant is going to have to bear that expense. But I think that, I believe that tree is much too large for where it is, and I can completely understand his desire to not have a major recurring every six months or a year maintenance expense associated with it. So I would uphold the appeal.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, these are, these things are hard, especially when you were talking about all the problems we're having with sewer laterals and root intrusion and, and yet, the Street Tree Advisory Committee did precisely their job. It is a healthy specimen. I also agree with Mr. Ludford. It's a nuisance tree. I saw volunteers everywhere, and you're right. I mean, they, I guess it's the nature of the tree. I don't, I'm not an arborist. I don't know. But I also can't see, given our set of guidelines and ordinances, where I would say it would be okay to take it down. If this were not a, if this were a setback tree, it'd be a different issue for me personally, because that's on your property, and I, I have a hard time with that. But this is, in fact, a parkway tree, and it does, as Mr. Francisco said, take up the whole parkway, and you can see where the sidewalk's been replaced in a pretty recent time, but the curb still is violated, the curb and the gutter. And the sewer thing is, is an issue, and I wish I had a better answer for that, but I, I'm going to have a hard time upholding the appeal only because of the way our guidelines are written and what the Street Tree Committee did. I think they did their job, and I, I don't like going opposite of what somebody who owns a home in front of one of those things does, but it is, in fact, a public tree. So I'm going to have to vote to deny the appeal.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll agree with, basically, agree with Mr. Rouse, but I'll also say that I, that's one of the better appeal presentations that we have had. I thought you were very, your points are good ones, and you didn't blow any smoke in your presentation there. It was a very good presentation.
I know better than to lie to the council.
Mr. Hodgkins?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, yeah, absolutely. I think you won everybody's heart by your patience and willingness to put this off, but honestly, as a Realtor, which is my day job, that is a wonderful street you've got there, and it's in large part thanks to the trees, including yours, which is sort of a pain right now. I hope there's a way that you can rectify the maintenance problem, but I would ask you to contribute to the beauty of that street by maintaining that tree. I disagree with Mr. Francisco saying it's out of scale. I think it's just a fabulous-looking thing, and you probably do, too, but it's costing you money. I'm sorry. I want to deny the appeal, but I wish there was something I could do to, well, at least we'll thank you for your patience for coming here.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, thank you for your patience, and I'd like to move that we deny the appeal with all due respect to you, sir. Staff reviewed the evidence earlier today, and I have to stand by the recommendations from our, from our advisory groups. It's, the tree's a public asset and part of our urban forest, so.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. I guess my other comments in terms of the cost associated with the situation is, yes, there's going to be a cost of, if you need to upgrade the sewer lateral, but I can't imagine the cost of taking down that tree to be inexpensive. It looks like it would be a pretty massive undertaking in terms of cost, so.
Guarantee you that thing weighs 50 tons or more.
Yeah, so, I mean, so in terms of, it's not like it goes away for free or the city, the city's not going to be paying. If we were to uphold the appeal and the tree went away, he'd still bear the cost of taking down the, of cutting down the tree properly, correct, and repairing the parkway? So, is that a yes? That's a yes? Okay. So, you know, I know we're not supposed to look at cost issues here, but that was in my mind, too, in terms of a sliplining or doing something with the sewer lateral might actually be less expensive than the tree, and then it's just, I guess, some of the other issues. But I think for the reasons already stated, I'm going to vote to deny the appeal. So, okay, we have a motion and a second?
The motion is?
To deny the appeal?
Thank you.
All in favor? Aye? Any opposed?
No.
Okay, and that's 6-1. Thank you so much for your patience, and appreciate it.
Thank you for your time. I appreciate it. I was, I was very impressed that, that the mayor and the city council decided to even come out to my home to take a look at it.
Well, absolutely. That's part of the job. So, can we, I think, is there any pressing council staff communications? All right. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.
Hope you all have a good evening.